Councilmember.
Okay, Mayor, the meeting is now being recorded.
Great, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Great, thank you. Well, let me go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting for the San Ana City Council from May 3rd, 2020. Let me just begin by making some opening remarks. This meeting is taking place within person attendance and by teleconference via Zoom. The public may access the meeting via the San Ana YouTube channel or the city's website. Please bear with us as the technology may disrupt the flow of the meeting. And let me begin by apologizing to everybody. I'll be joining you virtually a little under the weather. I sound a lot worse than I feel, but nonetheless, just to be cautious, I didn't want to get any of my colleagues or anybody else sick. I'll go ahead and turn it over to the clerk to see if she can call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. To request to speak on any agenda or non-agenda items within the...
Can you call roll?
Forgive me, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Hernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza, oh, thank you. I was gonna mute you. Councilmember Peñalosa?
Present.
Councilmember Fan? Mayor Pro Tem Becerra?
Here.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Here. Great, thank you.
And Councilmember Lopez just joined us.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, before we proceed to the pledge, let me go ahead and have you make your announcements.
Thank you. To request to speak on agenda or non-agenda items within the city's jurisdiction with the exception of public hearing items 34 and 35, please dial *9 from your phone or click on the button labeled Raise Hand from Zoom at this time. Please hold your comments until the mayor opens the public hearings, our public hearing for items number 34 and 35 only. Please announce your name and ward or neighborhood you reside in within the city of Santa Ana for the record. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let me go ahead and call on Councilmember David Peñalosa to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember, if you'll please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. If you'd all please rise and join me in facing our flag, put your right hand over your heart and follow along. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you for that. Let me go ahead and now call on Rabbi Stephen up. Einstein has lead us in words of inspiration.
Oh God, you have called us unto life and set us in the midst of purposes we cannot measure or understand. Yet we thank you for the good we know, for the life we have, and for the gifts that are our daily portion, for health and healing, for labor and repose, for the ever-renewed beauty of earth and sky, for thoughts of truth and justice which stir us from our ease and move us to acts of goodness, and for the contemplation of your eternal presence which fills us with hope that what is good and lovely will not perish. For all these, we give thanks and pledge ourselves to use these blessings wisely. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you for those words of inspiration. Let me go now to the ceremonial presentation segment of the meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call Mayor Pro Tem Becerra to give a proclamation of recognition to Bear on their 75th year anniversary.
If I have Drew and the rest of the Bear crew come forward?
Test.
So, good evening, everybody. So today, I wanted to recognize San Ana Company that's been here for quite some time. So, the Bear Paint Company was founded in 1947 by Otto Bear Jr. and is one of the largest manufacturers of paint and paint application products in the United States, Mexico, Canada, and Chile. The San Ana-based company comes from humble beginnings of wood-stained batches being made in a family garage. I believe that was in Alhambra, right?
Pasadena.
Or Pasadena, okay. Close, right? Close. And then becoming an industry leader, I'm sorry, becoming an industry-leading coating and applicator manufacturer with its corporate headquarters just down the street from the San Ana Auto Mall in southeast San Ana. The Bear family bought the first parcel of land that the Sagerstrom family ever sold. And that land happens to be just off Alton, probably about walking distance from my house over in Ward 4. That original San Ana plant is still in use today. And originally was, if you know the Sagerstrom family, in the middle of a huge lima bean field, right? So, it's still being used today and it's not in the middle of a huge lima bean field anymore. Today, there are over 1,000 employees working in Bear's San Ana facilities and 136 of them are San Ana residents. Bear Paint has also been generous in contributing paint and materials towards restoring and maintaining some of the beautiful murals that we have here in San Ana. So, on behalf of the city of San Ana and our city council, I wanted to congratulate Bear Paint on their 75th anniversary and thank them for all the contributions that they've made to our community. So, Drew, would you like to say a couple of words?
Thank you, Councilman Becerra. Bear's been really happy to be part of this community all these years. Many of our employees live here in San Ana and we like to call San Ana our home. When we had a chance to move, we moved within the city. We used to be off Sagerstrom and Harbor and we were really happy to find property very near the auto mall. And that's our new world headquarters and I'd like to thank my team members, Allison and Mason here with me tonight. And we're very pleased and appreciate the honor.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Congratulations to the Bear family on their 75th anniversary. Let me now call on Councilmember Hernandez, who is gonna present the next proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay if we can continue to the next council member awaiting on the participant.
Will do. Let me go ahead and call on Councilmember Lopez, who's going to be presenting a certificate of recognition to the Orange County Fire Authority on their 35, to Chief Henry for his 35 years of outstanding service. So, Councilmember Lopez, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Hi, everyone. I see the guys are here with you today.
We usually travel in a pack. I've got some yells over there, too.
I know. All right. So, this is yours, Chief? Hi, everyone. So today, we are here and I have the really great honor of recognizing Chief James Henry. And I work with the chief because I also have the privilege of working with OCFA as one of their board of directors. And, you know, Chief Henry, from the moment that I've met him, has always been so respectful and kind and always just willing to share as much history about the agency with me, about the organization, has made sure that I tour some of the stations here in San Ana and goes, you know, above and beyond to make sure that, do you have any questions? You know, do you want to understand what's happening? And I really appreciate that because it's a really big board and a lot happens at the meetings. But, you know, one of the things that I learned when I first came on board was that the chief has been with us for a really long time. And this year, we're celebrating his 31st, 35th anniversary, sorry. And so, we just want to congratulate you, Chief. Because when we talk to the other folks that serve alongside of you, that serve the residents of the city here, you know, they say that you're a very caring chief, that you have a really strong work ethic, that you don't ask, you know, your colleagues to do anything that you wouldn't do yourself. And I think that goes a really long way. And, you know, they also say that you lead by example, that you're very respectful, that you value all of your relationships, not just with, you know, the folks that you work with, but the partners here at the city. And that you really love and admire the strong culture here in the city of San Ana, that you love the food, the tacos, everything that is here. And, you know, that you have the utmost respect for the residents here, which is very, very important to me. And every one of them, I think it's fair to say that they would say that they're really proud to serve alongside of you. And, you know, the men and the women who choose to work alongside Chief Henry know that they are going to work for a chief that is hardworking and that knows he will not ask people to do anything that he can't, hasn't, or won't do himself. And San Ana is and always has been his first choice of where he wants to work. So, thank you, Chief, for your 35 years of outstanding dedication. We definitely look forward to working with you many, many more years. However, I think people also would be excited for you to, you know, go away and enjoy, you know, vacation. So, San Ana residents, please help me in congratulating Chief Henry for his 35-year anniversary. And I have to say, I did not ask the chief for permission to do this because he would have told me no. So, Chief, would you like to share some words?
On behalf of the city and the city council, thank you very much for all of this. I'm not a public person per se. I'm very humble, but I will say thank you for this. I've always enjoyed working someplace where I could do the most good and I've loved this community. I've spent 35-plus years here and we get a chance to serve the community in so many different ways. You know, I've had the opportunities of delivering babies and comforting loved ones who's lost a spouse after 50 or 60 years. And I just wouldn't trade any of that. It's a calling for all of us. The men and women that serve the Orange County Fire Authority and the ones that serve this community are committed to excellence and integrity and pride. And they serve your community every day with all of that. And I couldn't be more proud to be a part of that group and to be a part of that leadership that brings them here. So, thank you on behalf of everyone, okay? Thank you for this award and thank you for all of you. And no, I'm not retiring next month or anything like that. I'm still gonna stick around for a little bit longer just to be a pain in somebody's... No, I'm just kidding. Just to continue my path. I've got a few things left that I want to do, but thank you for this honor. It's very means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez, and congratulations, Chief Henry. Yeah, nobody wants you to go away just yet, so appreciate all the service you've done for all of us here. Let me go ahead and now call on Councilmember Mendoza, who's gonna be presenting a certificate to El Mariachi Santaneros for their outstanding contributions. Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I am very honored to present this certificate of recognition to Mariachi Los Santaneros for two reasons. Because as they come out, they are a local mariachi band. And they are a representation of our culture right here in the great city of Santa Ana. So, and since I'm not available to be in person, I have asked my colleague, David Peñalosa, to help me present. And I will give you a little background on what it is that Cinco de Mayo represents for our culture and our heritage. So, Cinco de Mayo, on the 5th of May, is a day in which men celebrate the day of Mexican Army's victory over France at the Battle of Puebla during the Franco-Mexican War on May 5th, 1862. So, this is not to be confused with the actual Mexican Independence Day, which is September 16th. But, May 5th, Cinco de Mayo is a very significant date in the culture of the Mexican families. Cinco de Mayo has evolved into a commemoration of Mexican culture and heritage, particularly in areas with large Mexican-American populations such as our beautiful city right here in Santa Ana. Cinco de Mayo is an opportunity to celebrate Mexican identity, promote ethnic consciousness, build community... So, little, so little, so little that, oh, so, forgive me, build community, bond in this. When I think of Cinco de Mayo celebrations, Mexican culture and heritage, there's a certain type of music that comes to mind, which is mariachi music. This is one of the most beloved forms of traditional music. In the spirit of Cinco de Mayo, several members of El Mariachi Los Santaneros are here with us today. And I welcome Alex Mascorro, Abel Diaz, Maria Cortez, and Dylan Rivera.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mendoza. The, I don't mean to interrupt, but I figured I was standing up here. Wanted to not just take up space. So, thank you for that. And I want to, you're welcome, El Mariachi Los Santaneros. One thing that I want to highlight is that the youngest one behind me is 16 years old and the oldest one is only 26, about 10 years younger than me, almost. So, I'm impressed. And it's El Mariachi Los Santaneros. So, I am half-qualified because I'm a Santanero, but I have no musical talent whatsoever, so I can't be part of the group. But, like my colleague, Councilmember Mendoza, said, we're left off. Alex Mascorro is the lead and founder of, MaCorro, Mascorro? Mascorro Productions, Inc. He was born and raised and still lives in San Ana. And he attended the mariachi program at Delhi Center and continues his mariachi education at San Ana College. So, without further ado, I'd like to recognize the certificate to Mariachi Los Santaneros in the spirit of Cinco de Mayo, which is not Mexican Independence Day. It is the, where the Mexican Army beat the French in the Batalla de Puebla. So, tomorrow or Friday, whenever you guys are out for happy hour, remember that. Tell that to a friend. It's not Mexican Independence Day. It's when the Mexicans beat the French in the Battle of Puebla. And it's significant because the Mexican Army was about the 10th the size of the French military and they were still able to beat them. So, you know, viva México. So, anyways, with Mariachi Los Santaneros, and I'll make sure to get a copy for, is it only four of you or is there... Okay, so I'll make sure to get eight of these so that you could each have your own copy at home, okay? So, without further ado, they would like to perform which song? Cielito Lindo. And if you want to give any words before you perform or you want to just let the song start?
All right. So, I want to thank the city of San Ana. Without the city, I would not have been able to form this group. I was born and raised here. I still live here. I formed this business along with videography, a mariachi music business. I'm currently getting my credential program to teach in the school district as well. Sorry, anything about this group is just Santaneros. I actually wanted to give a little bit, another fun fact about Cinco de Mayo, to add on about the French Army and the Batalla de Puebla. If it were not for the Mexican Army to fight off the French, the Confederacy in the United States would have had an advantage against the Union. So, in a way, Mexico helped win the Civil War in the United States. So, it's very, it's very connected. That's the reason why Cinco de Mayo is very popular in the United States because it helped defeat the Confederacy indirectly. So, that's just a little fun fact. And then, another thing I wanted to say is that usually there's actually nine of us, but you can catch all nine of us this Saturday at the Art Walk from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. We'll be walking around, taking requests, so you guys can sing with us. So, I encourage that. And speaking of singing with us, we're gonna be doing Cielito Lindo in spirit of Santa Ana. And I encourage and invite the whole crowd to sing with us. Here's Cielito Lindo. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alex. One question. Back in January, my mom turned 70 years old and I couldn't find the mariachi if the life depended on me. So, for everyone listening, where can we book you? If we wanted, we're having a quinceañera or a wedding or a birthday, not a wedding anytime soon, but a party, a birthday party? Cough, cough. Where can we book?
Sure. Website, Facebook? Yeah, so I guess the easiest way at this moment, I do have business cards, but I can provide my Instagram, YouTube, and Facebook page, @Mascorro, that's M-A-S-C-O-R-R-O underscore productions. Again, that's @Mascorro underscore productions, Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. So, we'll make sure to tag you on social media, I believe.
Great. Thank you for that presentation, Councilmember Mendoza, and thank you, Mariachi Los Santaneros. Only at a San Ana City Council meeting will you guys hear mariachis live and in person. Let me go ahead and turn it over now to Councilmember Peñalosa, who's gonna be presenting a proclamation to Eva Barrios for National Crime Victims Rights Week. Councilmember, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Please have the Barrios family and Sir Felipe join me up here, please. So, I would like to present on behalf of the city of San Ana, the mayor and the city council. I would like to present on behalf of the City of Santa Ana, the mayor and the city council, a proclamation recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week, which is April twenty-fourth through the thirtieth. And joining me here today is Eva Barrios and her family. Who, in honor of Victoria Barrios, her memory, and on behalf of crime victims who have survived and have inspired many to continue to fight, today, the city council declares April twenty-fourth and the thirtieth, which was just a couple of days ago, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Accepting this proclamation today is Eva Barrios and several members of her family. Eva is the mother of Victoria Barrios, who was only eighteen years old when she was senselessly killed on August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit ourselves to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. Serving victims and rebuilding their trust restores hope to victims and survivors, as well as supports thriving communities. With the help of our dedicated professionals and courage and strength from survivors, we will be able to overcome systemic barriers that certain communities face in obtaining justice. We could learn more about resources available to you as a victim of crime on our city website at www.santa-anna.org/departments/polic. Santa Ana's Family Justice Center is also located at our Santa Ana Police Department headquarters, which offers a lot of resources for victims of crime. Santa Ana Police Department's Open House is this May fourteenth, and more details will be available soon. Coffee with the Cop is also on May nineteenth at the Starbucks located on twenty-three zero-three South Bristol Street, which will be more, uh, available for resources there. Informational materials is also available in the council chambers lobby today. And with me is the family of Eva Barrios, who we remember. And it is my promise to you that our Santa Ana Police Department is doing everything possible to bring justice to your family and to Victoria. So, if you guys could please, um, I don't know if any of you want to say a few words?
Um, I just want to say thank you to, uh, our city officials, uh, law enforcement, and all the community that honestly continues to just so, show us so much love and support. Um, it is imperative that, um, you know, we remember the victims who often suffer, um, senseless tragedies. So, just thank you, and I am honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for that proclamation, and uh, I wish I were there to, to support you all in person. Eva, Felipe, the entire Barrios family, we are not going to rest until, uh, until we find you justice, as was said. Let me move along to the next, uh, proclamation. I believe Council, uh, Councilmember Hernandez is ready, uh, now with his. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over so he can make a proclamation, presentation to Neutral Ground, declaring May twenty-twenty-two as National Mental Health Awareness. Councilmember, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. Alright, Neutral Ground, you want, want to make your way up here? And please bring any of your guests with you. Can we make some noise for that amazing performance and the amazing presentation by my colleagues today? Thank you. We got a lot of beautiful things happening today. Alrighty, wow. Thank you all for, for joining us here today at, at City Hall. Um, today is May third, uh, two thousand twenty-two, and I am honored and humbled to, to present a proclamation declaring, uh, National Mental Health Awareness Month and presenting it to Not the Alvarado with Neutral Ground. Um, today, the city is presenting this proclamation, and we wanted to recognize National Mental Health Awareness Month. Neutral Ground centers its services in prevention, intervention, and mediation for young people ages fourteen to twenty-four and families residing in Santa Ana. All of their services address found in the hierarchy of mental health needs are as follows. Hope, rest, empathy, humor, self-care, self-transcendence, self-compassion, healthy relationships, coping strategies, treatment, and support. With the support of the Life Center in collaboration with the Orange Wood Foundation, Pathways of California, and Orange County Superior Court's Youth Development Court Program, Neutral Ground manages and operates a transitional living home, a housing program called Not these House. Not these House offers a home to young men and women, uh, young men i- in need of a second chance, and provides shelter for some of our most vulnerable youth. It is my privilege and honor to be joined by Not the Alvarado, the founder of Neutral Ground and Not these House. Please make some noise for Not the. Not the, on behalf of the mayor and city council, we want to thank you for all that you do, uh, to help improve the lives of the individuals that we have in our community that face mental health challenges. It's important for me standing up here, um, because I, I come from a family, um, that grew up in the Artis Apilar neighborhood. Many men in my family on both sides, mom and dad, um, fell through the cracks. Many ended up in the prison system. And we know that poverty is, um, a byproduct of mental health challenges that we face in our community. And Not the, you are a shining example that we can and we are rewriting the story. Congratulations, thank you. So, without further ado, um, it is our honor to present to you a proclamation recognizing National Mental Health Awareness Month as a month of May. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilman Hernandez, and mayor, and the rest of the council. Um, I'm honored to do this. It's, it's a privilege to be able to serve our community and the families and, uh, individuals, the loved ones here in our community. It's, um, born and raised here, it's, it's my heart, parents born and raised here. So, I brought some of our team with us, a couple of them are not here. Actually, my daughter Bree and my soon-to-be-on-Friday son-in-law Samuel are not with us today because they're getting ready for their wedding. And I told Councilman Peñanosa he had to come, maybe he could catch the girdle and, uh, and get married. Um, but, you know, I, I could say a lot about it, but I would like to bring up a gentleman that, um, we've worked with his son for many years and dealing with mental health, and that's Chuck.
How you guys doing? I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Not these House for my boy, that, that, he, he does have, uh, mental health issues and, uh, you know, he was in and out of, uh, mental health facilities and, and, you know, Pastor Not the, he, he opened up his, his home to my boy, you know, and, and like the gentleman said, you know, we, we all fall through the cracks, you know, and, and we need someone to help us up, and that's what this home does. It, it, it helps my boy, and, and he's been there for a while already. And, and my wife wanted me to say to make sure to, to, to thank him and that she could actually sleep good at night now, knowing that he's in a safe place. And, and, and the things they, they provide there at the home, you know, the group, the group sessions, you know, that they, they help these guys with, you know, and, and, and like I said, that going to these mental hospitals, I, I see people like you and I, and, and, and I don't know if any of you have any family members that are mentally hell, uh, ill. But this, this, this program really helps them, and, and I'm proud of, to have them there at the house. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, thank you, everyone, for being here today. We honor you, and we, we celebrate your contributions to our city. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmember, and thank you, Not the, for receiving that proclamation uh, on behalf of National Mental Health Awareness Month. Uh, let me now call on Councilmember, uh, I believe it's, um, Councilmember Fan and Hernandez, who are going to be presenting a proclamation to the Lau family. So, I'll turn it over to you two.
And I also would like to invite our colleague, councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem, Phil Becerra, to join us with this proclamation. Madam City Clerk, please stop having me follow cute young children, or mariachi bands, or anything of the sort. And we'd like, um, Commissioner Alan Wu, as well as the Lau family, to follow us, um, come up here.
May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Today, we recognize the history, culture, and achievements of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the city of Santa Ana. Accepting this proclamation today is the Lau family. May is not only a month for Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to celebrate and educate, but also a time for all Americans to actively participate and take actions to educate themselves. The Lau family ancestors came from the Cantonese-speaking Toisan region of China in the late eighteen hundreds and early nine hundreds to help build the railroads in the US and to look for better opportunities to support family living in China. Unfortunately, they subsequently faced vehement discrimination and government-sponsored racism in light of the Chinese Exclusion Act of eighteen eighty-two, which was an absolute ten-year ban on Chinese laborers immigrating to the United States. Fred Lau immigrated to the US in nineteen twenty-seven and gained his US citizenship as an outcome of fighting as a medic in World War Two, and subsequently brought his wife and other family members to the United States.
The Lau family have been stakeholders in business in Santa Ana since nineteen forty-eight, owning several grocery stores and businesses, is the first of which is Santa Ana Food Market on First and Bristol. I, I wanted to take this opportunity to share the impact that the Lau family has had on me. Um, I, they have known my grandparents, my great-grandparents, who initially arrived here, um, from Jalisco, Mexico, and they settled on Second and Baker Street. And, um, the Lau family knew my great-grandmother, um, since, uh, before my grandparents were born. And, um, for many of my family members gave us our very first jobs. And, um, one of the things you said to me, um, was that, uh, you said, you know, I'm Chinese from the sa- from the face, Mexican in the heart. And, um, and one of the things about my family that you had an impact on them was you, you guys were the only place we would go and buy our groceries because of how you made us feel. You made us feel at home, and, and, uh, that is why we're celebrating you guys today. Um, Fred accomplished in his entrepreneurial dream of starting the legacy business in Santa Ana and has been instrumental for the Lau family legacy in Santa Ana, as well as a catalyst for further expansion. The Santa Ana Food Market is managed by Fred Lau's sons, Wally, Guy, Lou, and Kenny, who is now passed. For those that know Kenny, if you were a regular at the Santa Ana Food Market, you would, uh, attest that he was one of the funniest guys in Santa Ana. It was always, uh, putting a, a smile on shoppers' faces. As a direct result of the sacrifice from past generations, the new generation of Laos are college-educated and consist of college professors, engineers, lawyers, and entrepreneurs. Um, now, to celebrate the diversity that we have here in the council, um, we have a Vietnamese council member, the first of its kind in Santa Ana, and a Filipino, uh, council member and council member, Mayor Protem Becerra. So, Mayor Protem Becerra, if you could do us the honors of just finishing off our last two bullet points here.
Thank you, member, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, and it is important that we celebrate diversity, hence why here we are today, celebrating, um, Asian American and Pacific Islanders here throughout the city. You know, one thing to keep in mind is that the first ever Asian American elected to the city council was elected when I was born. But this is going back to nineteen seventy-seven. And thankfully, the tide has turned, where now we see this diverse inclusionary council. We have Councilmember Fan shortly coming after me, and here we are together. So, with that, I want to say thank you to the Lau family, thank you to my colleagues, and, uh, congratulations on the successful business here in Santa Ana.
So, first and foremost, I would like to thank, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, Councilmember Fan, Mayor Becerra, and the rest of the council, uh, for honoring our family, our family's contributions to the city of Santa Ana tonight as part of API Heritage Month. Uh, my name is Stephen Lau. I'm a fifth-generation, uh, family, Lau family member, uh, that's been in the US. So, as noted by, um, the council members, uh, the Lau family has a rich history spanning all the way back to the late eighteen hundreds, where we were brought from the Guangzhou region in China to build the railroad, which, uh, helped, uh, unite the United, United States from the west to the east coast. Um, and like all immigrants, uh, our family came for better opportunities. And later on down the road, uh, my grandfather Fred Lau brought his family and started grocery, grocery store, as noted, as, uh, which still stands today, uh, twelve sixteen West First Street, the crossroads of Bristol and First. And, um, besides being entrepreneurs, we all are, as noted, we're called college-educated. And in fact, my father, who was a former educator and professor at Santa Ana College, he also worked for the city. Uh, he encouraged me to pursue higher education, as I have a master's, and I'm working on my second master's degree. And he also encouraged, uh, the youth of Santa Ana to obtain a college degree, as he, uh, really emphasized education and upward mobility, um, whether it's a customer employee, and many of them have done very well for themselves. So, our family, um, we have worked very hard to get where we are, but, um, it wouldn't be remotely possible without the support of the Santa Ana community. So, I would like to thank, uh, you all for your time, and it's been an honor to speak to you all tonight, and thank you once again for honoring our family. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, councilmembers, for that, uh, presentation, and thank you to the Lau family for receiving the proclamation, uh, for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Let me go ahead and now, uh, go to the staff presentations, and I believe, uh, we have a presentation from the Orange County Transportation Department.
Um, thank you, mayor, this is Christine Ridge City Manager. Um, OCTA will not be joining us tonight, and we did invite him, and they are happy to come in the future when they have a major update to provide. But in place of that, we have our own, uh, Public Works Director, who is going to give you a presentation on the status of the construction. So, I'll turn it over to Nobel Saba.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, and member of the city council. Tonight, I have an update for you on the OC streetcar construction enclosures. The platform installation from Pacific to Bristol, and Santa Ana Boulevard from Pacific to Bristol enclosure, the closure of the south half of the street to accommodate construction of the second streetcar station stop. of the second streetcar station stop at Bristol, which is the red line on, on the map. Closure began today, on Tuesday, May 3. On Santa Ana Boulevard, from Pacific Avenue to Bristol Street, the following traffic configuration will be in place. Westbound traffic will remain open, that's the green arrows. Full closure of the south side of the street, local access only, that's the red line. Local access only will be provided to, and access to residents and businesses will be maintained at all times. When exiting driveways on the south side of the street, travel eastbound bound and perform a U-turn at the end of this raised median to merge with traffic, with traffic and westbound lanes, eastbound travelers are detoured north on Pacific to eastbound Civic Center Drive to, to the southbound Bristol and left at Santa Ana Boulevard. That is the blue arrows, as you can see, there will be a detour from Pacific to Civic Center down to Bristol to avoid going east on Santa Ana Boulevard. That closure will, is planned to be four to five months. Track installation on, on Santa Ana Boulevard from Bristol to Flower, the closure of south, of the southern half of the street to accommodate construction eastbound for the streetcar tracks. That is the red line on the map. Closure began today, Tuesday, May 3. On Santa Ana Boulevard, from Bristol Street to Parton Street, the following traffic configuration will be in place. Full closure of south side of the street, local access only, that is the red line. Eastbound and westbound traffic shifted to the north side of the street. Those are the green and the yellow, and the, sorry, green and the blue arrows on the map. Full closure of the street parking on both sides of Santa Ana Boulevard. So there will no, be no parking on either side of Santa Ana Boulevard in that section. Partial intersection closure at Baker Street, which is the yellow square. Advanced notice will be provided if driveways, restrictions, or full intersection closures are necessary. This work will take from four, four to five months. Track installations on Fourth Street. Fourth Street closure on Bush intersection and Main to push closure. Closure of Bush intersection to accommodate construction of the eastbound streetcar tracks, concrete sidewalks, curbs, and gutter replacement. That is the red dot on the map. Closure of Main to Bush to accommodate construction of eastbound streetcar tracks and associated improvements, that is the red line on the map. Closure began on Wednesday, April 27. The following traffic configuration will be in place. Full closure of Bush intersection for vehicle traffic and pedestrians. That is the red dot on the map, that will be closed. Motorists are detoured to Third Street, from Broadway to Lacy. Those are the green arrows, back and forth, eastbound, westbound. Pedestrian access to businesses will be maintained on both the north and south side of Fourth Street. To access businesses on Fourth, from Main to Bush, pedestrian will be asked to use the Main Street intersection, or intersection. To access businesses on Fourth, from Bush to French, pedestrians will have to be asked to utilize the Spurgeon Bridge. This work is estimated to, they work for the, I'm sorry, the work for the intersection is estimated to take four weeks. The work for the Fourth Street from Main to Bush is estimated to take from four to five months. And that is the dead, the red dot and the red line on the map. OCTA is holding a public meeting on Friday, May 6, this coming Friday, from 8:30 to 9:30 at the Frida Cinema, located at 305 East Fourth Street this coming Friday, for the public to attend. With that, I am open for any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Director Saba. Let me go ahead and bring it back to the council to see if there's any questions or comments.
Mayor Sarmiento, this is Mayor Protem Becerra.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So, so this is good news to hear that we're seeing that the OCTA and the contractor are expediting construction. The frustrating thing, though, is that I'm hearing it from our staff and not from OCTA. I see Delilah Snell in the audience, and I point out Delilah because I can attest that I was at a meeting at her store with OCTA staff, and they said that if we invited them, well, no, actually, I'll take it back. The community asked, why isn't OCTA at each council meeting? And OCTA staff told everybody in the room that they would only come if invited. So let me ask staff, did you invite OCTA staff?
Yes, we did.
And so here they are, not here. It's disappointing, because if you want to be a partner with this community, you got to hear the good and the bad. And there is some good news that OCTA is giving. I mean, the idea of expediting construction and hurrying up through that segment of Fourth Street is great news, but it's disappointing, because when I go down there at night, I still see lack of security guards. And to be clear, because I know the retort from OCTA will be, well, that's what police are for. And yes, police are there to enforce our local laws, and our police are not giving that up. But just like the average person here, we want eyes on the streets, we need that assistance. And when you've got a street that's blocked off because of construction and the entity that's doing the construction won't provide that security that they promised, it's very disappointing. So maybe that's why they're not here, because they don't want to hear this sort of commentary. And I'm sure that even if I wasn't here, there's plenty of people here in the audience that are willing to say that. So anyways, I'm just going to express my frustration that OCTA couldn't be bothered to be here. But I will at least, on some sort of silver lining, express my appreciation that at least they're expediting construction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments, any other comments? All right, seen none. We'll go ahead and move along to the next item. That is the, yes?
I was jumping ahead of you, I apologize.
Sorry, City Manager, go ahead, that, you've got the next item as well, the update on the homelessness.
Yes, so Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, we're going to do a homeless update. We have some of the reoccurring topics, but as requested, we are going to cover the care court, the governor's proposal for care courts. And tonight, this homeless update is going to be given by Ken Gominski, who is our part-time homeless services manager. And he is really the one that is on the street level and is best adept at giving this presentation as well as answering any questions you may have. Ken Gominski.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Even when I'm not here, I sit at home and I watch the council meeting, just like everybody else. So I knew I'd be here to answer some questions that came up last time, and I'm looking forward to having that discussion. Tonight, we're going to talk about ongoing COLT activity and highlights, our efforts with the SMART program. Something called the Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS, the governor's care court proposal, and the system of the Homeless Navigation Center. Let's start with COLT. In March, COLT continued its daily coordinated responses throughout the city. COLT contacted 335 different individuals that were experiencing homelessness, providing outreach services as well as enforcement action when necessary. They conducted 417 cleanups of various sites and of various sizes. These cleanups are generally larger in scale and require more time to perform than routine public works cleanups. This was up from 399 cleanups in February. COLT performed or was engaged in 112 arrests or the issuance of citations for various offenses. And COLT placed or assisted in the placement of 80 individuals into some form of shelter. Now our update on SMART. And again, SMART is the enhanced partnership with CityNet that we're engaged in as we address homelessness. If you look at the screen, you'll see that between December 1st of 2021 and April 25th of 2022, the SMART team has engaged in 2,528 outreach contacts, has provided case management to 838 individuals currently experiencing homelessness. 418 individuals have been exited from the streets of Santa Ana, that's into shelter, into families, into permanent supportive housing, any number of different mechanisms to get people off of the streets. 508 total COVID-19 engagements. What I think is truly important is to look towards the bottom and see 3,666 calls dispatched. That's 2,311 that came in directly from our community. 519 calls that were, came from the Santa Ana Police Department or the Orange County Fire Authority. 465 calls by way of the My Santa Ana app. And 371 proactive contacts. What I also find interesting, would like to share, is in discussions with the Santa Ana Police Department, what I'm hearing is, is that calls for service in regards to homeless-related, homeless-related activity are dropping dramatically, meaning that as calls for service can be sent to SMART, that is freeing up our officers' time. But just as importantly, when you consider, as we have talked about here many, many times, the amount of time that it takes law enforcement to respond to a call for service can be protracted depending upon the call for service type. On average, SMART is reporting that they have a 24-minute response time. I do know, because I've talked to several of you about this, that response time is not 24 minutes across the board. However, on average, SMART is responding in about 24 minutes, which is a fairly, I think, impressive response rate, considering how long we know that it takes our law enforcement to respond to some types of calls. SMART operates seven days a week, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And I would again like to bring to the attention of the community that the SMART phone number is 714-242-3706. Next, I'd like to discuss a highlight that I consider to be a true reflection of all of the different components of the Santa Ana homeless response to an incident of teamwork in the field. An encampment with two individuals sleeping in front of a business that was opening was observed. COLT officers contacted the individuals who were sleeping and spoke with them about shelter and various resources that could be offered. The two males explained they had medical issues. And when I talk about medical issues, if you look on the picture on the upper right, you'll see an individual with large abscesses all on his right leg. What you can't see is even larger abscesses on his left leg, and the under other individual had similar types of medical issues. Aside from the medical issues, these individuals had warrants, and that prevented them from being able to go to shelter. COLT officers immediately contacted the SMART team, and the SMART team, SMART team arrived on scene to support COLT. COLT and SMART together identified these medical issues, which included severe infections of all of their legs, based on long-term narcotics use. Both males were suffering from cellulitis and severe cases of MRSA. One, we'll just say that the injuries were severe. Officers explained that a medical response team could come to the location to address their wounds and try to get them further medical care through a recuperative care facility, because again, these individuals were resistant to even go to the hospital. If you look up at the center picture above the slide seven, you'll see the county's Mobile Medical Response Unit that is staffed with a doctor and medical professionals. The Medical Response Unit arrived on scene, provided triage and medical assistance for our two homeless individuals with medical issues. After they had worked on them for some time, they managed to secure locations at a recuperative care facility, and those individuals were transported to that recuperative care facility. Next, we have the Homeless Management Information Center system. The US Department of Housing and Urban Development, the federal agency that provides homeless-related funding to state and local governments, requires participation in something called the Continuum of Care, or the COC. Involvement in the COC requires the use of a computerized data collection system, which the county has named HMIS. HMIS is used to measure homelessness and the effectiveness of related service delivery systems, and is the primary reporting tool for HUD homeless service grants, as well as for other public streams of funding related to homelessness. We had an opportunity to speak to one of the councilmembers in regard to data collection as it pertains to homelessness. And this is an example of what HMIS information is available. 211 OC designated by the Continuum of Care to operate HMIS and is the lead agency for the county of Orange. Based on all the information that they receive from all of the outreach and engagement that is provided by not only the county, but the nonprofits throughout the county, this dataset is populated. Now, as it sits now, it's stagnant, but if you go to 211 and you click on any of the different items, such as 510 people in street outreach, it then changes all the data to reflect what disability information specifically ties to that street outreach. How many clients left domestic violence and are now on the street? This information is powerful as we look at what are the different needs our homeless population has. This is a different set of data that is also collected by way of HMIS. Next, council requested further information on what's being referred to as the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Court Proposal. As it is proposed, this is a framework to deliver court-ordered mental health and substance abuse disorder services for individuals experiencing homelessness. Care Court is progressing through the state legislature as Senate Bill 1338 authored by Senators Tom Humberg and Susan Telemontes Eggman. I have been following this and found that there is quite a bit of discussions going on in regards to that. Core components of Care Court. Care Court is a proposed framework to deliver mental health and substance use disorder services to individuals who need it. It connects a person in crisis with a court-ordered care plan. It connects a person in crisis with a court ordered care plan for up to twelve months with the possibility to extend for an additional twelve months. The framework provides individuals with a clinically appropriate, community based set of services and supports. This includes court ordered stabilization medications, wellness and recovery supports, connection to social services and a housing plan. You can imagine that this is probably going to have quite a bit of difficulty as it works its way through the legislature. How it's planned or proposed to work? A referral occurs. An individual with untreated schizophrenia spectrum or other psychotic disorders who lacks medical decision making capacity may be referred to the court by a family member, behavioral health provider, first responder or other approved party to provide care and prevent institutionalization. Following, a clinical evaluation will be provided. The civil court would order that a clinical evaluation occur and appoint a public defender and something referred to as a supporter. Court reviews the clinical evaluation and if the individual meets the criteria, the court orders the development of a care plan. The care plan is developed by county behavioral health, the participant and the supporter, including behavioral health treatment, stabilization medication and a housing plan. Court reviews and adopts the care plan with both the individual and county behavioral health as party to the court order for up to twelve months. County Behavioral Health Care Team with participant as well as the supporter would begin treatment and regularly review and update the ongoing care plan as needed, as well as a mental health advance directive for any future crises. Court provides accountability with status hearings for up to a second twelve months if needed. Successful completion and graduation by the court. Participant remains eligible for ongoing treatment, supportive services and housing in the community to support long term recovery. Mental health advanced directives put in place for any future crises. That continues to monitor thirteen thirty eight as it moves through the legislation. And I believe that all of you on the dais and everybody at home know about as much about this as I do as it continues to change and morph as it works its way through the state legislature. Lastly, what I know you have all been waiting for is our update on the Santa Ana Police, or City of Santa Ana Homeless Navigation Center. Yesterday, the temporary woman's emergency shelter, which is housed within the Homeless Navigation Center, opened in the southeast corner of our site. The emergency shelter ordered by US District Court Judge David Carter includes a woman's only residential area for a limited number of women, separate restrooms for shelter and staff, office spaces for staff, two exits that flow through a two hour rated fire corridor and an exterior path of ingress and egress. This emergency shelter area is currently separated from the rest of the building through locked access doors and temporary solid barricades. As the construction continues, more dorms and staff rooms will become accessible. Of key importance, four women asleep on the streets of Santa Ana on Sunday night took the courageous step to accept shelter Monday afternoon. In speaking to these women, I knew two of the four. The key difference in accepting shelter yesterday versus the many times before was the shelter was in Santa Ana, close to their doctors, close to the social service appointments they had. They needed and wanted to stay in San Ana, which is their home. Each one of these, these women is already working with CityNet and the Illumination Foundation to secure permanent supportive housing. But while they wait to become document ready and secure that permanent supportive housing, they will finally be safe inside of our shelter. The photos shown on your screen provide a snapshot of the progress of the site. Last week, the asphalt was replaced and parking striping occurred over the weekend. And every day is another new challenge. The second floor continues to move forward with completion of restrooms and the installation of carpet. I saw pictures, the carpet is in. The ability to open the remainder of the shelter is directly tied to completion of the second floor based on the fire alarm and the Illumination Foundation staff needs as they move forward in providing the wraparound services for the homeless population that we will be paying for. Here it comes. Although a completion date remains difficult to specifically identify, it will be arriving very soon. I know that each and every one of you on the dais as well as everyone I work with and deal with within City Hall asks on a daily basis, when will the shelter be done? It remains a moving target. We have had promises and promises and promises. And then it's something new. And then it's something else that's new. I can simply assure you that your city manager, your assistant city manager and your executive directors have thrown virtually everything they can as far as support towards the completion of this shelter. If the contractor decides or requests for some kind of inspection, your inspection team is there. When the fire department needs to inspect the fire alarm or the fire sprinkler, we have received above and beyond service from them. When Public Works is asked to come out and help move things and get the shelter ready, Nabil has been incredibly gracious. Every single one of your executive directors has stepped up and is doing their part to try to get us to the finish line. I would love to be able to tell you it's this date. But I have never in the past, and I will not tonight, lied to you. I can just tell you we're close. I am ready for any and all questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Gominski. Very thorough and brace yourself. Just kidding. Let me go ahead and bring it back to the council for any questions or comments. Anybody want to start? All right, I see Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Samento. Impressive how you caught me. You're not here in person. But thank you for your presentation, sir. My question pertains to members of the public. So recently I got a call from a resident that was by First and Sullivan and said that there were people experiencing homelessness there that wanted assistance that live by the mobile homes that are there. And a lot of the times people that are driving home, you know, you see somebody, you know, after a while you get to know them. And they had requested some assistance and, and they live there adjacent to this parking lot and said that after I had made a request to have somebody go out there to help them, that nobody showed up, that they were watching for over two hours. So could you confirm, how can members of the public ensure that the contacts that they're making, that there is follow up?
I followed everything until the last part. How can the general public ensure that the contacts that SMART is making, that there is follow up? Or the contacts they're making to you is there's follow up?
Yes. So do we have a system that is conclusive that says we have identified or we have not identified that said individual that needs assistance?
So specifically for your instance, I reached out to the SMART team and I had them dispatched. I can call the SMART team and find out when they were dispatched, what time they arrived and who they spoke to. I have the ability to do those kinds of things just like if anybody wanted to call the watch commander and find out what the, the answer to a call for service might be. So I have the ability to go back and follow up on any call for service that the SMART team is dispatched to.
Okay.
And I'll be more than willing to give my email address out. And anybody that has any issues or problems with the SMART team response can send me an email and I'll be more than happy to check into it and get back to them.
Thank you, sir. And for members of the public, let's say in this instance, you live by a, a location where there is a, a, a small group of people that are, that are seeking shelter. How can they go about requesting services and assistance for people that are willing to get that help?
So the city's preference is that individuals continue to use the My Santa Ana app. The best way for us to ensure that something happened with that request is to put it into a system that doesn't rely on word of mouth, but it's data driven. And that, that data then gets pushed that we can then follow up with and say, what happened when this specific incident was addressed? I will say this. It is my experience that a lot of people that the normal everyday person talked to who's homeless will say, I am willing to go to a shelter right now. And when the Colt team or the SMART team show up and say, okay, we're ready to go, there's hesitancy. And there's generally some hesitancy that we would say, how about if you come back in an hour? Or I have to do this and this and this. How about if you come back tomorrow? Because when these individuals choose to take that step, it is a courageous act on their part. It really is. And so just because they tell somebody who wants to help them, who's not part of the system, that I'm willing to go, I'm willing to go. If they're willing to go, we have places for them. We do. They may not like some of the rules or some of the regulations. We don't have as many couples beds as we should. And some people are unwilling to be separated from their partners even for short times. So when we're talking about sheltering individuals, it is a incredibly complex thing. And we just have to continually remind ourselves that when these people do decide to go, we have to have a place for them that will work with their needs.
Thank you, sir. And my last question is, how many follow ups happen before a person does commit to saying, I'm ready to go, get that help?
So I have a lot of experience in talking to people. But I think maybe it takes more time. If a cop goes up to you a hundred times, maybe you're less, maybe a little more resistant. But I can tell you that on average in talking to CityNet, it might take a minimum of twenty contacts.
That sounds right.
A minimum of twenty contacts to develop a, a rapport. It was funny, I was at the shelter this morning when another lady was transported and dropped off. She's been living at the corner of Third and Baker, I believe it was for some time. And they had tried and tried and tried. CityNet said that they'd probably gone up to her and talked to her for thirty times. However, today they said, how about if we just take you over to this shelter and you can take a look and see if you want to stay? And she got there, she got all excited. She had her cigarette, walked over and gave me a hug. It was a good day. And decided she was going to stay and try to make it work. It's a big step for her, big step for her. But San Ana had a place for her. It was a good day.
Thank you, sir. That concludes my question.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent comments, excellent responses. Just to the AV team, when you pull back this way, it really helps me see who has their hands raised so I can totally call on you. That way it makes it a lot easier. That way I'm not guessing by voice. But I see, I see council member fans hand up and I'll call on her and whoever's ready can, can be ready to go after that.
Thank you. I guess it's not so much questions, but a request regarding CARE Court. I, I understand the reason for it. You know, there are a lot of folks who are experiencing homelessness who are unable to take care of themselves. They have medical needs. But frankly, it also evokes a lot of fear in my heart because we know that there is also, you know, one some, for example, in the conservatorship world, it's very hard and the people who are most affected by conservatorships tend to be those with, whether it's a mental disability or physical disability. And frankly, everybody's heard about Free Britney. And that's someone who's a multimillionaire, super famous pop star who was under a conservatorship for, you know, over a decade. So I worry with a program like this that we end up going back into a system in which we do start to institutionalize people that we feel, we start taking away their decision making ability and their ownership of themselves. And I know it's a difficult balance with, with public health, their own health and, and you know, we fifty one fifty folks when we fear that there's a harm to themselves or others, but it's temporary. So I just, I guess, as you know, information about this moves on, I would love to continue to get updates about how this legislation changes and how it might affect us here in San Ana. And it could be an email, it doesn't have to be, because I know bills change with every committee. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll provide that.
Thank you, council member. Council member locals?
Thank you, Mayor Samento. So Ken, I have a question because I get pinged a lot on this. This is like the number one issue in our area. And it can, you, you have a law enforcement background, so I think you would be, you're, you're able to answer this question. For folks that report seeing people that are nude, can you please explain the process of what kind of enforceable action that is?
So the city of San Ana has a municipal code against public nudity, nudity, public nudity, nudity, not nudity. So there's a municipal code for that. There are also California Penal Code laws that apply to people being in various forms of undress. But in order for those laws to kick in, generally they have to be doing something for some type of sexual gratification. With that being said, our public nudity SA, San Ana Municipal Code talks about areolas being exposed, genitalia being exposed, the buttocks below the cleft, I believe.
So if a San Ana resident sees that, what is the process for them? What, what should they do and what should they expect out of our police department?
So misdemeanors not committed in a police officer's presence cannot be enforced. So there's a difference between the felony and a misdemeanor. Felony is much more serious crimes. If a resident sees somebody robbing somebody else and the officer doesn't see that robbery, the officer can make an arrest because it's a felony. For misdemeanors, a misdemeanor, an officer has to see that crime occur in their presence. So unless the officer sees the public nudity, they can't do anything. The general public does have the ability to make a private person's arrest for that. However, However.
Those. So in short, you're saying if I see someone nude at the park in the street and I call SAPD and they don't see it, that's not an enforceable action, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to explain it.
No, I know, I know. And I just wanna, I want the, I want people to understand that because that's one of the top concerns that I often get questions about and I will tell them that and they'll be like, you're lying to me. And I let them know like this is the information that I have received from the, our department. Um, so another question that I have for you is, and I actually would love our code enforcement manager to come up here if he's able to. Thank you. I don't know about that.
You know.
Um, can you explain to the public the role of private businesses in collaboration with the city?
Okay, so good question. Because, you know, to put it mildly, we try to balance the universe, right? So we understand that the city has a responsibility and we have a commitment to help. But, um, we're taking a perspective that private proprietors have to make some type of investment in helping us and try to address some of those concerns, especially a private property. So for example, when we get a code enforcement type of concern regarding homeless or transients, we have to balance this perspective from the private property owners. Where they're being concerned that folks are going to property trespassing or taking stuff or sleeping within their, their, uh, perimeter. But we can't just go out and kick them out for the sake of, of removing folks if they're not doing something illegal. That means that private property owner has to do certain things. This is where the famous six oh two form comes in, the no trespassing. This is the whole point about folks, um, putting in additional lighting, right? Trimming some bushes so that folks don't, don't, um, live or, or use that as part of their sleeping purposes. So they can then take advantage of the homeless services that we provide, right? Uh, making sure they secure, for example, the trash can area. So it's not used for, for vandalism or access or rather criminal activity. So when we go out there, we try to look at those type of, of, of perspectives, making sure that the property owner has some level of responsibility in addition to the city providing services. So it's a balanced approach.
Okay, thank you.
And, and for it, and so I clarify, and sometimes though, we are required to, you should notice this. And I say it in a mild manner, more as a corrective aspect. But again, like extra lighting, right? Securing some items, making sure that the property is vigilant and maintained adequately goes a long way. If a property looks abandoned or that folks are not interested in maintaining the property, then you're gonna get that level of attraction.
Okay, thank you, Alvaro. Um, and I think that's really important for the public to understand because we want to and, you know, we wanna be able to have these partnerships with private businesses. But I do not believe the city of San Ana should be subsidizing all of the cleanups on behalf of these giant corporations. I don't think that's fair for our residents. And so I know Alvaro, the planning staff, code enforcement, we get emails on a daily basis. And these are some of the two top questions that we always get. And so I wanted to have this dialogue, you know, in the open, um, so people understand, you know, what is the process, what is the train of thought behind how we are doing things now. Um, so those are gonna be all my questions. Thank you.
To your point also, when you talk about these big property owners and not wanting to subsidize them, that's specifically why the city attorney filed these suits against Union Pacific Railroad for exactly that.
Thank you, council member. Uh, anybody else? Uh, Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Ben Yonos.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Um, you already know where I'm going with this, right? Twenty-four minutes, huh?
That's what they tell me. That's what my data shows.
Now, before you got here, last time, our city manager had to hear me say this, there are lies, there are damn lies, then there are statistics, right? We all know that adage. Um, you know, I, I could go around and tell everybody to use the My Santa Anna app. I know from my own experience using it, it is efficient, it is effective. I hear other people tell me it's efficient and effective. I have very rarely heard somebody tell me, no way, nope, they never cleaned up the graffiti. It took them two weeks to do it. On the smart line though, that's all I'm hearing. I have not heard any of the success stories. I have not heard somebody say, twenty-four minutes, no, we, we saw him in twelve. No, that is not happening. So I know today's an update, but I would say as you're taking the feedback from this council, understand that what we're hearing from the community, what we're experiencing ourselves, because I'm out there, it's not working and, and the responses are terrible as far as timing wise. So the idea that, as I said last time, if, if calling smart is meant to be the substitute for calling PD just for the response, not talking about the type of response, but just for folks that aren't going to get into the weeds of who does what and when. All they know is they're calling a number that they have on the fridge and they expect a response. They're not getting it. So that, that is a concern for me. Um, the shelter completion, just, just so we're all clear. The, the requirement for the shelter comes from Judge Carter, correct? Through the settlement?
The man, the, the idea that we have a shelter in place comes from a settlement with the federal court. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so our, our tenacity in pursuing this is to uphold the obligation that we entered into, correct?
As well as the city's commitment to deal and do our fair share for the homeless.
Correct. But I, I'm saying is that, I mean, for, for all, because most of the time our shelters, even prior to, um, not having Red Hill and Dyer, we were not seeing a hundred percent occupancy in those shelters, correct?
No, it was about seventy-five percent.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I wanted to, you know, kinda echo what, uh, Alvaro Nunez talked about when it comes to the private property owners. I wanna thank council member Lopez for bringing it up. You know, when I brought up my council member item last meeting about having contact information at these shopping centers, it's because you have these large out-of-town corporate property owners who don't seem to respond when it comes to maintaining their property. God knows if, uh, our grass is overgrown, I know I'd see Alvaro and his team. But the, the thing that's so frustrating because it's one thing if it's a smaller site, but especially for Ward Four down in South Bristol, we're seeing so much activity. And a lot of that activity could be resolved by simply putting up gating, uh, lights, extra cameras, things that would deter criminal activity. And we're seeing neglect. Um, for those that, that know on the south end, we've got one shopping center where there's one person covering the entire shopping center that goes almost three quarters of a mile in length. That's ridiculous. It's, it's understaffed. And so I appreciate the dialogue between my colleague and, and Mr. Nunez because i- it's crime prevention through environmental design accepted. And that's something that law enforcement has always preached and, uh, planning has, has well. Uh, but I wanna ask you, uh, Ken, or maybe it's Alvaro, so God forbid, we actually have property owners that say, hey, you know what, maybe there are some ways that I could deter criminal activity on my property with some improvements. And by the way, we've had some shopping centers, even in my ward, that have actually been proactive in doing this. But for those that are on the fence and are looking for advice on what improvements they should do for their property, who should they contact from city staff?
So I know that I speak for Alvaro Nunez, as always, and say that I know his staff is more than willing to go out there and, and take that meeting. I know that the police department has staff specifically trained in SEPTED. And I will also go out and go talk to anybody about what are some things they can do to better target harden their property so that not only do they have to spend less money on damage, but, um, they'll be better neighbors for the community.
Alvaro?
Yes. So that, that is the key. So the idea is to make sure that, uh, when we offer advice, we don't make it worse. So, and I'll give a good example. There's this property and that really stands out. And then people surprise me, hey, how come we don't put gates in the little suffered areas, right? Why don't we just make sure that it's guarded so people, um, don't sleep when, when the business is closed? But there are also other requirements, right? Building code requires, uh, fire code requirements. So we have to be sure when we make recommendations to address one issue, we don't complicate it and then endanger those, um, folks, you know, using that business. But that being the case, like we do with South Bristol, um, some of them didn't respond to the original emails, requests for meetings. So we're calling them out and we're saying, hey, can you do Tuesday at nine or can you do Tuesday at ten, right? So the idea is that we have to be proactive, we have to be very diligent, that this takes a little bit of planning and time. But it is, you know, us and court enforcement going out and we're also going with the, um, like, uh, Ken said, uh, PD there, because we have, uh, folks that deal with the public, uh, safety issues. And we make those topical recommendations. We're going out to the whole property. He says, okay, what can you do? Uh, trim the bushes, like we said, put some extra lighting, uh, make sure that there's a lock and that, uh, water faucet, right? If that electrical outlet does not be used, take it out. Things that don't make it an attraction, so it doesn't become a problem. If, if we require them to make, install some level of gates, as long as they're open during off, uh, office hours, then that's okay. If it's vacated, we make sure that if there are things that are locked, there's folks not being locked inside the building in case of an emergency. So that's what, that takes a little bit of time, but that's what we're doing.
So, so to answer my question, they're calling you then?
Us and, uh, security, but yes, i- it's a team effort.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I mean, just in regards to if a property owner wants
Yes.
city input to improve their property.
Yes. And we'll probably put down the website moving forward.
Okay. And by the way, Alvaro and Ken, thank you guys, because honestly, the, the two of you, you've done a lot to help us on South Bristol. I know we're a long ways away from getting to where we wanna be, but I know that we're making the progress. So, uh, thank you guys for that. And mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, council member Ben Yonos.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, and thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Gominski for the presentation. Though, I, I'm gonna ask a question again that my colleague asked because I wanna make sure that we hear it twice, if what you're telling us is what's supposed to happen. Um, I have, uh, a niece and nephew, one's ten years old and one's four, nephew's four. Occasionally, they tricked me into taking them shopping to Target mostly to get all the dolls and all this other stuff. So we're walking out of Target and we come across, it's happened already, we come across a naked man. Just acting all over the place in the parking lot on Bristol and Alton, usually around the railroad tracks, but bouncing back and forth, crossing the street. Can I call nine one one? Because there is a man exposing himself to my four-year-old nephew and ten-year-old niece.
I can tell you that you can call nine one one anytime you believe that there's an emergency. Whether nine one one will take the phone call or tell you to call the regular phone number, that's up to nine one one. But to your point, anytime that somebody is running around naked, my first thought is not that they're just running around naked, is that they're running around naked because they're either experiencing some type of drug delirium that has caused them to decide that their body's overheating and now I have to take off all my clothes, which happens all the time. And should necessitate an immediate law enforcement and probably fire response to make sure that that person's okay. Or if that person is having some kind of a psychological event that required them to take off all their clothes and run around crazy, then they're probably a danger to themselves, a danger to others, a danger to traffic. What council member Lopez talked about was what can be done. I took that as what can be done as far as enforcement. I'm telling you that you as a council member or any other member of any other resident of the city of San Ana has the right to call the police department anytime they believe they have an issue. But more importantly than that, the, what you're talking about, about people running around naked should, in my belief, necessitate some type of, uh, public safety response.
Okay. Now, if the person were to just be standing there naked, um, near the parking lot, exposing themselves to minors, my four-year-old nephew and ten-year-old niece, would that be considered indecent exposure to a minor? Therefore necessitating some kind of either obviously paramedics to get them help. Because no one just hangs out naked outside a shopping center or, um, law enforcement to make sure they're, they're or help them cover up, because I'm not gonna do that if I'm with my four-year-old nephew and ten-year-old niece, which, because they're watching that too. Are they not victims of indecent exposure? And I, I'm trying to understand if that, because i- is, that would be a misdemeanor?
Yes, but that doesn't cover indecent exposure. Um, that would be the SAMC violation, what you're discussing. For the most part, most of the calls for service, since we're talking about naked people, most of the calls for service that I have been a part of and responded to or, uh, seen, very rarely do we see fully naked people about. Most of the, uh, the calls for service in regards to some type of nakedness are people urinating in public and people called about that being an indecent exposure. Or people defecating in public, which happens. Uh, as well as people that walk down the street with their, uh, pants around their knees and they just keep walking. Any of those responses, any of those issues should necessitate some type of law enforcement or OCFA response to make sure that person is okay, I believe. At a minimum, I believe that somebody from the smart team should go out and try to contact them. If the person still remains exposed when the officer's there, then that is a violation of SAMC for nudity, for public nudity. If a person wishes to engage in a private person's arrest when the officer wasn't there, that's another step that can be taken.
Okay. So I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand because like my colleague, I oftentimes get, you know, get tagged, we all get tagged on these, these, uh, videos on social media and get sent these videos via text or email of just nudity and, and, uh, i- it's troubling that our families have to deal with this and live with it. So that they're, they, would they be able to call nine one one at first to, I mean,
As stated, council member, if you see somebody running around the parking lot of Target completely nude, I think that's probably an unusual incident that would require some type of response. Uh, I think that that person is probably having some type of mental issue or some kind of narcotics-related issue.
Okay.
Um, I, I believe that if they're running in and out of traffic, that always necessitates a nine one one call and a code three lights and siren response from law enforcement to try to keep that person out of the intersection or out of traffic, uh, so that not only they don't become injured, but anybody doesn't become involved in a traffic accident trying to avoid them.
Okay. Thank you. That, that clarified that part. I just wanna make sure that our residents know that they are able to call law enforcement and report this, whether it's the ghetto CFA or police, because instances that I've come across, it's not just a, a quick exposure and then cover themselves up. I- it lingers. Uh, so if a police officer were to show up within twenty, thirty minutes, they would probably see the same exposure that was just experienced by my four-year-old nephew and ten-year-old niece. But appreciate it, Mr. Gominski. Thank you.
Understood, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member Mendoza.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. My question to Officer, or actually, um, Mr. Gominski, is that number that you handed out earlier, that I, I believe it was seven one four, two four two three seven zero six. Is that the number that a homeless individual or someone else who is trying to help the homeless individual? Would they call to get the, s- some kind of services, let's say? The homeless person that refuses to have, um, the other kind of services, uh, or to go into a shelter, but maybe they'll help with medications or maybe just the bath or washing their clothes someplace. What number can they call to just get, uh, let's say some services?
So you're a little difficult to hear, ma'am, but I think I understand your, your question. With that being said, the smart team that can again be reached at seven one four two four two three seven zero six. They can offer assistance not just for shelter opportunities, but they can connect homeless individuals with all kinds of different nonprofit service providers based on whatever needs that individual has. If a person is trying to help someone else get out of homelessness, then you can call that number to get information, uh, in regards to helping.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That was my question. And I would also like to personally thank you for the cleaning up the homeless issue that occurred on Sunday over on Sullivan and McFadden. It was clean and really nicely done by the time I got back. So I was concerned for the pedestrians that were in the area. So thank you very much for clearing that up so quickly.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Ken, for that presentation and for responding. You know, we did have quite a few questions and answers, but these are more informational. So there should be information that we are providing or direction that we're giving to staff as opposed to having an exchange because then we could be going beyond the scope of what this item is. And if we need to have a more thorough Q and A, maybe what we do is agendize this Madam City Manager. So that way we don't get ourselves into trouble. But Ken, I just wanted to thank you personally because I know that you attended along with me. Supervisor Foley, who represents District Two at the County Board of Supervisors, I think last week or the week before. The only hearing I've ever been invited to by the by a supervisor that represents this district. So in the fifteen years I've been here, that was the one and only time that I've ever been invited to to that chamber to discuss the the issue and the crisis of homelessness. And so, Ken, you did a great job. And just so all of you know. The whole point of that discussion was to call mayors from different cities throughout the county. And try to figure out how much we've all spent and aggregate that together on trying to address the the issue of the impact of homelessness on on our communities. And really, the supervisor's purpose and point was to demonstrate that these are monies that should have rightfully been spent by the county towards these efforts and towards these services. So, Ken, you did a great job to to other people's points about the response time when it comes to sitting at what you know, what I'd like to do is, you know, I know twenty four minutes is 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 probably not something that we all probably find a lot of satisfaction in because I know, you know, I've had some residents call, I've had to call myself. And it's been more extended. We know that sometimes these encounters, because we're dealing with humans and not just simply painting over a wall. You know, you can get through that really quickly, but when you're dealing with a person going through crisis, going through a an episode, it does take time. You don't just go in and out. So what I'd like you to do is and take this just more as a comment. Let us know how, you know, what support you need to maybe improve that response time. I am heartened to hear that that, you know, our our officers are being relieved of having to deal with some of these responses so they can do more, you know, police core functions and respond to those. So that's all I will say on that. With respect to care court, I completely agree with Councilmember Fan's point about just this really delicate balance of, you know, being too invasive when it comes to violating a person's own civil liberties and rights. And she's right, there was a time that, you know, most folks were institutionalized and kept in congregate care and were basically just held involuntarily. The problem is is that now we have swung sort of the other way. And we are dealing with people who don't have the ability to make informed consent as to whether or not they want to be on their own or whether or not they want to be serviced. So right now, the big city mayors are struggling with this whole issue of care courts. And I think all of us, to a to a to a person of the Big Thirteen mayors, have supported the care courts in concept. There's still some details that are being dealt with through the legislative process. I believe it just made it out of the legislative Senate Legislative Committee. So it will be very difficult because for me, you know, I am very concerned about violating a person's own personal, independent and autonomous rights. But at the same time, you have those have to be balanced against the rights of those families that live in our in our community, in our city, that are low income people of color. And they also have a right not to have these these impacts on their community. So these are very, very profound, difficult questions. But I think that the governor and his team that are proposing this, they're creating a good forum for those who are concerned about this because I know that the ACLU and Disability Rights California have already filed a strong opposition to the care court concept. But I think that at least we're having the conversation. I think a good result will come out of it. And this conversation needs to be had because whatever we're doing now, we're spending millions on 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 capital improvements and creating placements and continuums of housing. But if people refuse those placements and those services, then all this money will be will be spent fruitlessly and not really trying to accomplish the goal that we all want, which is to provide people help and provide people a roof over their head and services so they can transition back into society. So that is it. I will make sure I keep you all posted on on where the big city mayors land on the care courts issue. But let's go ahead and move along to the next to the next item, which is Madam City Manager, do we have, or excuse me, Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of special close session?
Mayor, council members and members of the public, we did notice several close session items this evening. I wanted to announce that we did not get to the third personnel item, but we do not have any reportable action.
Thank you. And my voice is going very quickly. I'm probably going to be fading fading fast. So I did want to call something out of order before we get to the public comments. I wanted to see if we can call items number twelve through fourteen, which I believe are Councilmember Hernandez's appointees to commissions. So Madam Clerk, do I have those numbers correct? Is it twelve through fourteen?
That's correct, Mayor. If we can have council vote on those items before I administer the oath.
I'll make a motion to approve or move the items.
Second.
Great. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mayor, I don't see you on here. Did you want to go ahead and announce your vote?
Yeah, I'm a yes. For whatever reason, my device isn't working, so I'll just have to voice vote the next the next few things. I'm a yes on that, on all three.
Thank you. Okay, motion carrying seven zero with council members Hernandez, Lopez, Mendoza, Benyolos, and Mayor Potemba Serra, Mayor Sarmiento voting yes. Thank you.
Are they here to have the oath administered or are they?
Yes, if I can, yeah, if I can ask if you're still in the council chamber for Jose Mario Fernandez, Daniel Cornelius, and Roberto Herrera, if you're here, if you would please come up. Councilmembers, did you want to administer the oath of office? You can't. You have done it.
Okay, please raise your right hand. I state your name. Thank you. Do solemnly swear? That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge. Will well and faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I am about to enter. Yes, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for administering that oath, council member. Let me go ahead and move along to the public comment section of the meeting now. This is where members of the public, either present in chambers or on the phone or virtually, will be addressing us. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not enter into any discussion at this time. We will hear from members of the public that are physically present, then hear from those that are on a conference call or Zoom. And I'll ask the clerk if we have anyone that wishes to speak in person or via Zoom. And for those that are in person, I'm going to go ahead and turn the microphone over to Mayor Potemba Serra to go ahead and call those members of the public that are physically present. And then he can hand it over to the clerk to go ahead and call on those that are online or virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, we will now hear from members of the public that are physically present here in the council chambers. So I'm going to go ahead and call up three at a time if first person could come forward and others line up behind them. First, we'll have Delilah Snell, followed by Anna Padilla, and then followed by, I believe it's Maria Perez.
Mayor Potemba, this is the mayor once again. Let me, let me, I forgot to mention one thing just for those that are in the public, maybe physically present or waiting online. We do have a request from staff to continue item number thirty five, which is a public hearing on the cannabis ordinance. So if anybody's waiting, just so you know, we will be moving that item pursuant to staff staff's recommendation, just so nobody has to wait in chambers any longer than they need to or wait in line, wait on the line. So I apologize, Delilah, but I just wanted to go ahead and mention that for others that may be waiting. Thank you, Mayor Potemba.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead and allow.
Okay, good evening. City of Santa Ana Mayor and Council, my name is Delilah Snell. I have a business in downtown Santa Ana and I live in Wilshire Square. I have four things to bring up. This construction, like the unearthing of the ground here has brought up so many issues, but I want to try and be as short and succinct as possible. Number one, thank you for all of your work in fighting for downtown. You have gone to town hall meetings. There is actually one this Friday at nine o'clock at Fourth Street Market. You've gone on tours of the downtown, you've called, you've texted, you met with community, and you've shown concern because this is concerning and a crisis. The way this project has been handled, communicated and executed is an insult to merchants, this downtown community and this city. Please continue to do the work to help us. We noticed this and we are watching what you do, so please help us in this emergency. Number two, I was at a meeting back on March ninth with Councilmember Bessetta, hoping to meet with the CEO of OCTA. He did not show up, but his staff was present. When I called out the staff as to why they were not, why they were absent from the last council meeting, which I believe was on February fifteenth. I was told that, quote, they needed to be invited. Well, here is the invite, and where are they? Where is OCT to own the work that they do and answer to the city at large? A community forum a year too late this Friday is not enough, and they need to be putting their best foot forward for us. Not a year too late forward. And OCTA must adopt your leadership by creating a business interruption fund like the city has done and like LA Metro has done. They must create a program to bring relief from the harm that they are causing, and this council has to help advocate for us. Number three, the intersection of my businesses on Fourth and Bush and a block in each direction is completely closed off. I worry for emergency services to come to this area. They are completely cut off. You can't get, I don't even think you can get a fire truck in there. It's it's kind of terrifying to me. I hope you know about this and you should go and see it because it's stressful to see, let alone think that what could happen if we don't have access to help. Number four, many of us on Fourth Street are upset and have been damaged, but I hear and think of others who have been damaged by this disaster project. Fifth Street has been sandwiched by construction. Santa Ana Boulevard has been torn up for a year and it's just a block away. Why has this not been addressed? There are plants growing out of the ditches and rust on the tracks on Santa Ana Boulevard. I have talked to several Third Street businesses and they feel the damage with cancellations for reservations daily and they have negative impact. Assistance needs to be mitigated to other areas outside Fourth Street because this is not just a Fourth Street problem. This is a downtown emergency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Anna Padilla. Followed by Maria Perez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sarmiento and council members, Mayor Potemba Serra. Just really quick, I feel like we're being very vocal of all the problems and some of you have visited us and know exactly what's going on. I was prepared, my statement was completely directed to OCTA, but they're not here. I was very surprised because they are on the agenda, didn't see a presentation directly from them. So I'm just gonna change my speech and then just ask you for your help. Katrina Foley, it's really pushing the Board of Supervisors to give us some relief, and we need relief from everybody right now. I know we got some relief from the city, which we really appreciate, but it's not being enough. These businesses and county myself, we cannot survive with the with the amount that we've been receiving from the city. Because the need is greater than that and more right now, there's really, Taqueria Guadalajara was completely closed. Like his entrance to to go to his to his restaurant was completely closed off. So he has no customers coming in at all for like three days. We've been calling OCTA, we've been trying to address with them what happened there, what there was no route for him to get for anyone to get access to the taqueria, and they don't seem to solve the problem. So right now, we're just going to every single person that can help us. So we will we'll want to get your support with the supervisors. See, we can get an email from you, or we can get a letter sent to the Board of Supervisors to approve those funds that Katrina Foley presented. This relief program from them will really appreciate it because like, again, we're trying to get any any help that we can get right now. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Maria Perez, and then followed by Juliet Castro, and then followed by Nati Alvarado. Maria?
Buenas noches a todos. Antes que nada quiero agradecer al alcalde, mayor Vicente Sarmiento, a los concejales y a todo el personal de la ciudad que hizo posible el apoyo económico. Nos ha ayudado mucho a los negocios que hemos recibido. Sin embargo, no es suficiente para afrontar las pérdidas económicas considerando que la obra que la obra finalizará en dos mil veinticuatro. Yo tengo un pequeño negocio de jugos y sándwiches de nombre y chevita. Tengo más de veinte años en este país y durante muchos años me dediqué a vender tamales en la calle cuatro. He tenido momentos difíciles en este país como la pérdida de una casa por la recesión. Sin olvidar el periodo tan fuerte que hemos vivido con la pandemia. Poco a poco he ido mejorando y aprendiendo a manejar mi negocio de la mejor manera posible. Tengo objetivos y sueños que cumplir que al día de hoy se ven afectados por los proyectos de OCTA. Nosotros hacemos lo posible por generar más ventas haciendo cambios y mejoras frente a la problemática que implica para nosotros el tener a la calle cerrada y en obra. Volvemos a insistir que la empresa OCTA se dé, se debe de hacer responsable apoyando económicamente a los negocios que están siendo afectados. Quiero ser muy clara para que no se piense que queremos aprovecharnos o sacar ventaja de esta situación. Estamos solicitando el apoyo de OCTA porque su proyecto afecta directamente el proyecto de nuestras vidas, que son nuestros negocios. Respectable alcalde y concejales, pedimos por favor que nos apoyen. Abogando por nosotros para que OCTA apoye con recursos en dinero para los negocios afectados. Ayúdenos, por favor. Muchas gracias. abogando por nosotros para que OCTA apoye con recursos en dinero para los negocios afectados. Ayúdenos, por favor. Muchas gracias.
Good evening to all. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city council members for all the support, the financial support that the city has given us. This is good. It's helped a lot, but it's not enough. We have had many, many losses in our businesses, especially since this work is supposed to extend until 2024. I have juices and fruits business, Chevitas, and I've been in this, in this country for over twenty years. I used to sell tamales on Fourth Street, and I'm working hard to keep my business going, but, and I've been working hard since, ever since I've been here, even going through the loss of a home due to the recession and the pandemic that has affected us and impacted us. But we are working through it. I'm working through it little by little. I do have my goals and my dreams and aspirations, but this, these have been affected by OCTA. And I'm trying to improve. I'm trying to make improvements, but in our, in my business, but the streets are closed. And OCTA is responsible, so I believe that OCTA, OCTA should give money, help us financially for the affected businesses. And I want to make this clear. We do not want to take advantage of this situation. But I think that OCTA needs to support the businesses because their work is affecting our livelihood, is affecting our businesses. So mayor and city council respectfully request that you help us financially to, that OCTA help us financially, the affected businesses. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you, and Juliet Castro.
Buenas tardes. Primero quiero empezar dándoles las gracias por su ayuda que nos hicieron a nosotros y que nos tomen en cuenta. Pero también les quiero decir que su ayuda por todo este año que vamos a estar en construcción no va a ser suficiente para seguir manteniendo, pagando a nuestros negocios que estén abiertos también. Y yo sí les, me gustaría que les, que hablaran con los del OCTA, que nos ayudaran porque este es un problema que está afectando a mi negocio. Estoy en el segundo piso y no tengo la, la gente que está pasando. Está cerrado y no pueden subir a mi negocio. Estos meses que se vienen para mí van a ser más difíciles. En esta semana ha bajado mi negocio. No he tenido clientes por los dos días. He hecho de uno a dos clientes. Los precios que yo doy en mi salón de belleza no son suficientes para pagar la renta que vivo aquí en Orange, que es muy cara. La renta de Downtown de Santana también es demasiadamente caro. Necesitamos que, por favor, nos pueden seguir ayudando más todo este transcurso del año. Y los de OCTA que sean más humanos para que nos ayuden. Somos amigos, no somos enemigos. Que nos ayuden a esta economía solamente va a durar uno, un año o más. Pero durante todo este tiempo que no se olviden de nosotros porque aquí estamos presentes, somos latinos trabajadores que estamos trabajando día a día para poder tener nuestro negocio abierto. No estamos haciendo nada mal, solamente estamos trabajando y queremos que nuestras puertas de nuestros negocios sigan abiertos y no queremos perder el negocio ya que para mí es mi único trabajo que tengo. Y de ahí saco para que pague mi renta. A los del consulado aquí enfrente, los del concilio, les pido que todos voten para que sigan pasando y brindándonos la ayuda que nos han hecho hasta ahorita. Gracias.
Good evening. First of all, thank you all for your help, but I'm here to tell you that the help you have given us is not enough to take us through this construction project through, to help, to help us keep our businesses open. Please, we need your help in talking to OCTA to help our businesses. This has affected our businesses. My business is on the second floor, so I'm not getting any foot, foot traffic because the streets are closed. And I'm foreseeing that the upcoming months are going to be very, very hard for me. Over the past two days, I only received one or two clients over two days. This is not enough to pay this, the, the high rents. The downtown Santa Ana rents are even more expensive. So we need your help to, from OCTA to help us, and we want to be friends. We don't want to be enemies. But this is not about us. We are working hard, and we need to work hard to keep our businesses open. So this is, we need, we need the help from OCTA for our businesses to keep open, to keep our, our businesses going. This is my only source of income to pay my rent and my expenses. So I'm asking the city council members to help us as you have helped, helped us in the past.
All right, next up is Nati Alvarado, followed by Roberto Herrera, and then followed by Daniel Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, Councilor, Chief Manager Rich, for allowing me to speak today. I want to read a few names to you. Alfredo Gonzalez, Eddie Velazquez, Maurice Arvara, Louis Poncer, Ralph Rocha, Frank Avila, Miguel Cortez, Paul Castro, Ernie Larios, Zeke Larios, which are brothers, Tony Perez, Gilbert Rodriguez, Terry Ross, Roy Villa, Jerry Castro, Nando, Victoria Varios, Alexis Alaba, Roberto Isello. These are not just names. These are people from our community. There are people that had loved ones, families, brothers, sisters, tíos, tías, and they were killed by gang violence. They go all the way back to when I was fourteen years old, the first one that I experienced, I seen him die in front of, around the corner of Civic Center in Fairview. His stomach puffed up right in front of us. We were just kids, and he was shot. I say this for a reason today. As you know, we've, we just had this murder with this young boy from Century High School. It was murdered, his cousin in the front seat and a sixteen-year-old in the backseat. By the grace of God, they weren't shot. We just had a boy that was stabbed a couple of weeks ago. I, I, Councilman Lopez reached out to me, people from the district reached out to me because there was kids hanging out in front of the memorial all night long, drinking and making noise and what have you, mourning their friends the way they only know how. I say this because, you know, here we are, nineteen seventy-four, when I was a young boy, to today. And there's been no intervention. We've invested in our police department millions of dollars, Mina Loza, millions. And yet they have not put nothing interventionist in our streets per prevention. Why? It makes no sense. Here, I mean, I'm talking about all, and that's only some of the deaths. That's only some names that I pulled up. I could have pulled up a lot more names. I don't speak with disrespect to my council. I speak from passion and concern for the city that I've been born and raised in and I live in, and my parents were born and raised here. I speak from a man that gives his life back to the streets. But this is ridiculous because I can't, I don't understand how we have not been able to put money into prevention. You know, in, in November seventh, nineteen ninety-one, I was on the bus, I was going to Saddleback College, coming back home, and Magic Johnson aids. You know what? They dumped a bunch of money into that because that many people, prevention are alive today. We haven't dumped much in that. I think they gave me thirty thousand dollars to help a little bit of the park. I mean, come on, there has to be something more. I reached out to our police chief. I'm not just some dude. I'm a guy that has a relationship with past chief Walters, other chiefs. I reached out to work with them. They didn't even work with me. And I'm not throwing anybody under the, I'm just saying the truth of a person that lives here, pays taxes here, and cares for his community. But I believe that we need to work together somehow, but there's nothing. It's like, I can't, I don't trust you. What do you mean you don't trust me? When I'm in the street working with community, we could work together and help something in our community. Am I upset with that? Sure I am. Because I'm not just some dude. I'm a person that loves our community. I give back to our community, and we have to do something within our community. You know, Boys and Girls Club, great, but we're not in the seventies no more. You can't go to Boys and Girls Club. You have to cross territories, not the seventies no more. That don't work no more. So there has to be more. There has to be some more finances that go into intervention, prevention. Santa Police Department just, or that, they just did a big old Rico act. They arrested a bunch of guys. Those guys didn't start out like that. They started out probably playing ball, having a dog, playing sports, whatever. Something happened that could have been preventative. But there's a lot of going on up here, but there's no preventative, and it doesn't make sense. So my heart is this, that you please hear me. No disrespect towards whatsoever. I, I love my city. I live here. I'm going to die here. I just think we need to do more. It makes no sense. Nineteen seventy-four, two thousand two, twenty, twenty-two, and there's no, still nothing? Why not? But yet, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nati. Nati gets to preach, and I kind of forget the timing. Thank you, Nati. I appreciate that. Next up, Roberto Herrera, followed by Daniel Estrada, followed by, I believe it's Lucia Gonzalez.
Hi, council. I first want to thank Councilwoman Jessie Lopez for placing your faith in me in executing this position as a commissioner. I'm very blessed to be able to serve the city of Santana in this capacity. At first, I thought it was a small task, but that is far from the truth. There is so much the Parks and Recs Commission oversees from our city libraries to the Santana Zoo, the parks themselves, and the recreational programs and community services that accompany them. Soon, the watershed master, Parks Master Plan will secure for the next decade the various opportunities for community members to enjoy the parks and green space in our city. I take pride in representing the city of Santana. This is my home. I will work hard to execute the duties of a commissioner. I'm cho, I am choosing to be sworn this evening on this book by Kelly Leidl Hernandez, City of Inmates. Reading this book was a watershed moment for myself. Dr. Hernandez's interest and research to locate the origins of mass incarceration in Los Angeles led her back in time to the subjugation of indigenous communities in the Tongva Gaberlino Basin. Her book shows that what is underpinning mass incarceration is settler colonialism. As Dr. Hernandez mentions, the United States is a settler society. As such, its cultures and institutions are rooted in a particular form of conquest and colonization called settler colonialism. She goes on to say that settler colonial projects, like the conquest of the Tongva Basin, were not predicated on extraction nor, nor exploitation, rather settler colonial projects seek land. And on that land, colonists envisioned building a new permanent reproductive and racially exclusive society. I mention this because where we are matters, and the land and green space that we currently occupy matters. As a commissioner, I have to be very cognizant of that and our role as a city to do better. I'll close with this quote to remind us why we need an unwavering commitment to address colonialism and conquest today. Dr. Hernandez says, invasion is a structure, not an event. It is constant. It is dynamic. It is ongoing. It is ubiquitous. Simply put, in a settler society such as the United States and Santana, the days of conquest are not over, and this holds meaning for all of us today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Daniel Estrada, followed by Lucia Gonzalez.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Daniel Estrada, born and raised. I was born at, you know, a coastal communities hospital. And I've pretty much lived in every single ward in the city over my lifetime. You know, because rent keeps going up, so you got to find somewhere more, less expensive. Come here today. I work at the Santa Unified School District. I'm an avid tutor at Saddleback High School where I graduated from, and I work with students to get them prepared for college. But on my side time, a lot of my side time, I devote to journalism. So community journalism is something that is missing here in Santa Ana. I believe the last time we had a newspaper was in twenty fifteen, it's Santa Ana Register, until the Orange County Register moved to Anaheim. So I'm the co-founder of the Santanero. It's a new online newspaper that will begin reporting on happenings here in Santa Ana from city council to the school board and more. I believe that Santaneros have been caught off guard sometimes by the amendments established by these committees, including yourselves. A lot of our residents opinionate on sites like, you know, Santa Ana Problems and your Facebook pages sometimes, hoping to get acknowledged. And sometimes they fall on deaf ears, most of the time anyways, at least. We as a community, we're a newspaper, hope to bring the gap, to bridge the gap, I'm sorry, that exists between the residents and our elected officials to create a better informed Santa Ana for the young and the old. I'm not here asking for money, nor am I asking for an endorsement for that matter. We don't take buyouts or endorse any candidate because that should be up to the people themselves, not a newspaper. Local journalism serves as a check and balance of our government. This was true in nineteen seventy-one when the Nixon administration barred the New York Times from publishing the Pentagon Papers, and the Supreme Court voted for the newspapers, saying that the papers were made to serve the governed, not the government. So we elect you as residents, we elect you to represent us so that you can do good and represent our values and our opinions, not personal beliefs. So I only have thirty seconds, but it's about time the community to really understand how much of a difference they can make because we're all in this together. We're all Santaneros. We all love this city. We all want to see this pretty, the city prosper for our children and for the, the younger generations. So anyone that can log on to santanero.org will soon see the stories that matter alongside, see opinions authored by Santaneros to the issues that matter to them most. I think that's pretty much it. My time's up, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Up, up next is Lucia Gonzalez, followed by Perla Dionisio.
Good evening, mayor and other members of the council. My name is Lucia Gonzalez, and I'm a resident of Ward Three. I am speaking on agenda item number thirty-one and ask that you vote against allowing SAPD to use military equipment. According to AB four eighty-one, section seventy seventy-one, paragraph B, any law enforcement agency that wants to continue the use of military equipment needs to, and I quote, submit a proposed equipment use policy to the governing body and make those documents available on the law enforcement agency's website at least thirty days prior to any public hearing concerning the military equipment at issue. It is still not on the website, and the only way I was able to access the military equipment use policy was through a voice of OC article. Also, according to section seventy seventy-one subdivision D one A through D, and I quote, "The governing body shall only approve a military equipment use policy pursuant to this chapter if it determines all of the following," end quote. A, the equipment must be necessary because there is no reasonable alternative for public and officer safety. And while military equipment will definitely keep officers safe, it will not keep the people of the city safe, only resources do. And it will definitely not keep you safe if you're low income, black, or brown. B, the policy must safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. Historically, military equipment used by SAPD has been used to infringe on our rights to protest and assemble. I have been personally tear gassed by SAPD. I went to the George Floyd protest in Santa Ana, and my friends were hit by rubber bullets. And most of the people who attended this protest were very young. You guys can blame us first and say that people were damaging property, but in what world is property more valuable than human life? SAPD research, SAPD responses are still very uncalled for regardless of whether you think the protest was violent or not. C, the military use, the military equipment must be cost effective, cost effective compared to the alternatives. But policing and military equipment doesn't get to the root of the problem. Crime is caused by unmet need, whether material or financial or emotional. For this fiscal year, this council voted to spend forty percent of our budget, meaning one hundred and forty-one million dollars, on criminalizing and punishing our community. And I don't see how this is cost effective at all. D, if prior users do not comply with the use policy measures, must be in place to ensure these issues are solved. And I honestly find it so hilarious that Police Chief Valentin mentioned SAPD's use of force complaint process as a safeguard in, in the agenda proposal because from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, none of the use of force complaints have ever sided with the community. A vote for this policy is a vote against this community, so I really hope you all make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Perla Dionisio, followed by Jackie Cordova, and then followed by Victor Mendez.
Buenas noches. My name is Perla Dionisio, and I wanted to talk to you specifically. And, um, I wanted to talk to you specifically and give you a little bit of history on to what is it that our community needs. Um, anthropologists agree that the first sign of civilization happened fifteen thousand years ago when a femur was able to heal and the person was able to live. This was a time in which you either had to run or you had to hide, and someone actually took care of this person and fed them, sheltered them, kept them warm, kept them safe, gave them shelter, and that's what we need here. We don't need military equipment to enforce a ridiculous curfew during an uprising, a youth uprising against racism. Such actions show what your intentions are with our community, which is the history of this country, a country that was born out of violence, out of violence against black and indigenous people around the world. The violence that is upheld and perpetuated by the policies and by your pen. And before my time is over, um, again, I host a weekly, um, community book club, and I wanted to read just a definition of what the word love and how bell hooks defines the word love. Affection is only one ingredient of love. To truly love, we must learn to mix various ingredients. Care, affection, recognition, respect, commitment, and trust, as well as honest and open communication, which is something that this city has negated the community, and it's not new. Again, these systems were created by your ancestors. These systems were created on the pillaging and raping of our children, which continues in our downtown, aided by our very own SAPD. So, I just want to open communication, and I would like to ask you to care about us, because we are humans. We are Santaneros. We grew up here. I am forty-one years old. These kids, these kids are living in the same conditions that my students do. Same conditions that I did. All I'm asking is that you care and that you learn to love us.
Jackie, uh, followed by Victor Mendez.
Gracias, Perla. Hello, community. I am Jackie. I am a mother of Santa Ana. I'm also an elder. Uh, my comments tonight are specifically directed at the city manager, Ms. Ridge. May fifth is a National Missing and Murdered Native Women and Girls Awareness Day, a time when the indigenous community and our allies wear red and gather to remember, honor, and give voice to women whose stories have not been heard. Congress passed a resolution creating the designation to honor Hannah Harris, Northern Cheyenne, who went missing and was found murdered on the Cheyenne Reservation in July twenty thirteen. Our system is inherently racist. Our kids want to know who do they call when the cops murder them, murder their friends, murder, murder their parents? Last week, I saw you in the federal building. I told you you should come join me for the trial against the police officers that murdered David Sullivan in the city of Buena Park. They weren't even on patrol. They were just running errands, and they happened to come across this kid that needed some mental help. They ended up shooting him and murdering him. They're still on the, on the police force, and this family has to see these people every day that murdered their children. We've been at war with Santa Ana PD since twenty seventeen when they unleashed this hell upon us. We try to correspond with our PD over these things. We never hear back from them. We never hear from our chief of police when we call him, asking why these cops were sent in SWAT gear against the parents sticking up for our community members, protecting ourselves at the Delhi Center on May thirtieth, twenty seventeen. I email my council all the time. I have only heard back one time from Ms. Nalida Mendoza. She said my messages end up in her junk mailbox. Like, your community is saying, we know what's going on out here. You have the rosters of our nonprofits that need to be funded in an instant. We could be funded in an instant. We preach nonviolence to our kids. Meanwhile, the cops come out here in SWAT gear, ready to kill us in a second when ordered by these racist pigs. Where's the men from the OCTA to show up to answer to my community when they're decimating us? Where's the racist Todd Spitzer when he doesn't show up to the DA candidate's forum at the Delhi Center? Who's handling all of these things, and these men who have grips on us? I never hear from any of you people.
Next is Victor Mendez, and that, I believe, is our last in-person speaker.
Thank you. Item thirty on the budget update, a couple of small discrepancies. Somehow, five million dollars dropped off between the first table and the second table. Took me a little sweat to figure it out. The second table was right. But these types of inconsistencies that perhaps lead to, you know, um, you know, lost costs and other things, so definitely need to tighten up from QA. Uh, the other peculiar, uh, fact in that report was they talk about how the budget is sixty, the revenue of the budget is sixty-three percent realized at this point. And how are we going to realize thirty-seven percent in the last twenty-five percent of the year? So, that doesn't really kind of, you know, come up, you know, doesn't kind of really necessarily reconcile. You know, maybe we're underreporting, maybe we're overforecasting, but I'm just kind of interested how you're going to realize remaining thirty percent in the last twenty-five percent of the year. You know, it doesn't kind of make sense. And on top of that, you're actually going to get more money than you expected. So, uh, those are kind of nitpicks, uh, but on the big picture, obviously, the short term, we look very good. Uh, the long term has some clouds around it. Let's be honest. Uh, measure X is going to fall off by thirty-three percent in a couple of more years, and soon will be down to nothing. So, what are we going to do? You're facing, you know, a twelve million dollar funding gap in your workers' compensation. Uh, you have thirty-eight million dollars in liabilities you're going to have to pay over time. Cow purse discount is now below seven percent, which means you're increasing your pension contributions. You're probably still ahead of the game, but that's going to probably go up a little bit. And also, more importantly, that the growth of all the sales revenue is induced by the highest inflation we've had in forty years. So, uh, we have to start taking some steps here, and I think the time is good. You have the resources, the ability, and certainly capacity to start looking at your finances and how you can do things better, and also maybe open up some funding for these people who are asking for their needs to be served, rather than kind of continue business as usual. Uh, but I think, like I said, now's the time to do it. You have the resources. Let's use it. Let's try to make something good happen the longer term. An item thirty-one on the police, uh, military ordinance. From my perspective, uh, I think the best equipment we can do for our community with respect to police officers is to train them in intelligence, train them to be good communicators, tell, train them to be empathetic, take it, train them to like and navigate complexity in an increasingly complex world, and how they negotiate this new paradigm of policing. To me, that's the best equipment an officer can have in today's world. Uh, that said, with all this equipment, do we really need it? What's our history in using it? Why do we have it? You know, these are the questions we should be asking. Um, you know, why do we have to acquire some? Because another law enforcement agent, he has it. This is not a sandbox on whose toys are bigger. It's about making the best thing possible. Uh, this is going to require leadership. Lastly, uh, I have never seen the police use the type of force that's being mentioned in some of these comments. I was there that night over at the community college, and they were pelted. The police were pelted with rocks and bottles, and that's why they responded. The people there were not innocent. Uh, the community college technological center was being broken into. Glasses were, you know, windows were being broken. This was not a peaceful riot. I was there in nineteen seventy when Mussolov was shot and killed by the LA County Sheriff's Department right there in Laguna Park. I know what use of force is. I saw it when I was eleven years old, the March Against the Vietnam War. What happened that night in front of the community college was a restrained response. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vic. Um, Madam, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone waiting to speak online?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Speakers on the queue may provide their comments on agenda or non-agenda items within the city's jurisdiction, with the exception of the public hearing items thirty-five and thirty-six. When unmuted, please announce your name, ward, or neighborhood that you reside in within the city of Santa Ana for the record. To request to speak again, you dial star nine from your phone or select raise hand from Zoom now. Before muting callers, I'd like to begin by reporting the following summary of emails provided as of today. We received one Santa Ana resident concerned with process for seniors and people with disabilities to receive section eight housing. Item seven on the OC streetcar update, one Santa Ana business concerns with vandalism to property due to construction, and one Santa Ana business comment to just, uh, increase business interruption fund. Item twenty-nine, four residencies not disclosed in support of the resolution. Item thirty, one Santa Ana resident commented to reduce funding for police and redirect funds to community programs. Item thirty-one, um, one Santa Ana resident and one residency not disclosed in opposition to the item. Item thirty-six, uh, support one Santa Ana organization to item thirty-six. Item thirty-seven, one Santa Ana non-organization, uh, Santa Ana organization, um, provided various comments and concerns. And with that, Zoom ID Alfredo Torablanca, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alfredo Torablanca. Uh, I live in central Santana. Uh, and I want to talk about a, a program that the city used to offer that no, that the city no longer offers. Um, so that program is the Catalina Campout Summer Camp that the city used to put on. So, through this program, the city's children experienced many activities for the first time. Uh, I was lucky enough to go as a counselor at, at the age of fifteen, and through that, I got my first time camping, and only my fourth time going to the beach in fifteen years. Uh, and I know I'm not the only one that, that experiences this growing up. Uh, I grew up in Santana. And I know that programs like these that allow underprivileged youth in Santana an opportunity uh, for a once-in-a-lifetime experience should be of importance. Uh, I've seen children in this program develop such a sense of self-sufficiency over the course of the campout, going from asking where to throw away dirty dishes to helping others wash theirs and asking uh, where they can help more in the kitchen and asking how they can help out more throughout the camp, as well as seeing their walls break down and open up to friends uh, that may be outside of the community or outside of their schools, uh, people that they might not have even interacted with if not for programs like this. Uh, growing up, living through adversity and troubled times, I can really close up our mental borders and cause up, and cause us, um, sorry, to grow up too quickly. Uh, and I want our city doing its best to allow kids to be just that, children. I want, I want them to, to move for programs that allow kids to play and to grow. Um, and after years of being forced to do everything online, I'm really seeing a need now, more than ever, um, for our kids to reconnect with nature and with each other. Uh, we mustn't less let the pandemic stunt the growth of social and emotional intelligence in our youth. Um, so again, I'm, I'm talking about the, the city of Santana, Catalina Campout Program, and I just want to ask that the council, um, agendize a conversation about reinstating, uh, this program. Uh, I think it was a great program, and, and it can help so many kids, especially now, uh, post-COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Suvi Vascas, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute your call. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi there. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, hi, my name is Suvi Vascas. I'm Santa Ana resident, currently living in Ward Five. Um, I would also like to provide, uh, the council comment regarding, um, the Catalina Campout Program. Um, during summer, I remember talking to my friends, um, about just how excited, um, we were, like, just for school to be let out and our plans. And one of the things that we would always talk about is, um, participating in the, uh, Catalina Campout Program. Um, not only would we, uh, not only were some of us able to come as campers, but we're also excited to come back as volunteers and help other campers, um, experience, uh, these experiences that they probably would have not had before. Um, I was, I had the opportunity, um, to come back as the CIT, where I was able to work with, um, with a number of, uh, Santa Ana residents, um, to take Catalina, help them experience fishing for the first time, help them experience what a campfire was. Some of these kids, I still work to this day and still, and these kids became the best of friends. Um, opportunities like these are important for the youth in Santa Ana to experience because, especially right now, as the previous speaker stated, um, with the pandemic, um, kind of disrupting all, all social activity within, um, the youth in Santa Ana. It's important that these kids make up for the lost time. Um, and what better way to do it than not only to reconnect with, with other people their age, but also experience nature, something that they're not able to experience here in the city of Santa Ana or in any other local areas. Um, yes, I do urge, uh, city council to agendize a conversation and help bring back this program as it truly benefited many students here. Um, many students here in the city of Santa Ana. Um, yes, uh, my hope is to bring back this program, not for this summer, but next year's summer, so that we can, um, so we can help these students experience, um, what Catalina was and what the parks and rec of the city of Santa Ana can offer to the residents of Santa Ana, and, uh, I yield my rest of the time, my rest of the time.
Thank you. Zoom ID DeAndre Valencia, if you would please select them. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening. My name is DeAndre Valencia, and I'm with the Building Industry Association of Southern California. Um, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight on item thirty-seven related to the WHO's funding. This council recently took aggressive actions that will reduce the amount of funding the city has in the WHO. The idea you're considering today will go one step further and reduce the amount of housing you can produce with your existing funds. While I understand your voting history calls for continued support of this language and approach, I hope you will change your position and accept that unmitigated skilled and trained requirements reduce housing opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Mario, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute your call. Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay, so I'm also advocating for the return of the Catalina Campout. Catalina Island, located forty miles off the coast of Long Beach, is where the city of Santa Ana would host its annual Catalina Campout. For seventy adolescents, there would be approximately twenty staff members and counselors. I was one of those counselors. Every year, I would see dozens of kids step out onto that boat, and they would be eager yet shy for the journey that lay ahead, to later break barriers in order to be themselves. This trip consisted of five days and four nights sleeping under the stars. Catalina allowed kids and teens the opportunity to truly experience the outdoors in a way many kids in Santa Ana are not typically able. The majority of time is spent playing games, and during this playtime, friendships and memories are made. From tug-of-war to group sandcastle competitions to freeze tag to connect four, there are a myriad of crap camp traditions that returning campers will reminisce on and hold close to their heart as they grow up. Something as simple as luggage transportation, tent setup, and home-cooked meals goes a long way when building camping experiences. And the home-cooked meals from our chef, games, and beachfront access make the collective efforts of the campers and staff all the more rewarding. In Santa Ana, we have a saying, "It takes a village." We bring this saying with us to Catalina. For many campers, it is a life-changing and challenging experience to be away from their parents for five days. It takes a challenge, it takes a village to soothe the heartache that comes from such a responsibility. It takes a village to turn that feeling around and create a newfound sense of pride in oneself. At the end of the trip, we know for certain that those campers, lucky enough to attend the Catalina Campout, take the lessons and memories and experiences of their village with them back into the concrete jungle. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Tim Johnson, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute your call.
Hi, everyone. Tim Johnson, resident of Ward Three. Um, thanks for taking my, uh, my, uh, my, my time this evening. Uh, sorry, I wasn't able to join you in person. Uh, a couple of items. Um, item number twenty-eight- Item number twenty-eight, as a, as someone that serves on a commission, I would hope that we can continue to meet via remote means, via Zoom, especially considering, I think we have at least two council members that are in this meeting remotely. Item number seven and number eight, I would implore the council to consider making, taking public comments prior to this time on those items. Those are, you know, the council had an opportunity to speak into it after hearing Commissioner Kaminsky, as well as City Manager Ridge, I'm sorry, not Commissioner against Kaminsky, but you know who I'm talking about. And I don't think it's quite fair for us to wait until now after that those items have been spoken about. In terms of the Fourth Street construction, it's a, I'm relatively familiar with downtown, and I'm struggling to get around down there. So I can imagine if someone that's coming, you know, to one of our great restaurants that, outside the community, how they're going to struggle with that. So we just need to hopefully speed that up a bit. But at the same time, don't forget about South Main Street, because that's a disaster right now. I drive that pretty much every day, and it's very, very difficult. The pavement is brutal. Item number thirty, the revenue update. So Major X is going from, is going to be from our original budget, sixty-five million, to a third-quarter adjustment to eighty-four million dollars. Let that sink in a little bit, nineteen-million-dollar increase. We need to come up with a plan for that, and so I urge, urge the council to do that. Take this opportunity right now to consider a Major X Stabilization Fund, similar to the Pension Stabilization Fund, to where, you know, if you have kids or once were a kid and your parents talked to you about finances, they probably said, hey, you know, spend a little bit on yourself, give some of it away to others in need, but then save a lot of it. And we need to do that with this, especially when we're talking about the increase. You know, this was originally a sixty-million-dollar budget item when it was originally passed. It's now at eighty-four million dollars. We need to be saving a large portion
Fifteen seconds left.
for the sunset period that will be upon us quicker than we, than we like. Otherwise, we're going to end up like one of our neighbors in Westminster and really struggling. Thank you very much for your service. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Zoom ID Carla Juarez, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Carla Juarez. I'm a resident in Santana. And I am calling just to remind some of the city council members who have run your campaigns. Some of y'all ran your campaigns to defund the police. So that's to defund the police. And then there's other talks about moving funds from the police and to other areas, especially all this need. We have a lot of need, like in building, community, building youth, healthy youth. But I am, I want to remind you of the defunding the police because I, I hope that you guys make a stand on not even defunding them, but taking a stand on not providing any more funds to them. The police department already takes more than fifty percent of our budget. That's more than fifty percent of our budget, and I don't understand where the funds are coming from. But I see that there's a lot of funding for their equipment or more personnel. And where does this money come from? If not, if they already take more than fifty percent of our budget, why is it that we keep giving the police department more money? When we're asking like families, single mothers, to do what they can or what they have. The police department already has more than fifty percent of our budget. Why are we funding them? Why are we giving them more money? Why are we buying, why are we funding more equipment for them? Especially not just any type of equipment like hand sanitizers, where we want to put military tools on their hands to use against residents. Because that is what you're going to be using it, is going to be against residents. And if you already believe that mental health is an issue, a real issue, and you want to respect the fact that we all have some issues, providing a material base, any kind of equipment to the police department is not helping your community. And it's providing even more money to the police department. So I hope that you really, really reach into yourselves when you went out to your communities instead of that you would defund the police. We're not even asking for the funding. We're asking for you to stop giving them money.
Fifteen seconds left.
No more money, not even for a pencil, not even for hand sanitizers. If single moms could do with whatever little money they get from babysitting or cleaning houses, they could do with the fifty percent, more than fifty percent of it.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Okay, Mayor, that was the last virtual caller.
Great, thank you. So I am going to ask for the council's indulgence right now. I'm slowly losing my voice. So I wanted to see if we could advance two items before I kind of turn the reins over to to Mayor Protem on the rest and the balance of the council items. I believe that we have item number thirty-five, Madam Clerk, that is the public hearing on the amendments to the cannabis ordinance. And that is a public hearing that staff has requested that we continue to June seventh. So if the council doesn't mind, why don't we go ahead and take that up? That way, we can go ahead and open the public hearing on that. I believe there may be a public speaker, and we can put that matter approve it for its continuance. So if we can call that item, so this is the time and place to open a public hearing on item number thirty-five, which is ordinance amendment number two zero two two zero one, which is to address the medicinal cannabis retail consumption lodges and all the other amendments that are discussed. And I will open the public hearing and ask if there are any members of the public, Madam Clerk, that wish to address us on this side.
Mayor, we do not. We had only one in person, but they have already left. They informed us that they left the meeting.
Got it. So I know there's a presentation. Maybe we could take that presentation at the continued date. So why don't I go ahead and entertain a motion from the, from the council to continue to June seventh per staff's recommendation, and we can go ahead and keep the public hearing open, and we'll simply go ahead and reopen it on the, on the June seventh date.
Mayor, may I, may I suggest that we continue it to June twenty-first?
Actually, that's an excellent suggestion. I'll go ahead and second that. That makes more sense, given the depth of work that needs to be done here. So there's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing seen, then council members, please vote. And I'm a yes, Madam Clerk. My device continues not to be responsive for me.
Councilmember Mendoza, did you want to voice your vote as well? Okay, we'll mark Councilmember Mendoza's absent. Okay, so motion passes five-two with councilmembers Lopez, Penealosa, Fan, Mayor Potemba, Sarah, Mayor Sarmiento voting yes, and councilmembers Hernandez and Mendoza absent for just this item.
Great. Let me, if I can, just once again, just ask for indulgence on one other item before I exit, which is item number thirty-three, and that is the appointment of councilmembers to now what is going to be a standing committee, transitioning from an ad hoc committee to work with the Santa Unified School District on a joint council, city council collaboration committee. So let me go ahead and just bring this before us. And, you know, I'm not sure. I don't think there's a presentation, right, Madam City Manager, on this. I think we've
I mean, no, sir. We just are hoping that you will do some appointments tonight.
Excellent. So I'll bring it back to the council. But normally, what we've done on some of these transitional matters where we've had ad hocs converted to standing committees, we've kind of opened it up to the members of the ad hoc committees to, you know, to move on to the standing committees. You know, just because there's a little bit of institutional memory, unless there are some councilmembers that are on the ad hocs that don't, that no longer want to be on the standing committee. So I was simply going to recommend that, you know, the ad hoc committee members, if, if they have no objection, to be considered for, for the standing committee on this joint school district collaboration committee.
I don't have an objection. I don't have an objection.
Do the members of the committee or anybody have any questions or comments? More than anything, this is directed, I guess, also towards the ad hoc committee members if they, if they would like to continue serving.
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me, Mayor Sarmiento. I said I don't have an objection, and I would appreciate the opportunity to serve on the joint ad hoc or joint subcommittee. Sorry.
All right. I guess what, would maybe, maybe mine would be considered a motion to reappoint those members of the ad hoc to the joint committee?
Mayor Sarmiento, I, I, to just quick point of clarification, I don't remember who else was on there. Do we have those names?
I think it was Hernandez and Mendoza.
Got it. Okay, yeah.
But, but I wanted to be respectful of them if they wanted to bump off as well, so.
They're not here, so I don't know.
Councilmember Hernandez is just walking in, Mayor. One moment.
He thought he could get away, but he couldn't, so.
Yes, I would, I'd be honored to still serve on that committee.
Great. And do we know, Madam Clerk, if Councilmember Mendoza is on?
Councilmember Mendoza is not on.
Mayor Sarmiento, I actually have a question, and I'd like to propose something to you, because the staff reports read that it can be a point, you can make an appointment of three or two, and I think just for efficiency purposes. Are you open to appointing two members of this council?
I'm fine. I mean, I, I mean, it's really not an appointment by me. It's by the council. It was just more of a suggestion to have the ad hoc just, again, transition to the standing committee. But, you know, I don't know where council, I, you know, don't want to speak for Councilmember Mendoza, whether or not she'd like to continue serving that. I want to be respectful of her discretion and her time. So why don't we, if we can, maybe we could appoint the two councilmembers, you know, for now, and maybe we wait to see if, can we, can we add Councilmember Mendoza on at some later time, Madam City Attorney? Like at the next meeting, if she's, you know, if she's present, we can ask her.
Yes, or if you wanted to do that without asking her, you could always do the appointment and then
Mayor Sarmiento asked you to amend it, right? Thank you. I was just going to say, I'll make a motion to approve all three ad hoc members or to appoint all three ad hoc members to the subcommittee. And then if Councilmember Mendoza chooses not to serve, I guess she could just drop off.
That's, that sounds good. That's probably
I'll second that. I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Councilmembers, please vote. And I'm a yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with six-one. Councilmembers Hernandez, Lopez, Penealosa, Fan, Mayor Potemba, Sarah, Mayor Sarmiento voting yes, and Councilmember Mendoza absent for this item.
Thank you, everybody. And again, I appreciate your indulgence. As you can tell, my voice is about, about ready to go. I've had to kind of mute myself before coffee a few times already. But I did want to say, you know, for the record, I'm supportive of the items on the consent calendar. The only clarification I would suggest on item number twenty-nine, it looks like section number one of the, of the resolve clause, Madam City Attorney, should be, should clarify to say that, just to be consistent, that it should say to end child marriage for anybody under eighteen, for it to be consistent with the whereas clauses. So that's the only thing I found. But with the exception of that, I'm completely supportive of the balance, and I will turn it over now to the capable hands of Mayor Protemba, Sarah. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, Mayor Sarmiento. Hope you feel better, get some rest. Colleagues, let's get through this. If you would indulge me, before we jump into the work-study session, I'd like to take the consent calendar, see, please announce any items that you'd be abstaining from. And then I'd also like to know which ones you'd like to pull, and then maybe we can approve the balance of the calendar before we go back to the work-study session. So let's go around the horn. Councilmember Lopez, do you have anything to abstain or pull?
Nothing to abstain. Well, I think I'm going to pull twenty-six.
All right. Councilmember Lopez pulls twenty-six. Councilmember Penealosa?
Thank you, Mayor Protemba, Sarah. I'd like to pull item twenty-five and just have a brief comment on item twenty, twenty-seven.
All right. Councilmember Fan?
I'd like to abstain from item number nineteen, as the Rancho Santiago Community College District is a client of my employer, Ritten and Tucker. And if it is pulled from the agenda, I will leave the room during discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Fan, Councilmember Hernandez? Good, all around. All right. Councilmember Mendoza, are you with us?
Yes, I am here.
Did you want to abstain or pull any items from the consent calendar?
No, I am fine.
Okay, and I will be pulling items sixteen and twenty-seven. So I'll entertain a motion, excuse me, motion for the approval of the remainder of the items.
I'll move the item.
I got a motion from Councilmember Hernandez.
Mayor, sorry, I actually will not be putting, pulling twenty-six.
Pull, yeah, you got twenty-six pulled. Will not be pulling it, okay. So as of right now, I've got items twenty-five, sixteen, and twenty-seven being pulled. So I have a motion on the balance. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I got a second from Councilmember Penealosa. Let's call the vote.
Councilmember Mendoza, did you want to announce your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries with six-one with councilmembers Hernandez, Lopez, Mendoza, Penealosa, Fan, and Mayor Potemba, Sarah voting yes, and Mayor Sarmiento absent for this.
Thank you, Madam State Clerk. So I'll ask my colleagues, what would you prefer? Would we want to jump into the work-study session, or would you like to take the three items on consent that were pulled?
I would say we just take the three items to get it out of the way.
I would say so as well.
Let's do that. All right. So let's jump to item sixteen, and the lucky winner on that is me. So I will go ahead first. Could I have Judson Brown come forward, please? Thank you, Judson. So real quickly, this is in regards to the quarterly report for Housing Division projects for the period of January to March twenty-two. So my, my concerns are, we received seventy-six applications for the first time, homebuyers' down payment assistance that were sent out. I'm sorry, seventy-six were sent out, four were returned, and only two of those four applications were approved. So my question to you is, what does our city staff need from us to get more applications approved? Is, I mean, because the way I look at it, is it, is it something that you need in order to conduct more outreach? Are you guys going into, say, the market rate apartments where these are folks that, you know, they can afford a down, I'm sorry, they can afford mortgage, but maybe not a down payment, especially given the escalating costs of purchasing a home here in Central Orange County? What do you need from us?
Yeah, great question. Thank you very much, Mayor Protemba. The, the thinking and the question is, is exactly on my mind as well. Because about six months ago, we came to city council, and we requested approval to double the amount of funding we were providing to moderate-income families to eighty thousand per household and increase the amount of assistance for low-income households to a hundred and twenty thousand. And as you could see in the results, and increase the amount of assistance for low-income households to one hundred and twenty thousand. And as you could see in the results, we're we're seeing the same results. So relative to our outreach, I don't think there's an issue with our outreach. I mean, seventy six applications isn't bad. It's about the number of families who are actually qualifying and able to qualify for the assistance and qualify for, you know, our first mortgage in order to purchase their first home. Uh, and in addition to that, this week, working with our tremendous PIO, Paul, we're sending out a mailer to all eighty five thousand households throughout Santa Ana with information on our our down payment assistance program included in that. So, you know, six months later, I think what what we need to do is come back to city council, revisit those those amounts per household and possibly recommend to to increase those amounts again so that we can get more families into homes. That needs to, that 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 priority is still our our priority, and we need to get more families into homes.
Thank you for that, Justin. I my my input would be we need more outreach. I I saw what we did with the section eight vouchers, and I saw emails, I saw social media posts, I saw all sorts of avenues that were exhausted to get the word out. I I would ask you to work with our CMO and our PIO to really push the word out there, because I think there's a lot of folks in town that would take advantage of it. And if it's a matter of qualifying, again, please let the council know what it is that we need to do to assist you. But I think that this is a program that helps stabilize our neighborhoods and our community, so the more that we can do to get this word out there. And granted, eighty thousand dollars may not seem like a lot today, given, again, what it would take to qualify for a down payment, but eighty thousand, that is still a chunk of change, and especially for folks depending on where they're trying to purchase. So Judson, thank you, but again, please come back to us. Let us know what you need to get the word out there. And I believe this item is a receiving file, so I don't think we need to take a an official action. Does any of my colleagues have any comments on this item?
I do have a question, Justin. Thank you. Do you hear back from people that go through the process and say, you know, the eligibility is a concern for them or just the process in general?
You know, the the feedback that we hear is that the most difficult part of qualifying for the process for for our assistance is qualifying for that first loan, right? So we can offer the eighty thousand dollars, we can offer the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but the family still has to qualify for that first loan in order to purchase their home, and and it's just the qualifying for that first loan and and then pairing that with our with our assistance is is extremely difficult.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fan?
Uh, Judson, so actually, your comment, your response just made me wonder, do we have any relationships with any local credit unions, banks, something like that? I know that there are some organizations out there that do try to work with folks and banks. I know it's after the crash, right? Uh, banks are now more what even when I was trying to get up my mortgage approved or my first loan, it was, you know, paperwork on on paperwork, and both my husband and I were working and all that stuff. So I guess I I'm not exactly sure, you know, do we say, hey, typically a bank would approve it if you have this amount of, you know, down payment, plus this is what your income should look like or whatever, and and maybe work with some banks to see if it's possible to have that relationship too. I just don't know, but I just want to throw it out there. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Judson. Thank you to my colleagues on that. Good input for him to take back. So our next item is item twenty five, and that was pulled by Councilmember Penalosa, and that's regarding an agreement with Valley Maintenance Corp. to provide custodial service of city parks, restrooms, and park buildings. Councilmember Penalosa, please.
Thank you, Mayor Potemba-Sara, and thank you to my colleagues for indulging me. The reason I pulled item twenty five, which as Mayor Potemba stated, was to approve an agreement with Valley Maintenance Corporation to provide custodial service at our parks and city park restrooms and park buildings for a term from January first through twenty twenty two through May thirty first. I pulled this, Madam City Manager, because within the staff report, it says that Valley Maintenance Corporation is the current contractor for these services, and Parks and Rec is satisfied with their work. I just want to get some clarity on what kind of of, I guess, sir, I wouldn't use the word surveillance, but kind of monitoring of the park restroom maintenance do we do? Because I just today during my my lunch break from work, because I have nothing better to do, I was driving by and pulled over at Delhi Park because I knew this item was coming up, and I poked my head in the restrooms, and just the the sight of them, I I would I would rather risk an accident than having to use those restrooms at Delhi Park. And sorry for that, but that was a reality, just because they weren't, you know, they're not clean. And Memorial Park restrooms, I see them often, and they're not clean. I I don't see how any parent with their child or adult would want to use those restrooms in the state that they're they're in. So I'm I'm asking also because just knowing how expensive everything is and seeing that this is only four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, and knowing that we have fifty-plus parks with restrooms that need cleaning, what what are we cleaning these restrooms weekly? Is there a schedule? Is it daily? Are there other contractors that we contract with to clean these restrooms? And how are we, how how do we say that we're satisfied with their work?
Right, thank you, Member, Councilmember Penalosa. We, the restrooms are cleaned typically twice a day. We have park inspectors that come in after the cleanings and they inspect them. Once they inspect them, they can be trashed right after that. So we have a very hard time with, I mean, we could clean them five times a day, and I'm not sure that we would keep them clean all the time, but they're they're twice a day. Um, and our park service inspectors, it's a pay-for-performance contract, so they go in and inspect to make sure that they've cleaned everything. Some of our restrooms are in poor condition. So e- even if you clean them, they still look dirty, but you can't sanitize them. So I understand what you're saying.
So so our park restrooms are cleaned twice a day?
Twice a day, correct. And if there's events, it would be it would be additional.
Okay, that that is, I mean, that's great if that is the case.
Yes.
I'm gonna make sure to, one day, hang out outside.
We have, we have reports of of when the inspectors go in and inspect the the cleanings. So if you're interested in those, we can share those with you.
Are are they self-submitted by the contractor, these reports that they went to clean this restroom twice a day?
Uh, I I'm not sure if they sign off i- in the restrooms, but I can I can double check to find out, but we uh, know what time they clean them, and then we have inspectors come in after that, their cleanings, and make sure they've done what they're supposed to do. If they don't, then we deduct, you know, from their contract.
Okay, so I just, so that we do have city inspectors?
City inspectors.
That inspect after a daily, each park, each park restroom?
Yes.
Okay, and and I'm asking that because the 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 price of the contract is low. I mean, it's half a million dollars. It's a lot of money, but now we're doing twice a day for fifty-plus parks. It just seems like that is a really low amount for the amount of restroom parks that get cleaned now twice a day. And and I don't personally, you know, is rare when I would find the park that's clean, a park restroom that's clean to use, but um, so I guess if you could provide that for me to see, you know, the how we we monitor this, I mean, if it's just a self-reporting by the company that they clean this restroom.
Okay.
Any information you could provide would be helpful, because I mean, if we need to increase this contract so that there's additional cleaning, that's also something that we could potentially bring back and look at at a future date, but I'm personally not happy with with the state of our restrooms at any of our parks that I've seen in the last couple of months. So I'm putting emphasis on on our park inspectors looking after each of these restrooms would be I would be happy to see.
Okay.
So with that, that's it, Mayor Potemba. With that, I will make a motion to approve item twenty five.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Penalosa. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan. So we got a motion, a second. Let's call the vote.
Councilmember Mendoza, did you want to announce your vote?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five two with councilmembers Lopez, Mendoza, Peñalosa, Fan, and Mayor Potemba-Sara voting yes, and Councilmembers Hernandez and Mayor Sarmiento absent for this item.
Thank you, Madam State Clerk, and excuse me, we are at that point of the work-study session. Do you have a presentation or somebody to make a presentation?
Did you want to hear item twenty, consent item twenty seven? I think that was.
I apologize. Good call.
Oh.
I was just testing. Good job. All right, so item twenty seven, which um, I polled along with, I know Councilmember Penalosa wanted to make comment. Honestly, I was just gonna make comment to say I wanted to thank Senator Umberg for the funds that he secured for the installation of that universally accessible playground over at Thornton Park. I hold my monthly community office hours over there at the Kiwanis All Access Park, and some of that equipment definitely needed an overhaul. So thank you, Senator Umberg, for that funding. Those are my comments, Councilmember Penalosa.
Thank you, Mayor Potemba, and you took those words right out of my mouth. I just basically wanted to thank our our state senator, Senator Thomas Umberg, for his advocacy on behalf of the city of Santa Ana at the state level. I know oftentimes us as as councilmembers up here send our our funding request letters to or in support of something to our state legislators or 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 our members at the federal level, our congressman, and and sometimes we we hear back and sometimes we don't, and sometimes we get, you know, four million dollar grants that go towards our park system, our zoo. So just wanted to thank them, just so that the community could see the the kind of of work that our state legislatures and our federal partners, you know, are have, and the effect that they could have and and change in our city when we when they advocate on our behalf. So thank you, Senator Umberg, for this. That's it, Mayor Potemba. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Penalosa. Does anybody else have any comments? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I also want to thank Senator Umberg and his office for bringing millions into our communities. Many of these millions are going straight into Ward Three to benefit the zoo and other parks, and so I'm really looking forward to staff continuing to communicate with the senator's office and continuing to bring resources for Santa Ana residents. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Lopez. You're right, we've got Ward Three and Ward Four benefiting from that, so thank you for pointing that out. All right, now, Madam City Clerk, are we ready to do a work-study?
Did you want to vote on this item?
Oh, I, again, thank you. I I'm just trying to crank this thing along, and I'm just.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you for that second. So we got a motion, second. Let's cast our votes.
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. Okay, motion carries six one with Councilmembers Hernandez, Lopez, Mendoza, Peñalosa, Fan, Mayor Potemba-Sara voting yes, and Mayor Sarmiento absent for this item.
Thank you, Madam State Clerk. And okay, third time's a charm, right?
Yes, thank you. Um, so the lobbyist registration assessment, I actually do have a consultant who has been who was hired by the city to do research on what the council had requested. Back at November sixteenth council meeting, the council requested that an analysis of a lobbyist registration policy identifying the impacts present filing findings to council. So the purpose of this work-study session is to hear direction from council to formulate a lobbyist registration policy that will serve its need in an effective and efficient manner. And with that, I'll give the floor to Andrea Miller and give her the opportunity to present their findings. And you can share your screen, Andrea.
Thank you very much, Daisy. I assume everyone's able to see the screen. Now we do have a PowerPoint presentation. As Daisy indicated, Management Partners was engaged by the city to research lobbyist registration requirements adopted in peer agencies, and then use this research to assess the current requirements in Santa Ana, the relationship between existing state and local reporting requirements, and present some best practices based on comparable agencies for consideration by this mayor and city council this evening as part of your efforts to promote ongoing transparency with respect to city operations. Um, we did provide a report that's included in your agenda packet, and that report does have a chart that summarizes the ordinances that have been adopted in some of the peer agencies. This evening, we'd like to go through the PowerPoint presentation. It really provides just kind of an overview of the research project and then open it up to questions from the council and obtain some direction as to next steps. We did have a chance as part of our analysis to review the council presentation. I know you've had a discussion about lobbyist registration requirements previously. Uh, we interviewed some of your staff members, then watched the council meeting. We also took a look at some of the communications that have been provided to you, and it formed the basis for the research. And we started with this discussion about what is lobbying. Most of the definitions indicate that lobbying relates to communication with any public official or staff or executive branch government official to influence any legislative or administrative action. But consistent with some of the council comments the evening that you discussed this, not everyone who engages in lobbying is a lobbyist. Uh, many of the definitions that have been adopted by cities exclude various individuals such as legislatures that are doing business on behalf of the government, constituents that are making calls to policymakers, government employees that are working within their positions, and members of the media. So the requirements, if the council were to pursue implementing requirements in Santa Ana, the definition would determine who is responsible for complying with those registration requirements. One of the items that we were asked to look at was the existing regulations in Santa Ana. You do have registration or you do have requirements that adopt or affect lobbyists. You have a couple of city code sections. Uh, one of those requires that persons that are doing business with the city may not make gifts to public officers or employees within twelve months of decisions. And then you have another section that really supplements existing state regulations, and you make public access available to information related to campaign contributions through a link on the city's website, really intending to make this very convenient for members of the community. We were asked why some cities have adopted lobbyist regulations, and really this goes to the idea that you're trying to promote transparency in in the government decision-making process. It is important, the work that lobbyists do, they often bring information to the government, they have access to resources that government agencies may not have with respect to information. But but there's also this push and pull between the information that they have available to them. But you also don't want to have those special interests control the political process or drown out the voices of the residents in your community. So it's an attempt to moderate moderate the influence in the decision-making process and then encourage ethical behavior from lobbyists and government officials. Uh, the California Business and Professions Code does identify information that lobbyists can be required to disclose by cities, name and contact information for the firm and for the lobbyists themselves, information related to each of their clients, all gifts that are payments that have been made by the lobbyist can be required to be disclosed. Um, so the the Business and Profession Code is fairly broad in terms of what cities can actually require in terms of disclosure. In looking at cities and the codes that have been adopted, we identified agencies and looked at those that were most closely associated with Santa Ana in terms of population, and then we added some of the larger peer agencies because we were desiring to get a broad segment of the different types of requirements that might be implemented. Uh, we selected eight cities. Their populations are included here to give you some frame of reference as to their size in comparison to the city of Santa Ana. We did receive responses from several of agencies, but Bakersfield, Riverside, and Stockton have not adopted regulations requiring registration by lobbyists. Of the other cities that did provide copies of their ordinances, they vary in terms of their definition of lobbyist, including the exclusions, although there are some similarities. Most of them do require registration and have fees associated with that. And then they also have established fines and penalties for failure to disclose. Most of the definitions of lobbyists that we identified require some kind of monetary compensation for the work. This was raised by members of the council when you discussed this during your last meeting, but most of them did have some monetary threshold. They also provided definitions in terms of the frequency of contacts with government officials, the duration of those contacts. And as I indicated a few moments ago, there were exclusions. So, recognizing that members of the media, professionals, your staff members would be excluded from being required to, or often required, excluded from being required to register. We've attempted throughout this presentation to provide an example from some of the most complex regulations, but the table that you have in front of you lists each agency that responded and provides the information within those categories that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. So, in Anaheim's case, Anaheim has identified a lobbyist that would be subject to registration as any individual or entity who receives $500 or more in consideration in a calendar month, other than reimbursement for reasonable travel expenses, to communicate with any elected or appointed official of the city for the purposes of influencing them in a decision. In Anaheim's case, they also preclude them from lobbying regional agencies that the city is a member of. They do have exclusions related to employees, people acting within their official capacity, and professionals that are providing information to the organization. But you can tell from the chart that was provided in the more comprehensive report that's included in your packet, that Los Angeles defines lobbyists differently. Long Beach has a very complicated ordinance and definition. But again, each one of them has attempted to define the lobbyist in terms of the amount of money that they're receiving and what their purpose is. Peer agencies frequently included deadlines for registration, information that was required. We noticed that some of the ordinances are very detailed and follow the Business and Professions Code section, while others don't require reporting as frequently or require as much information. And then many of the agencies required annual and quarterly reports. We use Long Beach as an example. In Long Beach's case, registrations required within 15 days of qualifying as a lobbyist. The annual registration shall be renewed each year by January fifteenth. And in their case, you're responsible for disclosing clients, the legislative or administrative item that you've been engaged to influence, and that any payments you've received. Disclosures are required every six months. And then the city is retaining those responses related to lobbying and the reports that are being filed and maintaining them in a way that's usable to the members of the community. And they also cannot provide gifts to public officials. We really spent a lot of time with the fines, fees, and penalties because we heard comments from councilmembers that you wanted to ensure that the penalties for violation were really commensurate with what the crime is or what the violation was. Peer agencies typically did require some type of fee for initial registration, a fine for failure to register, and potential penalties. Again, it varied, though, and it appeared that many of the agencies attempted to try to graduate the fines based on continuing violations, so that the earlier violations had lesser penalties. Los Angeles, for instance, requires an annual registration fee of $450 plus $75 per client. They do that to try to make sure that the larger lobbying firms are paying more money because they're paying on a per-client basis. Violation may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor, and you can't be a lobbyist for one year after conviction. However, in talking to officials that administer the city of Los Angeles program, they said that that was, prosecution really occurred when it was an ongoing violation. They did also implement a late filing penalty because they found that some people, lobbyists, just weren't familiar with the filing requirements. So, they have a late filing penalty of $25 per day, but they've placed a cap on that, not to exceed $500. And they have imposed civil penalties, although they've used those infrequently. Civil penalties, though, also have a cap of $2,000. Again, in your packet, you have a complete report that provides a table of the requirements in the various cities, the five cities that do have, or I'm sorry, the six cities that do have registration requirements. And at this point, we're able to answer any questions. And really, the threshold question is whether you want to pursue a lobbyist registration requirement. And if so, definition of lobbyist would be critical, the types of exclusions that you'd want to include, what types of information are you interested in making available to the members of the community, and how do you perceive the fines and penalties should be handled based on the varying degrees of violation? And with that, we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. That was an excellent presentation. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Does anybody want to jump in and share your thoughts on this?
I just have a brief comment. Mayor Protem, I just wanted to share my support for the item.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Fan?
Thank you. Yes, I am very excited for this. I remember when I was, I think, on the Planning Commission, the charter ad hoc had brought something like this, both Mayor Potemba and Councilmember Peñalosa, and I was supportive of it then. Because frankly, I'm new to politics, and you're learning about who's who, who's influencing whom, who has relationships where, and some of them are longstanding. And I think it is important that not only people running for office know that, but the public know that. So, I'm very supportive of this item. A few questions that I do have for our consultant is, do you have a recommendation? Because one of the things that I am most concerned about is, we're not Los Angeles, right? We don't have, I don't think we have a ton of big lobbying firms coming around knocking on my door all the time, and we don't have 20 councilmembers or whatever working full-time to do this. So, that seems to be extremely complicated, but I wanted to see if you had an inclination of what you think might be a good or something that you might recommend for a city of our size and our complexity.
You know, one of the things that, and stepping back away from the cost and the fees, I think one of the things that we noticed was that maybe the easier systems for both the city to administer, but also for the lobbyists themselves, are the ones where the forms are prescribed. So, you have a specific form that they're being asked to use, and then they're doing it online. So, I would start with that. You know, I think you can reduce the complexity a lot by making it very clear what's expected, and then making online-type forms available. In terms of the money, you know, what we attempted to do, because, you know, this obviously is, you want to collect the money so that you can recover the cost for administering the program, and there will be some cost for administering the program and making the forms available, and then, of course, making them available to your community. I think if you look at the table and glance through that first column, it gives you a sense of, or I'm sorry, the last column, it gives you a sense of what people are being asked to pay. LA was one of the higher ones, but San Diego charges a registration fee of $154.05 plus $31.09 per client. So, again, you can kind of see the range. Los Angeles was, again, very high. Anaheim charges a registration fee of $100. So, you know, again, I think you want to recover your costs, but I do agree that based on the complexity of the organization, you may not be interested in charging the same types of fees that some of the larger cities are.
I guess my question was more directly related to the definition of lobbyist. For example, in Los Angeles, it's saying anyone who's compensated to spend 30 hours or more in any consecutive three months, that seems really high. But obviously, again, we're not LA. We don't have this many councilmembers to lobby, but I might be wrong. So, that's kind of where I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I think I would lean, I apologize, I thought you were asking about the other one, but I would lean more toward setting the, rather than the hours, whether they're being compensated and set an amount, like, for instance, Anaheim, $500 or more in a calendar month. I think that's a little easier to administer rather than the hours, because then you're really placing a burden on the lobbyist organization to do timekeeping and look at whether or not their lobbyists are spending time with each of you, each of the councilmembers. So, I would really think it'd be easier to administer $500 or more in a calendar month, or $250 or more in a calendar month, rather than basing it on time.
Thanks. That's really helpful, and that's, that would also be my preference. Frankly, you have pay stubs. It's easy to check. If that's, you know, like, if there was an issue of needing to audit or something like that, you can check that more easily. Especially as employees, you might not be tracking billables like an attorney would, depending-
That's right. The other thing that I think is, you know, kind of just something to consider, you want to make the information available to the public so that they know who's attempting to influence governmental decisions. But you also don't want to create such a burden for staff or for the community to look through and to try to really understand the reporting. So, I think making it much simpler is easy for the community to see who's influencing. So, it gives them the level of transparency that it sounds as though you may be looking for, but doesn't create such an administrative burden that staff's attempting to, or in a position where they have to attempt to evaluate and understand the reports, and the community's not. And so, I think, again, a simpler ordinance would probably be beneficial in accomplishing what you want without creating an undue burden.
So, just speaking to my colleagues regarding the requirements, looking through this chart, I did generally like the Anaheim requirements. It's name, contact information, employer, employer contact information, and a brief description of the issue that they're looking to lobby. And I think, you know, we can call that the issue or topic or project, and that way we know what they're trying to do. And regarding the definition of lobbyist, the Anaheim one is not bad. I also thought the, I thought the Santa Ana, the San Diego one was okay, too. My main issue is that I personally would like to see even nonprofits be included in the definition of lobbyist, if the individual is being paid as an employee, director, et cetera. Now, and I did like the exception, however, under the Santa Monica exception that says that officials or members of neighborhood groups that are not compensated are exempt. So, just those specific clarifications, because we have, obviously, a lot of neighborhood associations, and they're not getting paid. And frankly, anyone not getting paid, in my opinion, is not a lobbyist. They're just an interested party. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Peñalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for the presentation. I just also wanted to voice my definite support of having an ordinance lobbying, lobbyist registration come forward to us. And I would definitely want to see it be expanded within our city charter as well, because like everything else, you know, there's, anyone could just, any new council could just come in and change something like this, like we've seen in the past. I do, the only hesitation I have today is the, is how can we do this so that staff, the amount of staff requirement is minimal, or making it easy and seamless? Because as we already see currently today with many of the things we have in place and things that we have to do, such as public records requests, you know, we can't, there isn't enough staff to manage this internally. So, we'd definitely require the hiring of additional staff. So, I would want to make sure that we could secure those positions and fund them before we move down this line, because like everything else, we want to make sure that it's sustainable within individual departments of who would, you know, keep an eye on this and control it, this lobbyist registration, which I would assume would be the city clerk's office. So, I would want to make sure that that department has the resources to be able to manage this. Is the only hesitation I have to do this today. But it is something I want to see. So, I guess, Madam City Clerk, just as we move forward into this budget cycle, I would ask that we keep in mind, I guess, the desire, which is most of this council, is what I've heard so far, of seeing these things implemented, and how can we work with your office and making sure that your office has those resources available so that we could get these things, you know, moving. And I would definitely, I want to thank Councilmember Fan, because I definitely want to see an equal approach about who is considered a lobbyist. I know there are tons of nonprofits in the city that do, you know, have a funding source. That oftentimes, they're here advocating for something, trying to influence something, meeting with all of us, trying to influence policy, and there's also funding behind that. So, that would also require a registration of a lobbyist. So, because that's what they're essentially doing, is lobbying for certain policies. So, that's it. Mayor Protem, and thank you.
Great. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, I think the last time we discussed this was in November of 2021. So, I'm trying to recall all of the things that we discussed then. And Andrea, I thought your presentation was great, but I'm wondering if you got to compare the language that we discussed, you know, back in November of 2021 with, you know, the rest of the cities that you presented to us. I'm just curious about that.
So, what I did, you did, I mean, your memory is correct. You did talk about this some months ago. And so, I had a chance to look at the provisions that were presented to you as part of your transparency, our sunshine ordinance. And maybe most critically, we watched the videotape of your meeting, actually, a couple times to make sure we really understood where each one of you were coming from. And that really helped to drive the report that you see today. And that's why we focused on some of these very specific areas to give you options. So, you know, for instance, I heard very clearly that councilmembers were concerned, wanted to make sure that someone that was being compensated was included as a lobbyist. But yet, people that really are members of the community advocating on behalf of, you know, some local park or something of that nature and are not being, they're just truly members of your community that are not being paid as lobbyists, would be excluded. And that's why we spent more time really breaking out those fines and penalties, because there was a concern that you didn't want to immediately charge someone with a misdemeanor because they didn't file their requirement, required documents on time. So, again, you notice this chart is really attempting to address and provide more detail to you related to those issues that were raised during that discussion.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So, I, you know, some of the questions that you had for us was, what exclusions do we want to see? How should the lobbyist be defined? Do we desire an ordinance, which I think we all understand that we do? What information should be reported? What fines and penalties? And I remember from our last conversation, some of the things we had talked about were, in terms of how we had, or how lobbyists had been defined in the lobbyist registration, like proposed ordinance, we were going back and forth between the dollar amount, which was $250. And I heard you say that that's about- Um, and I heard you say that that's the best way to kind of define it as opposed to, you know, trying to track hours, which I agree. And I think also, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think nonprofits were included in the language that was presented to us last year, but I could be wrong. I also saw that some cities, um, like LA, um, other cities have a ten-day period requirement and our language proposed fifteen. Do you have any thoughts on the difference between ten and fifteen?
I, I don't, um, but I, I think fifteen, and I, and I'm just thinking about the steps that you've taken in terms of the publications of your agendas. I think a, a little bit longer may be helpful, or maybe make it so that the person that's looking at your agenda would have the ability to go online or to figure out if they've got an agenda item they're particularly interested in. So you want it to be soon enough that someone that's looking at agenda items would be able to also then know who might be attempting to influence on that particular item.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, so I'm thinking since you want a longer period for your agenda items, which makes sense, it gives people in the community a lot longer to, to try to prepare themselves for the council meetings, you probably want to have that re- reporting time somehow coincide with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I remember, you know, we had also talked about the penalty violation provision in here, not necessarily wanting to, you know, cite people at the very first violation. But we wanted to have some process in place where people would not take advantage of the system and, and, and have some sort of dollar amount. And I see what other cities have done, so that's really helpful for me. Andrea, I have a question for you. Do you know if other cities and their agenda packets, they include, you know, some of the registrations or filings that folks file with the city? Because I know people, it's public information and people can ex- have access to it. But do you know, or does their city attorney know if other cities include that in the agenda packets?
Councilmember Lopez, I'm, I'm not familiar. Um, I didn't work on this report, um, that's coming from the city clerk's office, but that's something I can look into and report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Just with respect to that, um, I think one, and, and it actually kind of dovetails on the prior council member's comments too. Um, it appeared that really some of the most effective systems were the ones that were being done online and where residents could easily access the information online. So I think that really is critical in terms of reducing the allocation of staff time that it would take to, to implement this and administer it effectively. But also being available online so that people can check that. The city of Los Angeles said that because the information is available online, they do often also alert, um, as part of their staff reports where there are large lobbying efforts being undertaken. Um, but that they really rely on the community to actually go to that online system and look to see who's lobbying or who's attempting to influence related to projects.
Good to know. Thank you. Um, so I guess for staff, because there's, uh, there's no staff recommendation in here, but my direction for staff or my feedback for staff would be, I would like the council maybe to compare the original lobbyist language that was presented to us in November with perhaps Anaheim. I heard Anaheim be mentioned. Um, and if we could work out the kinks, you know, with the council in terms of the dollar amount that was included in there, if everybody's fine with the fifteen days, the inclusion of the nonprofits, and the registration fees. Because I think we have a good document and it's just about the little details now that we have to figure out amongst ourselves. So that's my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Mendoza, do you have any, uh, comments or feedback?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
All right, I like that. Uh, Councilmember Phan, you wanted to add something?
Short comment. Um, this is for city staff, dovetailing on what Councilmember Lopez mentioned. Um, in looking at this ordinance, I would like to see us add a button or link onto the agenda and minutes page, the landing page. So once you get to agenda and minutes, it says about the agenda. Um, I'd like to see a button or link that says lobbyist registration or lobbyists and people can, as people update it, folks can come to that whenever and they can compare it to the agenda. Because as I mentioned, I'd like to see if someone is registering what item they have lobbied on. I don't think that'd be too hard, because it would just link to where the information is being uploaded and people can cross-check themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Phan. Um, excellent presentation, just a couple of comments from here. I, I agree about the definition, uh, including nonprofits. And I would also include, uh, as far as who would be reporting, as, as far as contact with council members, but also EMT and certain key staff. I mean, we already have that in our sunshine ordinance that we would want, you know, our, our, um, certain key staff to disclose their calendars. And so I think this would be something that they should also comply with as well. With the registration fee, I like the sliding scale idea, because not every company is built the same way. And so, uh, for those that are more of a smaller firm versus larger firm, I, I know Councilmember Phan brought up a good point in that while we're not Los Angeles and we don't have, you know, lobbyists talking to us about a hundred projects, but at the same time, I would say that, um, really it's more subject matter that's important. I know in Los Angeles, that's when, when folks are registering there, or I'm sorry, filling out their reports up there, they typically talk about who they've talked to in staff and then what projects. And so I think that's important. That kind of dovetails into something I've already asked staff to do here, which is when we have land use items on our agendas, both planning commission and city council, that it also lists the applicant. Because while typically a property owner would be in the subject of the land use action, it's typically somebody that's helping them, um, apply for the entitlements and process it. So to have that disclosed would be helpful. Councilmember Pillozzi brought up, you know, the cost. And I think that, you know, having this be, you know, sort of a cost recovery, if possible, I think it's important that we try to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of staff overseeing this. I think that what everybody is saying from our consultant to folks here on the dais as far as making it easily accessible, not just for transparency, but I think just for being able to maintain it and for everybody to be able to see what's going on. So if something's missing, it can be easily identified. Uh, it's easy for folks to immediately see once something is uploaded, just like our, uh, as, as council members when we upload our four sixties and our Form seven hundreds. So that's all I have. So, um, Madam City Clerk, I'm pretty sure you've got a, a little bit of a direction from us. I would just ask, I conclude with this question. So what's our next steps?
At this point, um, what we can do with, uh, unless Andrea, did you have any other questions that you need or clarifications? Order two, okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ensure that I, I covered that. So at this point, um, what we can do is put, um, all of these items together, work with our city attorney's office about bringing back an ordinance. And then we can ask council to see if there's any other changes that want to be made at that point.
Do you, I mean, is there a calendar at this point? Do you have a?
I do not. It's going to take them, I'm going to have to see how, uh, long it takes for us to generate a report and then work with the city attorney's office and see what that looks like.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Hey guys, it's not even ten o'clock yet. We're already at the business calendar. Who would have thought, huh? Uh, I know, I know, I know, I know. A little excited, okay? A little excited there. So our, our next item is our FY twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, uh, third quarter budget update. Do we have a presentation from staff?
We do have a short presentation, but if the city council would like, we could just go straight to questions. It's up to, up to the council.
I, I, I would like to see the presentation with my colleagues. Yeah.
Thank you.
Especially, I like the part that's short, right? Okay.
All right. So, good evening, uh, Mayor Protem and city council members. This third quarter budget update is a receive and file item. This presentation will focus on general fund revenues and expenditures, along with the impact, the latest staff vacancy report and an update on the capital improvement program. Based on the latest information, our estimates for sales tax, both Bradley Burns and Measure X are increasing again by a total of eight point nine million dollars. Actual planned check revenue, uh, received exceeds the original budget estimate due to several large projects. Overall, uh, we expect to reach revenue that would be another two point eight percent increase from the last time that we provided you information with the mid-year report. We have updated the eighteen percent reserve calculation to reflect the higher, uh, revenue estimate. At this time, we expect the general fund balance to exceed the sixty-seven point five million reserve requirement by twenty-nine point nine million. This is a status of our general fund revenue. As of March thirty-first, the city has received sixty-three percent of expected revenue, which is in line with projections, because we do have a two-month accrual period after June thirtieth. So we will continue collecting revenues related to this year, uh, for sixty days after the fiscal year ends. The city has spent seventy-two percent of its general fund budget, also in line with expectations. Approximately half of the city budget is for employee compensation paid twice per month. And the city has already paid its pension debt and the fire authority received one month in advance. As of March thirty-first, we had a hundred and fifty-three funded vacancies or nearly twelve percent of our budgeted staffing. The adjusted capital budget of three hundred and four point seven million includes prior year carryovers for multi-year projects as well as new appropriations for fiscal, the current fiscal year and adjustments throughout the year. As of March thirty-first, we expect capital spending to exceed seventy-six million. And we just wanted to give you a heads up to expect a request for significant carryovers to the next fiscal year, again for multi-year projects. Your next budget presentations will focus on the proposed budget for the new fiscal year that begins on July first. Your dedicated city council budget workshop is on May twelfth with a follow-up scheduled for your regular meeting on May seventeenth. Your June meetings will include the public hearing and consideration of the annual budget ordinance. And that concludes my presentation and we're ready to answer your questions.
Thank you for that. Um, let's just go around the horn. Uh, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you for your presentation, Director Downs. Um, no questions, am I in?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Phan?
No questions.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Pillozzi.
No questions, Mayor Protem. Just a quick comment within regards to the Parks and Rec and the police department. I would hope that these, um, funded vacancies are, are, we're, we're making an effort in, in hiring those critical positions, uh, especially in Parks and Rec, since we are opening back our programming. And I know that there was a lot of, uh, programming that was, I guess, stopped essentially over the last two years. So, um, I hope we're, we're moving towards bringing those, those positions back and as well as our library. Lot of funded vacancies that should be filled. I know i- it's hard right now, but just whatever we need to do within our human resources department as well to expedite the hiring, obviously of, of quali- qualified, quality, uh, people, I would appreciate. That's it. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Hi, Kat. Uh, sorry if this is repetitive. I just wanted to know, um, I know that, you know, last year the council approved a plan to reduce the pension liability costs. Um, and I also know that it's still, you know, I think twenty percent of our general fund, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and, you know, keeping in mind that Measure X is going to go away, with this extra ten million dollars that we have, are we using any of that money to kind of go back into the pension liability fund?
We, we do have a proposal in our upcoming budget to, uh, put some money away, one-time money into the section one fifteen trust. Back at, on March fifteenth, when we asked for early direction from the city council, we, uh, introduced the idea that we would want to put that savings into a section one fifteen trust. And at that point in time, we didn't get any different direction from the city council, so we are looking to put that in our upcoming budget.
Okay, perfect. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Mendoza.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, the questions that I had were clarified by, by the earlier, um, council members, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, mine is more just, mine is more of just a comment. Um, I, I feel like the higher tax revenue that we're seeing is probably reflective of some of the current economic, you know, influences, right? We've got inflation, we've got, you know, this infusion of, uh, stimulus from the feds and states. So I feel like a lot of the spending that we're seeing locally, which is wonderful for our books, but at the same time, it's not something that we should get too comfortable with, because I feel like that's, it's a short time, a, a short-term, uh, bump, but really that's not something that we're going to see as a consistent trajectory. Would that be fair to say?
We agree. Um, and with, to that end, in our, uh, upcoming fiscal year, uh, proposed budget, we do have a lot of one-time spending proposed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. That was a great presentation. So we'll go ahead and move right along to, um, our next item, item thirty-one, regarding the, uh, policy pursuant for the use of military equipment by San Ana PD.
Right. Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. And we do have a presentation that our chief of police is going to kick off. I do want to make a couple of clarifications before he gets started. Um, the item before you is to amend an ordinance. It is not to purchase any military equipment. It's to not to spend any money in the police department. And another item I want to point out to you is that, um, there are a lot of individuals that do object to a program that's out there and it's called the ten thirty-three program. And that's where, uh, entities, local law enforcement agencies get military equipment from the Department of Defense. This is not that. And in fact, the city does not participate in that program.
And, and real quick, just further clarification. So to that point, this item is more to satisfy Assembly Bill forty-one.
You're correct.
Okay. Chief, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, city council. And the city manager just covered everything I was going to cover.
That was easy.
Wi- with that, I will introduce Commander Matt Sorensen, uh, my training commander, who will go over a very brief presentation on the nuances. And again, as the city manager said, this is simply to comply, uh, with for, uh, Assembly Bill forty-one. And again, it's important to note that, uh, even before mandated by legislation, I directed a policy to, um, disengage, to, to stop, um, receiving, uh, items through the ten thirty-three, uh, program, Department of Defense. So that, that was no longer the case even prior to this legislation. Um, this is about definitions that the legislator has chosen to move forward with, with, and all police departments have to comply. So with that, Commander Sorensen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem and city council. Uh, basically, the city manager and the chief just did my presentation for me, so we'll get through this real quick. Yeah. So like the chief said, uh, back in twenty twenty, we discontinued our use of the, uh, ten thirty-three program. And even at that time, we didn't have a lot of equipment. It, it amounted to nineteen rifles and six weapon optics, and that was it. So, as a result of California Assembly Bill forty-one, which was signed by the governor in September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, it created government code seventy seventy and seven zero through seven zero seven four. And the intent of the legislature at that point was for law enforcement to provide greater transparency regarding the funding, acquisition, and use of what they defined as military equipment. More specifically, it was designed to provide greater oversight with regard to receiving decommissioned equipment through the Federal Department of General Services Defense Logistics Agency, otherwise known as the ten thirty-three program. Uh, as you're aware, most of that equipment would come free of charge and therefore would not meet the, the purchasing thresholds of various councils. At that point, even the city leaders didn't know we had the equipment. Uh, government code, to go through the legal requirements very quickly, uh, government code seven zero seven one. 7071 says that we shall approve and obtain approval but from the governing body by an ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy prior to engaging in any of the following. One is requesting equipment made available under the 1033 program, seeking funds for any defined military equipment, acquiring any defined military equipment either permanently or temporarily, collaborating with another law enforcement agency in the deployment or use of military equipment. So for example, if we didn't have a piece of the defined military equipment, and another agency did, without this ordinance, we could not use it. So we have to have it to even borrow anything. And then using any of our new and existing military equipment, which is really why we're here today. Part of the process going on in 7071 is no later than May 1st, the agency has to seek to continue the use of existing military equipment acquired on or before January 1 of 2022, we have to engage in this process of getting this ordinance approved. As one of the speakers said earlier today, the governing body should only approve the policy if it's determined to be the following: The equipment's necessary because there's no reasonable alternative to achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. The proposed policy will safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. And if purchasing the equipment, the equipment is reasonably cost-effective, and prior equipment used complied with the policies that were in effect at the time. To address one of the concerns that was made during the public comment, you know, obviously, we, we want the most in public engagement as we can get with regard to this. And to that end, as the law required, we published our policy on the internet on March 30th, along with all of our other policies that are currently on the department's website. And then that's how the voice of OC ultimately got our policy to publish it in their article on April 13th. If approved, this policy will be posted, just like all of our other policies, procedures, training materials that are readily available on our department's website. So to give you an idea of what we actually have, this is not all encompassing of what the law covers as far as defined military equipment. And this is solely what we have in, in our possession at the police department. A mobile command vehicle, we have two armored rescue vehicles, we have less lethal launchers and their associated munitions, specialized firearms and ammunition of less than 50 caliber. So what this would cover is our patrol rifles and our rifles that our SWAT team has. Noise flash diversionary devices, commonly known as flashbangs, any munitions containing chemical agents, with the exception of the OC spray that every officer gets issued, a little five-ounce can. Breaching munitions, our long-range acoustic devices, essentially our big PAs, our tactical robots, and unmanned aerial systems, which we don't have, but I added it to this policy because we're currently researching the technology, and we would have to have it integrated in this policy should you choose to approve the purchase at a later date. You know, we use this equipment in conjunction with our ongoing progressive training practices, and the department uses it in direct support of our de-escalation strategy. Current policies and procedures governing the use of the equipment, and they've been in effect ever since we acquired any of this equipment, regardless of what the timeframe was, is obviously our use of force policy, our control devices and techniques policy, our firearms policy, officer-involved shootings and deaths, First Amendment assemblies policy, our 40-millimeter less lethal launcher guidelines procedures, our incident command team procedure, our armored vehicle deployment for patrol procedure, and then our SWAT procedure menu. I just wanted to highlight this. Of the 10 items in the PD's inventory, five were purchased with council approval because they make, met the purchasing thresholds. And those, that is the, the mobile command vehicle, our armored vehicles, the less lethal launchers and munitions, the long-range acoustic devices, and then the rifles associated with patrol rifles and the SWAT team rifles. The only reason any other items on the list did not go to council is because they didn't meet the purchasing threshold. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I want to ask our Madam City Attorney. So the item is listed under our business calendar, but the recommended action is to approve the first reading of an ordinance. Would that normally be done through a public hearing?
So not all ordinances require public hearings. Any ordinances amending your land use code require public hearings. Certain ordinances require public hearings. I'm speaking here with the Chief Assistant City Attorney, because most cities who've been doing this have been publishing the public hearings within those 30 days after they publish on their website. There is some state guidance, which is simply saying that you have to adopt the ordinance or the policy in a public forum. Given that we are up against the deadline, my recommendation is that we take action on this under the idea that we, this type of ordinance on its face does not require a public hearing.
So the requirement's not there, and then what is that deadline that we're up against?
It was, would have otherwise been April 30th, but we're, we're close.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you for that. So with that, I'm going to go around the horn. I know you're eager, but I'm going to go this way. Councilmember Lopez, you want to start us off?
Sure. Um, I don't have any questions about the presentation. Actually, Chief, I want to, I just want to say thank you for your proactiveness and making sure that this was something that, you know, the department, under your directive, made sure that they weren't taking because of, it was going to come down to state law anyway. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. But I don't have any questions on the agenda item or the presentation for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Penaloza?
No comments, Mayor Protem. Just thank you, Police Chief Valentine, and staff for the presentation and making this. As we know, this assembly bill is now here, but I appreciate the police department's effort to be proactive and get in front of this thing and be as transparent as we can with any equipment that we have. So thank you. That's it, Mayor Protem.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Phan?
Thank you. So just rolling back a little bit, I just had a question about the 1033 program. I know we're no longer participating. Those before my time when you removed it. But I guess, I understand that there are both controlled equipment and uncontrolled equipment that may be beneficial to the city. Obviously, I don't want us to have tanks rolling down the street, but I guess, you know, was it just not benefiting us at all? Is that why we removed it? Or was it a perception issue? Because I know there are other, you know, non-weapon items that are military surplus that was potentially available also.
Yes. And thank you for the question. It was a combination of things. I think, sitting back and evaluating post this most recent era of civil unrest, most recent, because there's been several over history, really looking at what equipment did we have, right? And the commander will confirm that it was items that were very old and dated. And, and I think a lot of, some departments engaged in the 1030 program because it's free of cost. Frankly, it's, it's, you know, cool to say that you got something from the military. And, and I'm not, you know, critical of the military, but my perspective is that if we need a piece of equipment, then I am to come to the city manager or to this council and ask for that piece of equipment, no matter what it is. And so any, any quality equipment can be purchased in the civilian side. And so my, my position was, why not do that? And so we took inventory of what we had, which wasn't much, and it, it wasn't, you know, critical items. And so we took inventory and then, and then simply returned them. And it was a policy decision that I made. Some departments still continue to engage in the program, and, and that's their decision.
I was just curious about that, because I like free things. So, so now regarding this military use or equipment policy, and looking at the definition, it was quite broad. I believe, well, you, can you actually go back to the slide? Here, actually, I have it on my screen. So I, I guess the reason why I wanted us to kind of reiterate that much of these items are typical policing, you know, tools. And they're not, like I said, tanks rolling down our streets. And I would not support something like that, just letting you know. But, but I think it is important to talk about how the definition is, is quite expansive, and, and that we are doing this in order to, to use some of these materials. Because I believe that if we are working in conjunction with another agency, we have to have an effective policy in place, correct? So for example, if you just had, you just had a press conference about our, the police department's incredible work with, as FBI?
Yes.
Regarding the Mexican mafia, the 31 members of the Mexican mafia that we were able to apprehend. So congratulations on that. But I understand that if we don't have this policy in place, sometimes we can't collaborate, or there's some issues with that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think it is really important that we do have these policies so that we can collaborate with other agencies to do the difficult and long-ranging work that we are trying to do. The other comment I wanted to make was regarding unmanned vehicles. I think you're talking about their drones. I think that's just a fancy term for drones. I personally, and these are not weaponized drones. These are not like, I think, the Reapers that are going over to the Middle East or in war. These are literally just really expensive commercial drones that you can see or real estate agents sometimes use when they fly above the fancy developments to sell their homes. I would like to see us pursue something like that, or I know you're looking into it. I do think that that is a way of monitoring situations when it's difficult to get into, you know, you're following somebody or whatnot. But I would like to also see a drone use policy that moves toward, if it is something that we do. I believe the city of Irvine does have a relationship with OCFA for their drone pilots program that helps monitor wildfires and whatnot. So I would love to see that come back if it is something that the city of Santa Ana PD finds useful. Do you have a comment on that?
Yes, absolutely. We already have a commander and a team assigned to vet out all the logistics of what would be a drone policy. And I'll give you one, a very practical use, that is a human asset force multiplier. And that is, we can put that up in the air and actually go put eyes on a situation before we decide what type of response there is on the police side. There's some communities that are starting to use that technology. So we're actually putting eyes on a scene. We could patrol South Bristol just on a rotation, let's say, for example. And if there's something that's observed, then we dispatch officers. So it's, there's multiple uses for it, not just a tactical environment.
Thank you. And my, my real, my only concern really is when we bring that policy forward, if we choose to, is that we also ensure that we protect, obviously, the privacy of our residents and, and whatnot. And then the other issue I wanted to bring up is, Commander, in your presentation, because one of the members of the public had mentioned that she did not see the policy being posted 30 days prior to today's hearing, I believe your, your slide did state that it was public on the internet for, since March 30th, correct? Okay. And so I just wanted to triple confirm that we did, in fact, comply with state laws requirements, and that we actually exceeded the number of dates required.
Yes. And as a matter of fact, I've been checking the website every day to make sure there's no hiccups, that it's still been there for the full 30 days as required.
Great. Because it, the website did get updated, so I'm glad you did that. That's, those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief, for being proactive and putting us at the forefront of good, good practice as a police department. My question pertains to, sir, to what type of equipment would this ordinance pertain to? Is it the equipment that you listed during your presentation, Officer?
Yes.
Okay. And that was the five purchased items that, that, that were agreed upon by a past council, correct?
No, it, that includes the, the list of defined military equipment in the presentation. So it's actually one to...
Could you please repeat those, sir?
Yes. It's a mobile command vehicle.
A mobile command vehicle. Is that, in layman's terms, what would that be?
It looks like a big RV, but it allows us to push our incident commanders out into the field where we can get better situational awareness, have people reporting into us directly versus being stuck in the fourth floor of the station where our EOC is.
So does that vehicle have an exit where an officer could stand outside of the vehicle, still be protected, but still see what's in front of them or surrounding them? I don't want to use the term tank. It's not what I'm thinking it is, is it?
No.
Okay.
No. Wait, picture an RV, exactly, but the inside's outfitted with a dispatch center. We've got multiple computer screens, so we can get like the downlink from the Sheriff's Department helicopter, can stream its video into our mobile command post, and we have a full dispatch center with computers.
Okay. So that would be one of the items. What are some of the additional items?
The armored rescue vehicles.
Armored rescue vehicles. Is that a vehicle that commonly would be looked at as similar to the structure of a tank?
I would disagree. It is an armored vehicle. So it's got ballistic protection all the way around it. It doesn't have tracks like a tank. It doesn't have a gun like a tank.
Got it.
Things like that.
Okay. And what are some other items?
Less lethal launchers and the projectiles associated with them. So that would include 40-millimeter rounds. It would include B-bag rounds.
Okay.
Which are fired actually from standard-issue shotguns. Our, our rifles, which are patrol rifles, or which are also the same rifles that SWAT team uses. So AR-15 style, semi-automatic, although, well, most military ones are full-auto.
Okay.
Noise flash diversionary devices or flashbangs.
Okay.
Munitions containing chemical agents, which the only type of chemical agents we use is tear gas and pepper spray, common terms.
Okay.
Breaching munitions, long-range acoustical devices, our tactical robot. And if we considered purchasing drones in future.
Okay. When were these items, Chief Valentine, when were these acquired, and how were they acquired?
Oh, over, over many years. These, these items were not acquired yesterday or in the last quarter or year, or we've acquired them over time, and they've been replaced as well over time. Let me take you back to 1997, in the North Hollywood shootout. The scene was multiple police officers pinned down with revolvers, not able to protect themselves, and much less the community. So we're very cognizant of equipment acquisition, and it has to have a defensible purpose. And so, for example, the long-range acoustic device, the LRAD, large device that sends out a certain, can I say, very loud noise directional, and it can have an impact to redirect behavior of, of human beings, right? To bring down their nature in terms of wanting to engage in physical confrontations, et cetera. So, and there's justification for each one of these. And so the, the lens here again is, officers are faced with some, some very terrifying moments that they need to be equipped with the right equipment to respond to and bring calm to the community and to the incident that they're, that they're faced with. And again, my perspective was, if they need any equipment, there needs to be background investigation on it itself. And then if we're going to purchase it, it should be the city that purchases, not the military, what's left over from the military that we acquire.
Thank you for your answer, Chief. I want to cite a study that was done by an assistant professor of global studies at Gardner Web University named Casey De La Hantney. And this professor's research shows, and this is a credit to you, Chief, for being proactive in regards to the 1033 program. But what the research evidenced was that police departments that got more equipment from the military kill more civilians than departments that get less military gear. The finding from research on the 1033 program, so I'm happy to see that you were at the forefront of making sure our city didn't engage in getting more equipment. So I'm happy to see that you were at the forefront of making sure our city didn't engage in getting more equipment. And this was a finding that was recently confirmed and expanded by Edward Lawson, Jr. at the University of Southern California, of Carolina. And in this study, he and his co-authors found that police agencies that received the most military gear a year subsequent after receiving this equipment resulted in an increase in more civilian killings, more than doubling that of police departments that didn't receive equipment through the ten thirty three program. So that's a credit to your leadership that you put a stock to that while other departments continued it. However, I do feel that there are a number of items that we have here, chief, of equipment that is doing more harm than good. I think the militarization of police, it doesn't reduce crime, nor does it contribute to making the perception of officer safety that much more safe. I think when we take a look at our policing strategies as a city, my goal is not to have an overly aggressive department where we see a potential increase in civilian casualties. My concern is that there are young people and residents that do right now presently have a distrust. I don't want that distrust to be there between law enforcement, but it's there. And I think a lot of the times, these, these types of equipment reinforce why that distrust is there. So my question is to myself, it's a rhetorical question. Why do we see our residents as someone not worth helping? That we have to enter these communities militarized this way? What message are we trying to send? This is rhetorical question. What message are we trying to send to neighborhoods when we enter a crime scene and treat it like a war zone? And the reason why I felt the need to share this, chief, is because if the data isn't enough, I am happy to share my experiences with my colleagues and with members of the public and remind them that on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, there were police officers present, Santa Ana PD, high ranking police officials within our department. There were street closures at multiple different precincts. There were helicopters. There were spotlights. There was two different police departments. Anaheim PD, San Ana PD, departments with hundreds of millions of dollars in budget. There was Anaheim PD SWAT. There were police dogs. There was tear gas. There was concussion grenades. Then there was pistols and rifles. But what resulted was an unarmed man still getting killed by police, shot dead twenty two times. So my, my concern is that your potential ask of having drones, what good is drones going to do when we have a, one of our own military militarized items that was listed here was pressed against this gentleman's vehicle on September twenty eighth? Had officers inside this vehicle, officer outside of it, aiming the gun at him. But yet, those officers couldn't identify that this individual in the vehicle was unarmed. How is a drone going to help us do that when people that are standing literally against a vehicle for hours couldn't come to terms that a man in a vehicle was unarmed? And subsequently, he was killed. There were two different departments there. Nobody that day got it right. But everything could have went right. So my question to you, chief, is why is there still a need for militarized equipment and then potentially drones? If we're not getting the job done right now?
So I, I can't comment on that incident in particular because as we all know, there are multiple ongoing investigations regarding that one incident. So let me comment generally on, on, on your, on your comments. The Santa Ana Police Department does not approach policing from the standpoint of, you know, approaching neighborhoods and being overbearing, being aggressive and bringing in military equipment.
They did that day, though, sir.
I'm sorry?
They did that day.
Again, I, I prefer not to talk about that particular incident because it's under multiple investigations.
Of course.
I, I want to, I want to address the policing in Santa Ana, right? That incident aside. So this equipment that's listed here that we're complying with the assembly bill, we acquire to deploy on incident specific circumstances. So your patrol officer who's going from call to call to call, that's taking reports, is conducting general investigations, they're not deploying this equipment. That's, what we're talking about is this is traditional equipment that's assigned to police departments and to police officers to do their jobs in elevated tactical situations. We need the equipment in order to be trained and prepared to handle those incidents. Those are the minority of incidents. So the, the run of the day response is an officer in a standard uniform. Yes, they're armed with a pistol and, and not, none of this tactical, elevated tactical equipment. It may be in a vehicle, it may be back at the police station. In the event we need it, it's inventoried. It's, we, we keep a tight discipline on it, so it's not, you know, flowing everywhere. And it's inventoried regularly by the training commander and his division. So the equipment is needed to handle those elevated tactical situations that the community very much wants us to respond and handle them in a disciplined, orderly fashion. So the, again, going back to just our standard operating procedure is not to deploy these on a regular basis during a regular shift. There is no ordinary call, no, no ordinary call out there because, you know, helping someone walk across the street can turn into a deadly situation, unfortunately. So I don't know if I answered your question without getting into the details of that one incident.
No worries. So I guess, so that we don't isolate that incident, I guess, for, for, for common practice. If we have, you know, a situation, I guess, what is the protocol in which we decide here's a crime scene where we do have to utilize a chemical agent? Or we do have to utilize, you know, in, in this event utilizing a, a armored vehicle? I mean, what do these circumstances look like? Is there a protocol when we decide as a department, okay, at this point, we now have to deploy XYZ?
Absolutely, and that speaks to the policies that Commander Sorensen mentioned. We have several that overlap that touch these types of equipments. And it's really, it comes down to the initial responding officer. They may contain a scene and then they'll have to call a supervisor. Some of the deployment of some of these devices require specifically supervisor approval. I have a watch commander on duty twenty four seven. They're going to be aware that some of these tactical items are deployed to the field as well. They monitor the radio twenty four seven. So there's, there's definitely, we have protocols, we have policies in place. And then there's, above everything, it's, it's a focus on de-escalation. That's, that's our core approach on handling any call for service, whether it's a homeless person seeking services or an armed barricaded suspect who just shot someone and killed someone. We always want to de-escalate the situation, but our approach on an armed barricaded suspect is going to be very, very different than someone just seeking services, right?
Absolutely, and then my last question, sir, is what type of equipment does require supervisor approval?
I'll let my training commander kind of delve into that one. This, you know, we, we also are cognizant of our policies that we don't want to hamstrung our officers in the field. You know, going back to North Hollywood, that happened in an instant. And so to sit back and let me call my boss and my boss's boss, that's just not practical, right? So in instances such as that, we're going to deploy what we need to contain the scene. So but I don't know if you can add more to that, Commander Sorensen?
So sir, to, to keep it simple, all of the equipment that I mentioned to you requires at a minimum supervisory approval before deployment. When we start getting into noise flash diversionary devices, the armored vehicles, those require minimum of watch commander approval and/or it'll even bump up to the SWAT commander has to approve any deployment of SWAT assets in advance. And we have very strict criteria on when the SWAT team can be activated, under what circumstances and things like that, which is all covered in policy and procedure.
Thank you, sir. That concludes my question. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Pelaza, did you have another comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem Basara. I think just for the public's sake, I think it's important to also remember that although this, this list of, of quote unquote, military machinery isn't ideal, you know, the, the United States Department of Homeland Security developed the Urban Area Security Initiative Funding Program, which we commonly know as UASI, which provides funding for local emergency first responders to enhance security and overall preparedness to prevent, respond to and recover from acts of terrorism. And in two thousand and six, the Department of Homeland Security also designated the cities of Anaheim and Santa Ana as one urban area. And given the fact that we have the resort district in Anaheim that deals with millions of visitors a day and the federal courthouse in the city of Santa Ana, it is on the list of high potential terrorism attacks. I know that when that armored vehicle was purchased two or three years ago, it was using UASI funds, correct? Chief Valentine?
Correct.
And I, I know that it's not our police department saying this is something that we need and we're going to use general funds. It was purchased with federal funds that are designated for high on the list of terrorism areas like Anaheim and Santa Ana, correct?
Correct.
And so I, I personally would, you know, feel comfortable and knowing that, given the area that we're in, dealing with, again, high potential terrorism targets as a federal courthouse, Disneyland Resort, that we have those tools available within the region so that we could, our first responders could, could proactively respond to in the event of an emergency, God forbid. But I think that's also something that we should, should put out there so that the public knows what, how the, these, some of the items on that list were purchased and they were not, also not purchased with general fund dollars within the city. And if I was incorrect on any of that, chief, please interject and.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, I, thank you, Mayor Protem. I actually just have a, a strike suggestion for the council as we're continuing to discuss this. You know, it's military equipment dash four under, I believe it's under subsection B. Actually, it's two, under the purpose. And the last line, where it says additionally, the ARVs may be deployed as display for community outreach events. You know, we're talking about tactical vehicles.
Mass, where are you?
Yeah.
What page?
Yeah, where are you?
So it's the military equipment dash four, the draft page. Section two at the top.
Okay, I'm on section two, on page two of the ordinance draft.
Four, no, it's the, I believe it's the exhibit.
Oh, the, the policy, the actual policy?
Yeah, I think so.
Councilmember Lopez, is it the one that?
Seven oh seven.
It's this document where it's.
Yeah, seven oh seven, that's our, that's our draft.
Seven exhibit two, page four.
Okay, purpose?
Yes, the last line where it states additionally, the ARVs may be deployed as displays for community outreach events. And because these are tactical vehicles and not toys, my suggestion is going to be that we strike that last line. Again, I do believe that these should be used in emergency situations because I do understand that we are the county C and we are subject to, you know, emergencies. And so I would like for that last line to be struck from the, the policy.
Excuse me, just for clarity, so, so you're suggesting that we're, in removing that line, we're not able to bring some of this equipment to community events, which I might add are very, very popular with kids and families.
I would like to see it struck.
Okay.
I support that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for that. Did you have anything else?
No, that's going to be it. Thank you.
Chief, did you want to respond?
No.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for that. I wanted to provide my comments. First of all, thank you, Commander and Chief, for being here and that presentation. I know that this whole item is in response to state legislation. That's why we're doing this. But it is in line with the transparency that I think all of you here from the council that we want with our police department for our community. You know, the, my first concern was what was already brought up about the thirty day access to the list. But Commander, you addressed that. And so it's been available through two means, both city website and voice of OC's link. You know, it's, it's, it's remarkable to think that North Hollywood was as far back as it was. But, I mean, I still remember seeing it on TV and I still remember thinking, you know, as it was going on and that it was, it kept going on. That's what, like, I mean, obviously the danger of the officers. But what I, what was struck in my mind was it wasn't just a, a quick shootout. This was something where officers were pinned down and, and outgunned. And, you know, it, it, I mean, I'm not a law enforcement professional, but I imagine it changed a lot of tactics, a lot of, you know, ways that you address certain issues. But North Hollywood is also not, thank goodness, not the standard incident that our officers face. But I, I know that we would not be doing anybody any favors by having our officers not be prepared and being ill-equipped. I mean, the last thing I'd want on any of our consciences is if we were to say, no, you can't have a piece of equipment and the lack of that equipment resulted in the loss of lives. So I understand that, but I also share the sentiment of, of some of my colleagues in that, you know, we're not trying to roll out the Soviet tanks in Red Square, right? We're trying to, you know, show that this is a, a police force that's there to serve the community while at the same time, though, be able to protect our community, be able to make sure that our officers are safe while they do that. So again, knowing that North Hollywood is something that happened and it's something we would have to be prepared for, but also thank goodness it's not the standard. So I support you having the equipment, but obviously I think the concern of just openly rolling it out there may not be the best look for a PD that's not trying to look like a military outfit. The other issue I had, you know, Councilmember Lopez brought up a specific line to strike. I actually had a question regarding a section. And is our city attorney still here? Or are you standing in? Okay, so section seven oh seven point six says, "The department is authorized to acquire additional stock of items listed here from other law enforcement agencies or Cal OES in the event of an emergency when approved by the chief of police or designate." I, I guess I'm more concerned about the emergency because I know that within our MUNI code, and we've had to exercise this, obviously during the pandemic, when we activated kind of emergency protocols. I know that a long term emergency is far different from, well, I guess it's fully aligned with this because this is not, the way I read this, this isn't a, a simple, you know, contacting the watch commander to get the okay. This is acquiring additional stock. So the assumption is that, you know, you're going to the shelves and you go, oh, you know, we could use a little more of X or Y or Z. And so if it's done, that's a little bit askew from what's stated in previous sections in this proposed policy. This is saying that in an emergency, worst case scenario, that you would, you or your designate would be able to acquire the stock. But I guess I would want to see emergency defined a little better. But having said that, this is where I'm going to look at our city attorney. I feel like we might already have that defined in the MUNI code. Can you confirm that? In other words, when we talk about an emergency, a city emergency, something that seven oh seven point six seems to be addressing, do we have language that kind of further curtails what exactly an emergency would be?
Mayor Protem, thanks for your question. In this context, I don't believe we do. It would address the emergency in this very specific context. We do have in the municipal code under chapter two, I believe it is, a comprehensive scheme that relates to emergencies and the authorities and the powers that are available to city officials in the emergency situations. But I don't believe it would address this in this very specific context of the, the acquisition of military equipment like this.
Thank you for that. You know what I would ask then? If we move the item, if we were to include Councilmember. If we, um, move the item, if we were to include Councilmember Lopez's, striking of that one line, um, what I would ask that staff also do, and I usually like to come prepared with specific language, but I would ask staff to further define the emergency. And I, I don't see that as something that would change what this is here. I just want it better defined. But I, I still want the option that obviously in a worst-case scenario, in an emergency, I would want the chief or the, the chief's designate to be able to acquire the stock necessary. But again, I just feel that we should have a little bit more of a clearer definition of the emergency, not necessarily trying to overly restrict. I just want it to be clear so that everybody's on the same page. That's all that is. But I, tho- those are my comments. Um, Chief, unless you have anything to add, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have a, a motion. Except I think we have another question. I think Councilmember Fan.
Yeah, I'll just bring up so many good points and now I have more questions. Um, I did want to go back to Councilmember Lopez's, um, comment. I, I am generally supportive of that. I, I do agree with the sentiment that these are tools, not toys. But, um, you, you had a reaction to it and I really want to understand, uh, why that provision is in our policy and what is the purpose of bringing them out to community outreach events? Obviously, well, maybe you don't know, but my husband was, uh, Air Force and so we've gone to air shows and, and, you know, we got to walk into these big aircrafts and airplanes and, and see these displays and they're really cool. But, um, yeah, I just wanted to get your perspective and the department's perspective on that.
Yeah, and again, if it's the pleasure of the council to not be able to do that, I'll, I'll take that direction. Uh, if, and many of you have attended events. Uh, we have a open house on the 14th, I think, of this month and a couple of weeks. So we'll be in the front of the police station and, uh, children and families look forward to coming and taking that photo op, uh, with the equipment. They're not toys. They're not toys. Let me be clear about that. But it is an open house to display of the various equipment that we use to perform our duties. And so, um, but again, if that causes consternation, no problem. Um, I will tell you that we'll get kept, we'll get asked. Officers will get asked repeatedly, where is this, this and this? They, they've come to expect it at different community events. Um, and so, and, and, and if I could also address at the same time, because it's, there, there's a lot that's being covered. We don't deploy these, um, assets as a normal course of business. We simply do not. The normal course of business you see is a black and white standard police car. And, and the, all, most of this equipment is standard, traditional police equipment. That's what you see in the field day in and day out, right? So with regards to, uh, you know, my reaction is because I've participated in many of these events throughout my entire career. I attend them now as the chief of police. I have staff, I encourage them to bring out anything that they want to show and tell, right? Uh, not toys, uh, but the community very much, um, uh, looks forward to seeing these items, uh, taking photos with them, talking about the items, how do the officers use the equipment? Uh, it's an opportunity, believe it or not. The other side of this coin is community relations. That's the purpose. But again, if it's, um, uh, an issue of optics for the council, understood, we won't deploy those items.
I think this is just specific to the ARV, right? Um, I don't have strong feelings either way. I mean, I've never attended one of these events, but, um, I think it is, you know, you have the perspective and I do understand. And then my other comment was, um, specific to emergency services. So the way I read it was, it was a, a little bit related to, because we've mentioned Cal OES. So in my mind, it's a little bit related to like an act of God, natural disaster, or, um, so, something like civil unrest resulting in the need for additional, uh, items. And I think it's in Division 15, Article four, Division 15. We do have the Emergency Services, uh, Division that discusses all of that. So I guess maybe, uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, kind of clarifying that it does have a lot of different types of emergency definitions, a local emergency, emergency services, emergency operations, state of emergency.
If I can make a clarification, Councilmember Fan, that's who I first read the article as well. But it's just saying that if we were to acquire stock of items from other law enforcement agencies or Cal OES, that's how it's used in that sentence. I thought the same thing. I'm like, oh, well, if it's defining an emergency, we can look towards Cal OES. But this is to acquire from them.
Yes, I just mean, um, when I think of something like that, it, it creates a context of what we're trying to define as an emergency. And so if we're getting something from Cal OES, in my mind, it's because our public safety officers require something to respond to maybe a natural disaster because that's what typically Cal OES does. But, uh, that's just going toward what Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Potem Basara is mentioning as what is an emergency? Is it an emergency and an active civil unrest situation? And we do need additional materials? And so you need to make the call to Irvine PD? Or is it, you know, whatever else? We don't know and that's what we want to know. The public should know also.
Absolutely. Example.
Thank you.
Always, always want to give examples. Uh, the Los Angeles riots, six days of continuous city burning to the ground. So, uh, we don't want to be hamstrung in any policy that we bring forward to be able to have that reach, to bring whatever assets that we need. And Cal OES, you are correct, would probably be support assets because our other frontline assets are depleted, for example, in addition to mutual aid.
Mayor Potem, I have a.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, thank you again, once again, chief, for, for this policy and presentation. I also wanted to voice my support of having anything you would want to bring to these community events, whether it's a night out with a cop or trunk or treat or the pancakes with Santa and pancakes with the cop, uh, that you do during the holidays. I know, and I've been to all of them and I've seen how popular these, any of these, of these things are, um, for kids and families to see and learn about. And part of it is also educating the community of, of, of our police department and the resources that they have. The, the, what I do also, I'm going to bring up my four-year-old nephew again. Uh, when we went to, to night out with the cop last fall or last year, I remember him crying because he missed the, the police dog demonstration. I mean, I told him about it in the morning and he was so excited to see it and they were late and they missed it. So he, he was trying to get me to ask if they could do it again. And I was like, the dogs left, you know, sorry buddy. And seeing all these kids just put on this walk gear and, you know, maybe aspire for a career in law enforcement. And I think that's what's happening. You'll see as we move on, and I've heard it little by little, trying to chip away at, at programs like that, community events like that, programs like PAL, because in the eyes of a lot of these organizations that are running around, it's, we are training kids to like and look up to police officers. And that is not the, the, the agenda. It doesn't fit the agenda that a lot of these groups have. Their agenda is to train kids to hate and despise law enforcement and be scared of them. So any event that would give, put you guys in a positive light or help kids look up to or enjoy, you know, going into a, a tank or, or the command center is going to be frowned upon unfortunately with, uh, some members of the council. So I just want to voice my support of having, um, anything you guys want to bring out to any community event? Because it's one of the most popular and favorite things that our kids see. And the, I've been to hundreds of community events in the city and none of them see the foot traffic that our police, community events, uh, see. So thank you, you know, I don't know where this is going to go, but, you know, it's unfortunate, but thank you, chief.
Well, with that, I'd like to go ahead and close out comments and see if we can get to a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with the, um, suggestion that I made for striking out the language and the definition on emergency, as Councilmember Mayor Potem Basara requested.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, I'll, I'll second it for the sake of either discussion. If there's no further discussion, um.
And Chief, I, sorry, Mayor Potem, I just want to say, this is not about attacking you or the department I was just alluded to. You know, I, y- you know that I have the utmost, utmost respect for you. I'm not the one, you know, running around with, you know, who's not going to be mentioned. So if we want to do that, we can go there. But I would like for us to remain respectful of one another. Thank you.
And, and if I may, I, I don't take your suggestion as disrespect at all. I, I just, I, I, I'm obligated to comment on, you know, over 30 years of experience, um, in the department and, and experience.
Well, Chief, thank you. I mean, your, your input is valuable, so.
Yeah, Chief, thank you. I don't know where that came from, but appreciate all the good work you're doing, always.
All right, with, with that, let's, let's go ahead and cast our votes. We have a motion to approve in a second. Let's go ahead and cast.
And Mayor Potem, can you read? So it was to, to include her strikeout of the language to.
I believe the motion was the two amendments.
Children enjoy, and then what was?
Mine was to further define the emergency.
Okay, so I guess I would make a substitute motion to approve the policy as is, including to the, further define emergency and leave the community engagement events in there.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion. Is there a second? You know, I'll, I'll go.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we, we've got a motion, a substitute motion as second, and that substitute motion is, uh, the only amendment would be to further define the emergency. And that would be in, um, just to be clear, uh, section seven oh seven point six. So with that, Madam City Clerk, or I'm sorry, my colleagues, let's go ahead and cast our votes on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Mendoza, would you like to announce your vote?
That's a yes for me.
Thank you. Okay, motion passes, um, with Councilmembers Mendoza, Penylo, Seván, Mayor Potem Basara voting yes. Um, Councilmembers Hernández and López dissenting and Mayor Sarmiento absent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item 32. Uh, staff is requesting direction related to outdoor dining. This should be good.
Now, thank you, Mayor Potem. The item before you is really to accept the informational report, which is in the staff report, and to get your input on what we would like to proceed with, which is doing an ordinance to establish some type of permanent outdoor dining. We do have a short presentation. If you would like that presentation or we can answer questions. It's your, um, your choice.
If it's a short presentation, would you guys like to see it? Okay, I think we got some, uh, bites, so yeah, let's go ahead and do it.
This is the good stuff.
And it has pictures in it, so. Executive Director Mintai.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Mayor Potem and City Council. Um, we're presenting this item before you tonight with a request for direction for us to prepare an ordinance, um, looking at, uh, permanent design standards and, uh, regulations to help us move forward. Uh, beginning in, uh, May of 2020 and responding to COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, the city enacted or, um, executive order number five, 2020 in May, authorizing restaurants and certain businesses to have outdoor activities, um, so that they can weather through the economic challenges of the pandemic. Uh, the city also, uh, participated and allowed the installation of food islands and parklet on public sidewalks and streets, parking, uh, spaces and closure of certain roadway segments within downtown. Um, very quickly, we also developed a ticket outside program, providing guidance for outdoor business operations citywide. Under the ticket outside initiative, the city facilitated over 29 permits, including nine parklets. Including nine parklets, uh, the city also worked on, uh, worked with a professional designing, design and contractor to ensure that we have a high-quality design as well as construction for the parklets. And the finish include wood decking, sage shells, solar powered visual lights, outdoor furniture and sanitizing station. Uh, this effort was further complemented by the Santa Ana Safe Outdoor Dining Program, using a half-million-dollar initiative provided by the County of Orange First Supervisor District. Under this initiative, the, um, city provided over 20 Elabu's restaurant, uh, along First and Seventeenth Street that are outside of the downtown area, uh, receiving, uh, funding to help create dining patios for their use on their site. The next few slides are example of, um, and then also a short video, uh, for the first time, I have a short video featuring the completed work under both programs. So this is a patio that was created and it's located at, uh, First and New Hope. This one is located, uh, at the Osaka Restaurant, O'Haka Restaurant at First and Susan. This one is at the El Chilingo, um, El Rincon Chilingo, and it's also on First Street. I'm sorry, on, at Seventeenth and Baker. And this one is the El Pico, the Gayo Grill. This is at Seventeenth and Flower. This is, uh, some photos of what happened before. We had those pattern in place. As you can see, uh, through the previous slides that, uh, there were significant improvements to what was being used by some of these businesses. This is a short video. The, uh, completed product is of high quality, uh, meeting our highest expectation standards. Uh, our goal tonight is to ask for City Council direction to provide directions for city staff to develop, uh, permanent outdoor, uh, guidelines, design and standard, uh, and draft it in an ordinance form and come back to the City Council, uh, for consideration to permanent adoption. We believe these regulations will be, um, helpful, uh, in terms of, uh, creating pacemaking, placemaking for the city's food and beverage industry. Uh, these structures continue to be used by, uh, restaurants, visitors and, and residents of the city alike, uh, today, even though COVID measures are beginning to be lifted. So, um, with that concludes my staff report and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Um, thank you, men, for that. That was, that's a great presentation, nice video, well done. Um, let's, let's go ahead and, uh, bring it back to council for, uh, comments. Councilmember Hernandez?
Fantastic presentation, Director Mintai. Um, I am fully supportive of seeing you guys roll this out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Uh, Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, I, I love the outdoor dining program. I'm very supportive. I want to see it be here forever. Um, and I hope that we can do outreach to the other restaurants that, um, maybe don't.
Um, and I hope that we can do outreach to the other restaurants that um maybe don't have it yet, or possibly maybe not know about it, but. Very, very supportive. And I um, you know, in downtown San Ana, I really enjoyed with some of the streets. I know this is. A sensitive topic right now, but I really liked that some of the streets were made more walkable to folks. Um, with the closures and the restaurants in the middle. I I would love to see something like that happen um and be permanent.
Thank you, and I think uh we're also sensitive to the current events. Uh, at some point in the future, we may be able to bring something uh for consideration back to the council.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Fan?
Thank you, and uh thank you, Councilmember Lopez, for bringing up the walkable streets, because I think we we had a conversation about this. At dinner after a council meeting um at um. A restaurant in downtown and and really uh being able to have the parklets as re- really, the owner said, is the only reason why he survived. Uh, the pandemic, and so we're very supportive of that. Um, I have talked to Nabil and I um. Screwed up and realized that Fourth Street is gonna have the streetcar, so it's not da- it's not safe to make it pedestrian only. Uh, even with the streetcar, but um I think there are other areas in downtown that we can try to do that. I know right in front of Chapter One, kind of that whole area is. Blocked off right now. I'd love to take a look to see what we can do. Um. I am supportive of this program. The other thing I do want us to look at, though, is um. Obviously, parking as a planner, um, you know, we or when we approve CUPs or we approve projects, we're saying, you know, you need X number of parking spaces to accommodate and. Um, Banggang, which is where one of the parklets are um on the west side, the first photo that you showed. Um, parking in that area can be really rough sometimes, which I'm not trying to say, no, we shouldn't have parklets um in. In a- and save it for parking, but I do think that it's important for us to kind of look into that or see if we are approving this type of park um parklets. And it's taking up parking spaces in some plazas, if we can add parking somewhere else on the street, et cetera. I don't know. Um, I just want to make sure that we're looking at that, because sometimes they're taking up. You know, five, six, seven parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Penalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Potem Basara, and thank you um, Min and Nabil for all the work with this with this ordinance. It's some, when it first came up in twenty twenty, if you remember, Min, I was very supportive, and even from then, I said this needs to be. Permanent moving forward, just because of how popular it is with the public and with the businesses. I mean, the businesses saw in uh many of the restaurants in downtown. Told me that they saw better profits with the outdoor dining they had than they had ever seen in their previous years in operation. Before COVID. So it was definitely a popular thing, and and even just myself, I. Frequented the Orange Circle downtown San Ana more often to eat outside because it just, it it felt. Cool. It was like everybody would compare it to, you know, having the never been to Europe, but comparing it to European uh dining out on the street like they've had for. Ever and ever. And I think just. Knowing that, I mean, today, uh that's why I don't watch the news anymore, but it was a COVID, new COVID wave coming this summer. You know, at the same time, we're also not going, we don't know. How many waves are coming eventually, or if it's gonna get bad again and whatnot. All these variants, you just don't know. So. I am very supportive of seeing a permanent uh ordinance that that allows for outdoor dining throughout our entire city. Um, because i- it it is a a benefit to these businesses. If they don't want to have outdoor dining, that's fine. Don't don't have them, but. There are many that would like to have it, and I know members of the public really enjoy that aspect, so very supportive of seeing. A a something come back um in, so I'm I'm looking forward to meeting with you and just going over ways how we can. You know, make it better than it was before. So thank you. That's it, Mayor Potem.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Uh, similarly to my um colleagues, my support for outdoor dining is very strong. I agree that. There is something about outdoor dining that just brings in more customers, and so it's better for our businesses. And their their increased profits um mean that. We get um some of that revenue and that it turns into services for our. For our residents, so I support this ordinance.
Great, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Um, you know, I'll just conclude with. All it took was a pandemic to get us to enjoy the outdoor dining aspect, right? Um, you know, the one of the good things, and and thank you, Min, and your team, because we were one of the first cities in Orange County. To get out in front and enact outdoor uh dining options and not just simply allowing it, but actually helping our businesses. And guiding them to develop what I would consider attractive parklets that some are still in place today. So this wasn't just. Astro turf, some lawn chairs and a a tarp. I mean, these were some really creative things that we do see on Fourth Street. I'm glad Councilmember Lopez brought it out first, so I didn't have to be the first, but I agree. I think if we we should be looking at. Um, vacating some of these streets, you know, we're. You as a planner, you're not an engineer, this is not about just trying to keep vehicles flowing through. In fact, if anything, looking at more pedestrian flow and, you know, to. One segment that comes up that I believe Councilmember Fan was alluding to is that segment of Third Street between Broadway and Sycamore. That, to me, is like number one candidate. It it makes all the sense. There's no impact to any existing ingress and egress. Uh, with the development of Third and Broadway, and then with the existing outdoor dining that you already had pre-pandemic. With the restaurants along Third there, it just makes all the sense. And with the other businesses next to that restaurant that was taking advantage of Third Street being closed down. I don't believe it's closed down now, but when it was, it it was amazing. So I I appreciate that. Um, I also agree that parking is one thing of concern, because in some locations, it's not a big deal, right? Where you have a large shopping center and you take away four or five spaces for outdoor dining. It doesn't really impact the overall parking situation, but in some of the smaller shopping centers, whether it's the west side, whether it's. Other parts of central San Ana, you may have those impacts. So I'd want to know kind of how you would address that, or what. What what would be the methodology of determining those impacts? Um, and speaking of methodology, the the other thing would be. You know, I look at this as something that. You know, when we think of a conditional use permit, we're okay with the use, but we see it as conditional based on. The unique situation of each space. And so in this case here, I don't think any one. Outdoor dining experience is the same, right? I think what you would see next to a a restaurant like Chapter One is going to be different from what you saw at. Pico de Gayo, right? So I think there's differences, and I I'm looking forward to what staff will propose. Is it something where maybe certain um. Certain situations really just aren't over the counter uh permit with a checklist that they abide by. Um, maybe if they have certain um factors involved, maybe it does get pulled into a discretionary uh permit process. I don't know. I would. Look to see what you guys bring back to us. Um, but for the most part, I would just say that. This is a great thing. I'm glad that we're finally taking advantage of our um our climate. We have such beautiful weather here. It's. It's amazing that we haven't done more of this. Um, and again, it really took a pandemic for us to. Take a step back or or actually take a step forward and do some of this stuff. So um, with that, this item is just for. Direction. So, Min, do you feel you have enough direction from us?
I do.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, everybody. Onto our next item. So item thirty-three. Uh, we've got, oh, I'm sorry, just kidding. Item thirty-three is done. We are end of the business calendar, going into public hearings. We only have one tonight since thirty-five was uh continued. So, uh, Councilmember Fan?
Thank you. Um, so I have to announce my recusal for this item. Um, when looking through the list of potential recipients of the grants. One of them is Hurt Family Clinic, who is a um client of my employer, not myself, but of my employer, Red Hand and Tucker. And in speaking to our city attorney, I was informed out of abundance of caution, um, I should recuse myself, so I will do that. So I will leave the room while you all discuss this public hearing item. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Fan. Thank you for disclosing that. And so uh then there were five. So. So um, going forward, uh, staff, do you have a presentation for us?
Um, no, sir. We actually don't have a presentation on this one. Um, we can, we're available to answer any questions you may have. Um, staff's recommendation is to approve your commission's recommendations for the awards.
This is our Community Development Commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so um, on this, I guess I will uh, let's see. Um, opening the public hearing on this item, Madam Clerk, uh, please provide the uh instructions to the public who would like to make a comment. On the public hearing item only.
Um, if. If there's any member of the public who would like to provide a comment um and joining us by way of Zoom, because we did not get any. And um in-person speaker cards, if you would please dial star nine from your phone or select raise hand from Zoom now. And Mayor Potem, we did not receive any written communication, and we have no one um wanting to participate virtually in providing a comment, and we didn't get any. Input person speaker cards.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City, yeah, Madam City Clerk. Um, so on that, I will. Uh, look to my colleagues for any comments or motions. Um.
I. Yeah, this is um Councilmember Mendoza. I I support the issue as it is, and I will make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve it as is?
I'll second with a comment.
Okay, so Councilmember, so Councilmember Mendoza with the motion, Councilmember Hernandez with the second with comment?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So um, I had initially um met with our Community Development Agency. And made the um request for us to remove uh not these gang prevention program and summer night lights program. And any program that was going to focus on intervention and prevention efforts, directly working with community members. Um, and my reasoning for that was I wanted to see these programs get general fund um support. Um, but with that being said, I I think that um. I think that I I just want to move the item as is, and um when the time comes for budget discussions, I'll advocate there.
I I appreciate that, and I think that's a a great uh suggestion. So uh, we've got a motion, the second, we've had discussion. Anybody else want to provide comment? Seeing none, uh, colleagues, cast your votes.
And and Mayor Potem, would you like to close the public hearing?
That'd be a great idea. So go ahead and close the public hearing, and then I will ask my colleagues again to cast their votes.
Councilmember Mendoza, would you like to announce your vote, please?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. I was waiting.
My vote is a yes, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, uh, motion passes um with councilmembers Hernandez, Lopez, Mendoza, Penyala, and Mayor Potem voting yes. Um, Councilmember Fan recusing and Mayor Sarmiento um absent.
Well, outstanding. All right. Uh, thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. Uh, so we are done with our public hearings. Um, I believe we need to go to the housing authority. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So uh, my adjourning the um, the council meeting and then opening up our um. Our housing authority. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Authority Member Hernandez.
Present.
Authority Member Lopez.
Here.
Authority Member Mendoza.
Present.
Authority Member Penyala.
Present.
Authority Member Fan.
Here.
And Vice Chair Basara.
Here. And let me just real quickly uh correct myself. We weren't adjourning the last meeting. We were recessing to come to the Housing Authority. Um, so Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for items with the uh Housing Authority agenda?
We do not, and I did want to also make mention that I'm part of the consent calendar item. Usually, we don't have an excused absence, but we do tonight. I just want to make. Mention of that.
Thank you for that. Um, does any authority member wish to make a motion or second on the items before us?
I'll move.
All right, we got a motion to move the consent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Fan, second by Penalosa. Uh, please cast your votes.
Councilmember Mendoza, would you please announce your vote? Councilmember Mendoza? Okay, it looks like she. She may have lost her.
We. Oh, and we got.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, thank you.
What's the tabulation?
Okay, so um, Authority Member Hernandez, Lopez, Penyala, Sefan, and Vice Chair Basara um voting yes, and then with. Um, uh, Authority Member Mendoza and Chair Sarmiento being absent.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. At this point in the evening, we have only the um council member requested items, so I'm going to turn it over to. Councilmember Fan for her item, item number thirty-six.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, and um this is actually an item that both uh Councilmember Hernandez and I worked on together, and there is an attached. Um, draft resolution of apology. Um, this is a really important issue, and actually it was a community-driven issue. It was something raised by um a member of the community to me, and in. Somehow I got connected with Councilmember Hernandez, and we both realized that we were um aiming for the same goal, and I also want to specifically um. Mention Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Alan Wu, who has been incredibly um helpful in this and integral to the process as a representative of the Chinese-American community here in Santa Ana. Um. We. I think the City Council has been doing a lot to represent our community the best way we know how. And for me, it's really important that in order to move forward and bring progress to the city and make improvements and improve lives. Uh, we also have to recognize the history uh and the legacy that we have inherited. And part of that legacy is, yes, really incredible culture and changes and being the first, or, you know, being um. The leader of wonderful policies, but it also means recognizing the history of hate. And discrimination that previous city councils have um promoted. And one of which, one major example that I didn't find out as a lifelong resident of Santa Ana until only a few years ago, is that. Chinatown here in Santa Ana was burnt down um because of City Council direction, uh, City Council action. Based on unsubstantiated racist claims of a medical incident. And it was very interesting to see that all of that government action was directed based on. Claims and allegations for unreliable sources, sources who have made uh racist comments in other arenas too. So. This draft resolution is really a way for us to to apologize to the Chinese-American community, but also to recognize. The incredible um benefits and the incredible achievements that they have made here in the city of Santa Ana, as well as. Um, the United States of America. And with that, I would also ask that if we move this item forward or that we move this item forward. We also hold a ceremonial signing of the resolution like we did with the rent stabilization ordinance, because I do believe. That this is something that is important. Um, it is something that community should come out to support, and it is something that uh we should truly celebrate. Councilmember Hernandez, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan. I'm I'm humbled to join um, join you and members of our uh Chinese community and Asian Pacific um American community. Um. This was something that I learned about um when I was a child. Um, because of my uh close relation to the Lao family, um, a lot of my family members worked for them. Um, at the San Ana Food Market, and um Alan Wu's wife, Ruby Wu, is the president of the Neighborhood Association in which I live and where I'm raising my family. So I remember just being a young boy and learning that there was once a Chinatown and where the riot aid is now located. That was one of the first. Chinese restaurants that we ever had in the city of Santa Ana, which subsequently was also burnt down. Um, so I am supportive of seeing a resolution brought forth, um, because uh there were hundreds of Chinese immigrants. And descendants who were forcibly removed from their homes. Their businesses were burned, and they watched as they lost. Everything that they worked so hard for. And oftentimes, we forget about the contributions that Chinese Americans and immigrants made to this country. And in the city of Santa Ana, one of the things that I'm most proud of to serve on this body is that my colleagues here, something that is important to all of us, is we want to right those wrongs. And I am in agreement with Councilmember Fan, I would like to see us have a resolution signed similar to the way that we did rent control. And furthermore, I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues on bringing back a Chinatown memorial and enacting it right there at the at the corner of, I believe, Third and Bush, yes. So I'm looking forward to, to seeing this get done, and I'm very honored to work alongside my colleague Councilmember Fan, Alan Wu, and leaders in the Chinese community and Asian Pacific Islander community, thank you.
Thank you for that, and Councilmember Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Potem, and thank you, Councilmember Fan and Hernandez, for bringing this forward, this is something that, you know, i- is long overdue. It's a sad, sad chapter in this city's history. And we, we need to, to recognize it, recognize of the mistake that was made by previous leadership here, by, you know, it was just going over the resolution and and there were also thousands of residents involved that stood there and celebrated this atrocity, along with the fire marshal that, you know, at direction did this, so it's, I'm definitely supportive of seeing this come before us. I'm supportive of having in a a event to sign this resolution. I think what would be great to do is, is do it at the site, and, and, and make it a, a along with a memorial, maybe we, as we move into this budget year, find funding where we could possibly look into having a memorial, some, I know that a lot of these sites are private private property, but maybe if we could find a nearby public area or in partnership with one of the property owners there that will be willing to, to do this, do the memorial as well as a, as a ceremony to recognize this, this resolution. But with that said, those are my comments, fully supportive, thank you to the two of you for bringing this forward and to the community. I know Commissioner Alan Wu worked hard on this, and, and we recognize that, so thank you.
Great, thank you for those comments and some great ideas, Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor Potem, yeah, Councilmembers, I'm very supportive of this item, I do believe that we can acknowledge atrocities and learn from them and move forward in a better way, so very supportive, thank you.
Thank you for that, and Councilmember Mendoza? Going once?
I don't, she's on there, she's just not responding.
All right, well, Councilmember Fan wanted to make one more comment, so go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, just a clarification. Councilmember Penyalosa, I'm so, so happy that you support a memorial, because Councilmember Hernandez and I have met with both our city manager and Assistant City Manager to work on a timeline, and of course, our mid-year budget update requested funding for this, however, for the resolution of apology, I would like it to happen soon after the signing of the resolution, if it is brought back at the next city council meeting, I think it would be quite symbolic to have it signed during Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and to do it, I do, whether it's at City Hall or at the site, because the site now is private, it's a parking lot. So we, we can figure out the details, but I would just like it to come back sooner, and we'll have more parties as we work on this.
I, I agree with that, thank you, Councilmember Fan, because, no offense, city staff, but I don't want to that would mean we'll see it four years from now, so, no, the sooner the better, we can, we can do the memorial later.
We do have a spreadsheet with a timeline on it, thanks to Assistant City Manager Mendoza.
Mayor Potem and Councilmembers, all we have to do, since Councilmember Fan did author this resolution, is have a quick review by the City Attorney's Office and a staff report, so we can make the very next meeting, so you can get it done in May.
Thank you for that, and I'll just add my two cents of being in support as well, I, I think our city has a very proud history. Unfortunately, we do have some dark chapters, and this is a very painful one. You know, as somebody, you know, Chinese were, were absolutely taken advantage of in many parts of our country. I, I know because my grandfather worked along many, along the side of many of them up in Delano, so it, it just, it's really a shame to, to know that what this talks about happened here in Santa Ana, so I think this is a very appropriate way to you know, come to grips with this and actually acknowledge our past and celebrate the progress we've made, you know, as I mentioned earlier tonight, you know, you've had thus far three Asian Americans elected to the council, you know, you go from a time where literally you're burning them out of the city, and now they're sitting up here on the dais, so I think we've come a long way, and it's wonderful to see that progress. You know, looking at the draft resolution, it says that the incident happened on May twenty-fifth, so having it hap, having the signing happen during May would be very appropriate to commemorate what has happened and where we're going today with this resolution, so I just would voice my support for that. I think everybody's spoken, I don't know that Councilmember Mendoza's back or not. So we'll just go ahead and move on to the next item, which is my item, item thirty-seven, discussing requiring the use of a skilled and trained workforce for affordable housing projects that utilize city funds. So really where this item goes is that in twenty-seventeen, our city entered into a community workforce agreement with the LA Orange County Building Trades Council, and that agreement stated our city's commitment to using skilled and trained workers to build our city's public works project over a certain threshold. Last month, we, the council adopted the new Housing Opportunity Ordinance, and that requires the use of skilled and trained workers if a project opts to pay the in-lu fee, instead of constructing the amount of affordable housing units required in the WHO. Well, there are many flaws, in my opinion, with the new WHO. I'm bringing forward what I believe to be one remedy tonight for consideration by my colleagues, that would be in line with the spirit and intent of our city's policy with the Community Workforce Agreement. That item is to require any new affordable units that are constructed with the use of any city funds, including funds from the Inclusionary Housing Fund, to be constructed with a minimum of thirty percent local skilled and trained workers, as defined in Public Contract Code, section twenty-six zero-one. Thirty percent threshold would be consistent with the requirements that were just recently adopted by members of this council in the new WHO, that are placed on the market rate housing units. This council has been very supportive as far as using local skilled and trained workers to build city-funded projects, and this item would further that commitment by putting our money where our skilled and trained workers are building housing, no matter what type of housing is being built. So those are my comments on this item, I'd be happy to go around the horn. Councilmember Fan, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'd love to take a look at this. It was really interesting to me that I think a member of the Building Industry Association was not supportive of this. But I would like to get more information as how this works out or what type of effects it would have. I am curious, because obviously projects that use public funding pay prevailing wage, and that is a big aspect of requiring skilled and trained, but I would like to see you know, what the effects are, whether it's regulatory, costing, et cetera. I do want to say that funding for affordable housing projects is not the same as funding for for-profit projects, right, affordable housing projects require, I guess, sometimes it feels like a rain dance, but really bringing together not just the city's WHO funds, but a bunch of other state and federal funding to make it work, and when there are cost overruns, it's sometimes, you know, you have to go find additional grants or whatever, it's not just a small decrease or a decrease in profits, but I do agree that we should look at how skilled and trained would affect our affordable housing projects in the city, because I think this council in general supports making sure workers are treated well and not just paid well, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Fan, Councilmember Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Potem, Basara, I just wanted to voice my support for this item, Madam City Manager. So make sure it's noted that I am supportive of seeing this firstly studied, to see if, you know, what, what, because I want to, you know, make sure that it doesn't break these projects to the point where they can't build. But I am supportive of seeing this looked into and seeing how we could enforce this. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Potem.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Lopez? Okay, and Councilmember Mendoza?
It's like she disconnected.
Okay, now, now at least it's fine, all right? And then Councilmember Hernandez is not here. Madam City Manager, that's okay. Would it, is it, is it possible to bring back as an informational item, not necessarily any sort of ordinance or anything at this point?
I certainly can't do that.
Perfect, thank you very much. Check us out, we already got through all the business, huh? So let's get through this, let's close out, Councilmember Comments, I'm going to start all the way at the other side, Councilmember Lopez. Oh, I'm sorry, while you're, while you're looking for yours. Madam City Manager?
Mayor Potem, I won't take that personal.
I told you, I'll start to get this thing done.
You forgot about me, and I know recently I haven't been making any comments, but I do have a couple of exciting announcements, so I did want to pass on that OCTA is hosting an OC Streetcar Public Meeting at this Friday at Frito Cinema. It's from eight-thirty AM to nine-thirty AM. And then our Public Works Agency is sponsoring the Neighborhood Block Transformation Contest that will recognize and reward residents of winning neighborhoods who make significant aesthetic improvements to their parkways and their properties, and that information can be found on our website. And then the Police Department, as the chief had mentioned earlier, they are hosting an open house and a hiring expo. So to your comment, Councilmember Penyalosa, we are hiring, our HR department is very, very busy. The hiring expo and open house is this, not this Saturday, next Saturday, May fourteenth, from ten AM to one PM at the Police Department, and that is it.
Great, thank you very much, and I'm going to return back to Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, so I recently attended the graduation with the Wooden Floor, and they received an award from Ovation for all of the great work that they do, you know, in Santa Ana community, and so, you know, I just want to thank them for all of the generational impacts that they're making with the young people here in the city of Santa Ana and in Orange County. And so I can't think of another organization that is more deserving in an award, and I just want to thank everyone at the Wooden Floor for inviting me and sharing that special moment with me. I also want to thank Congressman Correa for the two million dollars that he brought to the Discovery Science Center. It's really great to see, you know, our leaders at the state and congressional levels funneling down resources, and I really appreciate that. That concludes my comments, have a good night, everyone.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Potem, I just wanted to publicly thank our library director, Brian Sternberg, for that fantastic event on Saturday. I know many of our city departments were involved, I saw finance out there with the budget table, and it was a good turnout and happy to see events like this again, and see, you know, people come and enjoy them, so thank you for that. And that's it, Mayor Potem, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Fan?
Thank you, I did have some closing comments, and this is relating to my position as the Director of the Metropolitan Water District, and it's really important because it is regarding the water conservation mandates. Governor Newsom did have an executive order requiring that, you may have read it in the news, but as drought conditions continue to worsen, the Metropolitan Water District has issued a mandate to impose the first-ever outdoor water restriction. The restriction, which limits outdoor watering to one day per week, applies to parts of Los Angeles, Ventura, and San Bernardino counties that rely heavily on imported water from the state water project. So while Metropolitan's mandate does not apply to Santa Ana specifically, in working with staff, we want to support Governor Newsom's executive order N-dash-seven-dash-twenty-two, calling on all Californians to reduce our water use. So therefore, the city of Santa Ana and staff will be bringing this back, will be amending our existing water conservation program in future in a future council agenda item, and adopting our own measures and water use restrictions. So really, you know, we, we have to come together to conserve water during we, we did come together to conserve water during previous droughts, and we need to come together again. We want to specifically thank the community for all your efforts to use water efficiently, actually Santa Ana is one of the best at doing this, and I hope we continue. So let's just do our part and make sure that we get through this together, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Potem, I just want to thank our residents and and, and staff who, who contributed to this meeting, residents for attending the meeting. Want to give our city manager props for hiring Brian Sternberg. The event on Saturday was amazing, I also attended Willard's event, and that was a beautiful community celebration, and I want to send condolences to the family and the mother of the young man who lost his life last week. Any loss of life is tragic in the city, and my heart goes out to you, and however I can be of assistance, please know that my office is here for you if you want to talk to someone, or if you just need some direction with maybe mental health support. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you for that, just a couple of quick announcements. I'm going to be holding my monthly community office hours on Saturday, May seventh, at ten AM over at the George Upton All-Access Park over at Thornton Park. Another fun community event that's coming up will be the Active Military Service Banner unveiling ceremony that we're going to hold on Monday, May twenty-third, at two PM over at Boma Coral Park on MacArthur, right next to Fire Station Seventy-Six. We're going to be unveiling banners that folks in our community who have family members that are active military service members will have the opportunity to purchase and have displayed on along MacArthur Boulevard to show the pride that they have in their family members that are serving our country in the military. And since we will not have a regular meeting until May seventeenth, in advance of Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is annually observed on May fifteenth, I wanted to acknowledge, acknowledge, excuse me, and express my appreciation to those peace officers that lost their lives in the line of duty, especially to the four officers that the Santa Ana Police Department has lost in the line of duty over the years. Officer Edwin Jensen in nineteen thirty-one, Officer Nelson Sasser in nineteen sixty-nine, Officer Daniel Hale in nineteen seventy-seven, and Sergeant John Aguilar in nineteen ninety-eight. Our city is eternally thankful for their service and, and what they gave up for our community. I actually thought we were going to end after midnight, I was going to end with May the fourth be with you, but hey, I'm okay with May third, so with that, I want to thank all my colleagues for a good meeting, productive meeting, and efficient. And with that, thank you, staff, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.